Well, good morning to all of you. There we go. Okay. We're glad that you're all able to join us this morning. I know we've got a very full agenda. We have some recognitions and we have some off-agenda speakers and a fairly full agenda, so we'll try to get right into that. My apologies for a little bit of a late start here, just trying to make sure we got all the outline provided for and hopefully get to the item that you're interested in here as the agenda moves along. So with that, again, I want to welcome you all to the November 7th, 2017 meeting of Sacramento County Board of Supervisors and I'll call the meeting to order and ask our clerk to call the roll to establish a quorum and then we'll do the pledge of allegiance and any announcements and then we'll get right into the heart of the agenda, so. Flo?
Good morning. Supervisor Serna?
Here.
Kennedy?
Peters?
Here.
Frost?
Here.
Natoli?
Here.
And you have a quorum. This meeting of the Sacramento County Board of Supervisors is cable cast live on Metro Cable 14, the local government affairs channel, on the Comcast Consolidated Communications and AT&amp;T U-verse cable systems. The meeting is closed caption and is webcast at www.sacmetrocable.tv. Today's meeting will be repeated Friday, November 10th at 6:00 PM on Channel 14. A DVD copy is available for checkout from any local library branch. Members of the audience wishing to address the board may fill out a speaker slip and hand it to staff. When the chair calls your name, please come to the podium. Also, please silence your electronic devices at this time.
Good.
Okay. Thank you, Flo. If you'd all rise and join me in the pledge of allegiance, please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay. Let's see if there are any items to be continued from the agenda this morning.
Okay. So for your consent matters, items 1 through 17. For item number eight, you're introducing an ordinance amending Chapter 16.81, 16.83, 16.84, and 16.87 of the Sacramento County Code related to the payment of development fees through the statewide community infrastructure program. You're waiving full reading and continuing to November 14th for adoption. For item number 11, I do need a motion to drop this item. Approve the Auburn Boulevard Bicycle and Pedestrian Improvement Project.
Okay.
I'm sorry. Did you say we're dropping the Auburn Boulevard item?
Yes, ma'am.
That's my understanding.
Item 11.
Thank you.
Okay. Is that a motion?
Sure.
Okay. Moved in second and then to drop item 11. I have no one signed to speak on item 11 and nothing else, please vote.
Unanimous vote. And that concludes my notes for your consent matters.
Supervisor Natoli?
Yes.
I have one item that I need to just bring you up to date. It's item number two, which is, Flo, can you read that?
Item two, adoption of the 2018 Board of Supervisors meeting calendar.
What I want to spotlight is that there, through 2018, there could be a need to have a couple of night meetings. We do not know what time they will be. What I'm asking the board is to delegate some authority to my position to work with the incoming chair to schedule those meetings as need arises during the year.
Okay. Well, thank you for that. I know that there's some land use matters that may warrant and generate a good deal of interest and I think for larger numbers of folks who may be interested, evening times are often a little easier for schedules and so forth. So, again, I'm fine with that and we can work with their incoming chair and certainly you, the county executive, as we see those matters. Maithers South is one of those which may come to us in the middle part of the year and I know there's another pending land use item that might come earlier than that, so. All right.
I would just say if the need arises, not as the need arises.
Understood.
Okay. Well, I'm fine with if the need, but again, you know, again, recognizing that some of these matters will generate a good deal of interest and I'm not just looking to have an evening meeting to have an evening meeting.
I heard you.
I know. I know you did. Okay. Okay. Then let me turn to my colleagues and Supervisor Frost, any item on consent calendar you wish to address? Okay. Supervisor Peters?
Uh, no.
No?
No.
Okay. Okay. All right. Supervisor Kennedy?
I've got a couple of questions.
Okay. Okay. So, item 12, we'll hold. Supervisor Serna? All right. And I had no items either, so we'll call item 12, please.
Okay. Item 12, the Power Inn Road Sidewalk Improvements Contract.
Okay. Supervisor Kennedy?
A couple of questions. One is, it says the timeline is that it will be constructed in 2018. Is there anything a little more specific than that?
Mr. Schuman?
And by the way, I want to give out a loud hallelujah.
Good morning. I'm Dan Schuman with the Department of Transportation. We're planning to put that out to construction in the 2018 season. It will likely be a job that goes underway in the summer. The only concern that we will be tracking closely is a right-of-way acquisition. We do have right-of-way acquisitions and that is, will be starting shortly, so if we run into any eminent domain actions, which at this point we're not anticipating, that could impact the schedule, but at this point, we're on track to be ready to go to bid in the summer on that.
And during the construction and the right-of-way discussion, is there any of those on the west side, are there any fences that are going to be involved in part of the?
I don't believe there's any impacts to those properties on the west side. We do have the right-of-way secured on that side, other than there may be some conform work with existing driveways and this is mainly at the south end of the project. I think south of Lucreta, we might have some driveways that are going to be modified and we just have to get rights of entry to do conforms. The bulk of the right-of-way is on the east side where we don't have any existing development.
Right.
The advantage of that is that it's already, the frontage along there is already encumbered by a smud easement, so we're not anticipating any complications in securing that for additional roadway and sidewalk easements.
Might I suggest, because it's not a very long area, it's not, and it's fairly, you know, short and, you know, when you're having these discussions about, I mean, it may be less expensive if we're talking about eminent domain to work with the neighbors to help repair, replace those fences. They might be more cooperative and it would, you know, go a long way toward beautifying that area. So, something to think about if we can identify some resources to actually rebuild the fences along the new sidewalk.
Yeah, we can certainly work with that as we go through the design process.
Okay. Thank you.
Just, Dan, while you're there, just to piggyback on Supervisor Kennedy's comments, you know, some of these areas that, you know, have been developed for a number of decades where we had back on wood fences and now they're fairly major thoroughfares with a lot of traffic, obviously gonna, and I would second Mr. Kennedy's hallelujah, because I know this has been a long time in coming from a safety standpoint and with the streetlight additions in those neighborhoods and now the sidewalks along Power Inn. But it may be the opportunity, it may be the only opportunity to actually change out those wood fences and, again, not necessarily for acoustical purposes, but for aesthetics and a separation. You've got those mixed properties, some with front-on driveways and some with backyard fences and, you know, those backyard fences deteriorate with age and it seemed to me that along Power Inn Road, which is going to be, you know, a major thoroughfare, obviously multimodal now with the addition of the sidewalks, that to see about changing out where you have those older, much older wood fences, a lot of cases, and now you're going to have pedestrians ride up against them before you've had a roadside ditch, so it's been a little bit of a separation. Seemed to me it might be an opportunity to change that out with a, you know, a nice either split face or slumstone. Give it out a little bit of cost to the project, but you're only going to go in there one time. Once those improvements are in, that's, you know, that's kind of the end of it. So I guess I would suggest that, and sort of complement Mr. Kennedy's comments, that this would be the opportunity to do that, so.
Yeah, I think we can kind of look at that with those types of projects in the future. We, of course, would have to incorporate those costs into our, you know, into grant applications or whatever source that we're seeking to construct these projects.
Okay. So you're going to take a look at that and work with Mr. Kennedy's office?
Yeah. We can look at that. We unfortunately hadn't included that, you know, in the grant application, so there, we'll have to explore what the...
Other funding sources that might be available.
What funding sources we have available to do that work.
And I guess I would just note on that, too, that, you know, even though a lot of these areas are relatively developed out, there are still some development fees that come in and so forth and, again, if you do a project, you're going to spend a million and six to do the safety project and the roadway improvements and the pedestrian improvements, the aesthetics aren't unimportant and I think, you know, as you drive through those areas, you can see some of the things we've done over the years with Center Medians down Power Inn Road and obviously other improvements through Whole Floor in Town. It makes sense, at least from my perspective, and I'm supportive of, if you need to try to identify those sources, let's do it, do it. You know, if you're going to do it, do it once and do it right, so. Okay. And I had no other items, so I have someone sign up on item 21, which is a time matter, so we're okay. So, all right. Then with that, then unless there's any other folks in the audience to address any items on the consent calendar, which I have no sign-up sheets, then we're going to take a motion on the consent calendar, so. We have a motion?
Who consent?
Okay. Chair would second it? And if nothing further, then please vote.
Unanimous vote.
All right. We have some presentations. I would just note for the folks that are here on the off-agenda, as we try to manage the agenda this morning, we'll try to get you in certainly before the morning session's over, but if we get a break in there, we'll give several off-agenda speakers, we'll call you forward and allow you to make a presentation as well, so. Okay. All right. Flo?
Okay. Item 18, recognizing Randall Lee for 25 years of service.
Okay. Mr. Devine, good morning.
Good morning, Chair Natoli, board members, David Devine, Director of Personnel Services. And first, I didn't know Randy was such a draw. I swear crap. It's my pleasure today to recognize Randy for his 25 years of service to the county of Sacramento. Randy has a varied career here with the city, with the county of Sacramento and he started his career in October of 1992 as a personal analyst in the medical services, medical systems department and he was promoted to a senior personal analyst in 1995. In 1996, he transferred to regional parks where he was there until 2001, serving in various HR capacities. And in 2001, Randy was promoted to a human resources manager at the airport and at the airport at that time, Randy was very instrumental in your organizational development and also very a big proponent of customer service, not only internally for the HR staff, but also externally for the customers who frequent the airport and he was helping the airport management at that time. And in 2007, when we consolidated, Randy became the HR manager in the Department of Personnel Services for the west team and the west team services all the downtown departments as well as the board offices, so some of you may have had the opportunity to run into Randy then. Randy's duties, he leads the team in employee relations, he does leave administration and overall management of the team and in 2012, he was promoted to HR manager, human resource manager three on the west team. And then part of our job rotation in 2013, Randy was transferred to the Bradshaw team that oversees all the public and infrastructure, general services, and all those departments. Randy's been very instrumental in the Department of Personnel Services. I want to thank him for his service, his leadership capabilities, his management skills, and his overall attitude towards customer service and providing the best customers to the county. So with this, I just want to thank Randy for his leadership, your professionalism, and your customer service for these 25 years on behalf of the county. And kind of an anecdotal note, in the Department of Personnel Services, over the last month, we've had three anniversaries with a total of 85 years of cumulative service credit here with this, with the county. So for those of you in the audience who are looking for a job eventually later on in your career, it's a great place to work and I think that's evident by the amount of time that people spend here. Thank you.
Thanks, David.
I just want to say that it's been my honor to serve the country for 23 years as a naval officer and now 25 years for Sacramento County, so you could say that I find that public service is the most noble thing you can do, so thank you for your recognition.
Thank you, Randall. Somebody got a photograph here? We got some of the camera? Thanks, Randall, for your service to our country and the service to the county, so congratulations. Okay. Next.
Okay. Item 19, presentation of resolution proclaiming November 6th through the 10th, 2017, as Human Services Professionals Appreciation Week.
Okay. And I believe you have Anna Lucia Carlson and maybe others that are eligibility supervisor and present, she is president of National Eligibility Workers Professional Association Towards Human Services, New Paths, and if there's others, I have a resolution on behalf of the board to present and offer them some opportunity to make some comments as well. Anybody else here with you? Or are you just you? Okay. You're welcome to join us. I'll invite our others down. I'll let Anna, in a moment, introduce her colleagues, but as they're... Come on down. It's all right. Don't be shy, you're going to be on camera and everybody's going to be looking at you from behind, so it's all right. Good morning. How are you? Good morning. Morning, everybody. Come on. I'll let Anna and one of them introduce you. Well, we have a resolution that the board just approved a moment ago and annually, we take an opportunity to recognize during the early part of November, our human service professionals, certainly those that work for the county of Sacramento, but those that work in public service throughout our county and our region. And I think we recognize that as represented and reflected in the folks that are here this morning on behalf of their colleagues, many hundreds, many thousands, who each day dedicate their time and efforts and talents to serving folks in our community and they work hard to see to it that folks who come with a variety of needs and certainly challenges in their lives or certainly questions and concerns are served in a way that respects certainly their culture and their backgrounds, but also assists them in a way that hopefully helps them get to a better spot in their lives. And so our human service professionals, which is a very broad overarching designation, are people just like the folks that are here this morning who, again, have gone to school and dedicated their, pretty parts of their careers to bringing the experience and training that's necessary to allow them to have that designation as a professional and then they demonstrate it every day in the workplace in helping people, as I said, come with a variety of needs and challenges. And so today, we recognize that the week of November 6th, starting yesterday through the 10th, although we got to do a full week, so that'll be through, at least through the 12th, so. But recognizing that certainly the week in which we conduct our business is Human Services Professionals Appreciation Week here in Sacramento County and we want to salute the efforts of those dedicated public servants who, whose performance and work really brings pride to all those involved and certainly something we can be proud of as an organization. And we recognize the significant achievements and contributions that each of you makes as dedicated professionals, men and women who serve others to help improve the quality of life for the people that you serve, but also for our community. And so with a, you know, deep deal, with a great amount of appreciation and thanks on behalf of this board, on behalf of a grateful community, we want to recognize this as a Human Services Professionals Appreciation Week in Sacramento County, offer our thanks and certainly commend you to your work that you do each and every day very competently and very well and with a lot of caring and compassion. So, Anna, I present this to you on behalf of your colleagues here today and all of those that you represent and offer our congratulations, so.
Thank you.
You bet.
Thank you, everybody, and good morning. DHA's main objective is to always address our customers' needs on the first contact. New Paths on this Human Services Week and through all the years, through all the days of the years, our main objective is always to address the needs of our customers. We at New Paths represents all programs under the direction of Director Ann Edward.
Would you like to introduce yourselves? Tell us which department you work in or which section, so.
Yep.
My name's Jose Hernandez. I work for the Department of Human Assistance, East Commerce.
My name is Yolanda Jackson and I'm at ES for GA and CalFresh Medical.
I'm Lori Wilson and I work for DHA. I'm in the CalWorks Service Center. My team that I supervise is the customer support for the new service center and I work at Suzie Gaines Mitchell.
Good morning. I'm Danielle Walker, Human Services Specialist, Department of Human Assistance at the CalWorks Service Center.
Good morning. Elena Yakovleva. I'm a Human Services Specialist, works in a new setting called Center for CalWorks and we provide range of public assistance for families with children and it's kind of demanding job and we try to do it our best.
Good morning. My name is Margaret Murphy. I'm a Senior Eligibility Specialist. I'm presently working in hearings compliance at the 19th Street Bureau, so I'm close, but it was not an easy job getting here this morning.
All right. Well, I'm going to invite me and Gladys and our other, our leadership team to come and join our professionals here and we'll get a group picture and...
Can I just say something?
Oh, sure. Yes, please.
I just want to say to all of you, you do an amazing job every day and the work is really demanding and you do it with care and compassion and integrity and I really appreciate all that each and every one of you here and back at the department do, so thank you.
Thanks, Anna. Thanks. Thank you so much. Thanks. Thank you so much and appreciate the folks being here today and taking the trouble to get here, all the way from 19th Street even, so. Okay. With that, then, if we'll go ahead and we have our next presentations, I believe, so.
Item 20 is the presentation in recognition of the 2017 Heroes of Human Service Award recipients.
Okay. Well, this is an annual recognition as well and I know that Sherri Heller is coming forward and she'll be the mistress of ceremonies for us this morning and does a tremendous job, but just note that those of you that are in the audience this morning, they'll be recognized, but also those that are here and in support of, we appreciate all that you do and we're getting a chance in just a moment to recognize you, you know, individually, but collectively we say thanks, again, because you're part of the team that helped us make this community a good place to live and we serve, again, people with tremendous challenges in some cases, but makes for a better quality of life. So with that, Dr. Heller, I'm going to turn it over to you and allow you to get us started.
Thank you, Mr. Natoli. You said that thing about everybody looking at you from behind.
So only have five.
So I decided it would be the board members. With respect. I hope that's okay. So let me, this is a great day, right? This is a happy thing. We're honoring our volunteers. I want to begin by recognizing the members of the Human Services Coordinating Council, itself a group of volunteers, who all year long advise my human services programs and the, especially the Board of Supervisors, on human services issues and they're the ones who ran this nomination process, put the awards program together, donated and set up all that food that you saw outside in the hallway, right? That wasn't the taxpayers, that was the Human Services Coordinating Council and we have several members, can you just wave or something, the people who are here from the Human Services Coord... Yeah! Thank you. Now, I'm going to tell you the rules of how this is going to go so that it's smoothly and everybody gets to enjoy the event and it doesn't take all morning, okay? You ready? You should nod or I'll just keep explaining them. All right. All right. Here, what's going to happen is I'm going to say the name of the person or persons being honored and then all you in the crowd, don't do anything. Don't clap yet, all right? This is how we're going to make it go efficient. And then I'm going to say nice things about why we're recognizing the volunteers and meanwhile, while I'm saying those nice things, the volunteer is walking, right? Walking, walking, walking to the podium and the supervisor from the district where the person is being honored from will also be walking, walking, walking. They meet at the podium. Isn't that nice? Okay? Then everybody claps. Everybody got the picture? Then the supervisor will have an opportunity to say why the person is worthy of being recognized and make a few remarks and then somebody representing the honorees will have the opportunity to make a few remarks. Now, here's the trick. You put your mouth in between the two microphones, okay? If you go like this, it doesn't work as well. Everybody got that? This is my favorite part, is when the honoree gets to make remarks. After that, first of all, they shouldn't go on for too long, right? Then the honoree and the supervisor go around the podium like this. For the grip and grin.
Grip and grin.
Grip and grin. Everybody who wants to take pictures can be on the stairway. Then we move on to the next one. Now, there's an exception to the rules for the Del Campo people. It's not that I don't think you can follow the rules, it's just that I don't really think when you all come down here, you can do it quietly while I'm talking. So in the case of Del Campo, I'm going to say all the nice things and then you get up, right? And when you do the grip and grin, it won't be in front of the podium, it'll be back here so we can fit you all. All right? And you go back and tell everybody at school that you were the ones who were given permission not to follow the rules. All right. We are getting underway. We're going in district order to begin with District 1 and we are first honoring Steve Hill, who's walking and Mr. Serna's walking, but we're all being quiet while I tell you about him. Steve Hill served Sacramento County for 35 years as a deputy sheriff, but that's not why we're honoring him. After the end of that service, after retirement, he became involved with the Search and Rescue Unit, which is a nonprofit organization of skilled volunteers who look for missing persons. They're trained, they do it on foot, on horseback, canine searches, for 14 years and over 4,700 volunteer hours. This gentleman, Steve, has cared for the volunteers, guided them, provided them with the technical tools they need, whether it's maps, compass, search techniques. He recently took a vacation for the first time in years and while on vacation, he coordinated the search for an elderly Elk Grove man who was missing for over 24 hours. That level of skill, volunteer energy, guidance, and caring is more than public service. We think it's worthy of recognition and we're eager to hear from him. Please join me in congratulating him.
So for as organized as Dr. Heller is, she didn't forewarn me that she's going to steal all the thunder and recite all the accolades, well-deserved accolades that Mr. Hill deserves as one of our heroes, 2017 Heroes of Human Services. Dr. Heller mentioned some of the activities that Mr. Hill is involved with in terms of the very important job of search and rescue and his history doing that. I think given the unfortunate circumstances of the last few months globally, we've seen hurricanes and other natural disasters which really underscore the need for the kind of volunteer activity that people like Steve Hill commit themselves to when it comes to the important job of making sure that injured are found and that we, as a local government, continue to provide the resources necessary so that he can continue to do the great job that he does. So it is my honor this morning on behalf of District 1 to present Steve Hill this resolution, acknowledging him as a 2017 Hero of Human Services.
I'm very honored to get this award. We have a great group. The whole back row there is all my search and rescue team, they're here. Why, I don't know, but they're here. I think the reason I've stayed with this so long, I've been with the Sheriff's Department over 40 years and the reason I stay with it so long is because of those people. Thank you very much.
[applause] This way. There you go. Yep. Perfect. Thank you.
Terrific. The next person we are honoring is from District Two, so if Mr. Kennedy could join us at the podium. We are honoring Juan Jonathan Maldonado and the nomination comes from La Familia Counseling Center. Juan is a young man with special needs who's currently 23 years old and works at the elementary school as a yard attendant. But when he was about 12, his mom came to La Familia looking for assistance and Juan started out by participating in a whole lot of community events, karate classes, he volunteered to assist the sensei at karate. He comes in early, sets up the table, stays late, cleans up, he just helps out wherever he's needed. He's in the out-of-school program where he worked as a stalker at the Mercado Local Market where he gained work experience, volunteered all summer long at the summer lunch program and is active in all of the volunteer community events, health and safety fairs, resource fairs, the Latino Parade, Halloween, Christmas. I think what, what characterizes him, always the first to arrive, always the last to leave. The people at La Familia estimate that in the 12 years he's been volunteering there, he's volunteered over 10,000 hours and serves as a role model for all of the people at La Familia. Please join me and welcome him.
I want to, on behalf of District Two and the Board of Supervisors, I am extremely proud to be presenting this to Juan. La Familia is, and I don't make much of a secret of it, probably my favorite organization in Sacramento County. And it's only as good as it is because of people like Juan and the work that you do. I mean, just hearing about it, reading about it, I'm exhausted. So, you know, thank you for your commitment to La Familia, to District Two, to Sacramento County and more importantly, the people that, that are served by that great organization. So, thank you very much.
Thank you for everything you are able to do.
We have two volunteers who we're honoring in District Three, but it turns out that I'm the one who didn't follow the rules. And the remarks I've been given are duplicate the ones the supervisor have been given. So here's what's going to happen, I'll say the name, the person can walk and you can clap and I won't say anything about why we're honoring them, we'll just let the supervisors do it, okay? I'm just trying to be resourceful and correct the error here. So the first person we're honoring from Supervisor Peter's district is Dr. Zoe Gore and she'll tell you about it.
Hi Zoe, Dr. Gore. Dr. Gore is a pediatrician for Kaiser Permanente and saw firsthand that many of her patients did not have adequate access to fresh fruits and vegetables. This is kind of a food day because Del Campo is coming next. 2015, she and her husband Richard wanted to make a difference and provide fruits and vegetables to the community, so they purchased a food truck and created the reverse food truck in which they collected nutritious food from shoppers and vendors at farmer's market and donate all of their produce to food banks, pantries and underserved schools. Their slogan is, "We don't make food, we take food." And they park the truck at farmer's markets and enables both the farmers to donate as well as the customers by purchasing produce directly from the farmers and donating to the community, which supports the farm-to-fork movement. Since 2014, they've collected over 10,000 pounds of produce and they use local teen volunteers to help collect and distribute food, which teaches them values of giving back to the community and why fresh produce is so important for health. Some of the fruits and vegetables have been donated to the John Still Elementary School where 100% of the children are eligible for free or reduced-priced lunches. So it's my pleasure to recognize Dr. Zoe Gore as a 2017 Hero of Human Services and to formally thank you for your dedication for providing fresh produce to the community.
Thank you. I do want to share this award with my husband who, when I came home repeatedly talking about the problem in the community, said, "Why don't we try this?" So, thank you to my husband, Richard, and also to Chris Calvin, the CEO of the American Academy Pediatrics and President of the American Academy Pediatrics California Foundation, who was the grant owner, and also to Rob Azvedo and Jen from Community Benefits who gave us the grant to be able to do the truck. So, thank you.
Mr. Dr. Gore, would you come down and get your picture taken too?
Truck-driving man, okay.
Now, I don't remember your instructions on this. I'm really confused, but I'd like to ask all the people, the young people from Del Campo to come down and gather back here. This is a big award.
Go Cougars.
So Kids Helping Kids Sacramento was founded in 2012. It's a 501(c)(3) run entirely by student volunteers at Del Campo High School. During the organization's short time of operations, the students have raised $500,000 and expended over 40,000 volunteer hours supporting various initiatives to help youth in the community be successful. The organization has 45 students on its roster and is led by seven Del Campo High School students who are responsible for all aspects of the organization, including planning activities, coordinating student volunteers, fundraising and recruiting and training new students to replace those graduate, graduate, which is really important so you don't lose all that institutional knowledge, right? So each week, these students volunteer at Carmichael Elementary School and partner with fifth, first grade students to create garden boxes to plant vegetables and help fifth grade students on art projects and these high school students also provide tutoring to kindergartners. Kids Helping Kids also sponsors graduating foster kids with a $300 shopping spree for dorm supplies, a laptop computer, plus provide guidance for selecting college classes and support on how to finance college. These students also assist families of pediatric cancer patients with expenses. They provide all of this assistance by holding three fundraising events each year. So it is my real pleasure to recognize Kids Helping Kids Sacramento as a 2017 Hero of Human Services and to formally thank each of these students' dedication and commitment to helping our children in our community. I think they deserve a standing ovation myself.
And we have a speaker.
Okay. Hi, I just wanted to say that we are so happy that we've been able to be honored with this award. There's 45 people standing behind me and we love what we do every single day. It's such a joy to get to work in our community and change the Sacramento community and hopefully the world. So, thank you.
Good start.
Yeah.
Thank you. Get ready to write a report on this for class. Isn't this heartening? Doesn't this cheer you up? Great event. We learned last night that the next recipient from District Four has been hospitalized and is about to undergo surgery and so she can't be here today. And I'm not sure whether her daughter or the community member that nominated her, both everybody's going to be here, terrific. So we want to honor Lottie Reed and, and I, I won't say much about the Golden Valley Quilters Guild, we'll leave that to Supervisor Frost and the people who are going to speak about why she was nominated.
Good morning, everyone. I'd like at this time to invite Mona Laird, Lottie's daughter, and Forrest and Sue Allen to come on down. Forrest and Sue were the community nominees for Lottie. And I'm so sorry that your mom's in the hospital.
Well, good news, she won't have the surgery.
Oh, good, okay. Okay, great. Well, Heroes of Human Service Awards is to recognize those who have touched the lives of others in our communities, who have dedicated their lives to service for others. And in District Four, we have so many people like that, that are deserving of being honored in this way, but it's my great pleasure to recognize and honor Lottie Reed, who is truly a human hero of human services. Lottie was born in Germany. She learned to knit and sew while attending Catholic school. She married Paul H. Marshall in 1948 and came to the United States in 1952. They settled in Citrus Heights in 1961 where her husband retired from the Army and they raised six children. Lottie joined her first quilting guild in 2002. And as a community service coordinator for the Golden Valley Quilter Guild, she distributed in this past year over 700 completed quilts to local agencies such as nursing homes, VA hospitals, Mary House, Weave, Harmony House and the Citrus Heights Police Department. Lottie sews quilts for the Mercy San Juan Hospice Program, Mercy Quilters, and completes on average 25 quilts for hospice each year. All year, she sews, she sews makeup bags, microwave bowl holders, mini purses, snap bags, table runners, coasters, et cetera, for the Mercy Quilters Annual October Craft Fair. Last year, the proceeds raised over $7,000. For Mary House and loaves and fishes, she shaves hats and also sews felt hats. She makes large quilt bags that are given to loaves and fishes for shower bags and smaller ones that are given to the nursing homes for wheelchairs and walkers. She also makes children's quilts and sundries. This past year, Lottie made and donated to Sutter Hospital four quilts that were auctioned for the Breast Cancer Society. She donates pillowcases and quilts to Volunteers of America. Citrus Heights Police Department gives 100 children's quilts for use in the police cars. Lottie, Lottie completed 70 of those. And I remember over time, over years, Lottie's been helping our Citrus Heights Police and our communities. She also makes children quilts, pillowcases, sundries for well springs. Lottie's quilted over 30 years and touched the lives of young and old, sick, poor, hungry and hopeless. Lottie was nominated by Forrest and Sue Allen and it is my great pleasure to recognize Lottie as recipient of the 2017 Hero of Human Services. And Mona, you should be so proud. Thank you.
Sorry, did I cut you off? No, no, we're good. Go for it. I just want to take this opportunity to thank Forrest and his lovely wife for, yeah, for nominating my mother for these awards. My mother's a very humble woman. She, she doesn't like to be recognized for the stuff she does, but I, I feel it's a great honor for our family and for my mother who spent so many years coming from Germany, not speaking English when she first got here, having to learn everything on her own. And my dad was in the service the whole time, so there's a lot of times she had to, while he was gone in Korea and a couple of other places, that she was the sole responsibility for our family. I'm the oldest of six, I look the most like her, so you're actually seeing my mom. Because there's only 17 years between us, so as I turn 70 next week, I get to remind her that, you know, she's an old lady. So, but she's very independent, she's a very strong woman and she does a lot of things just because she feels that there's a need. And all the services that she sews her quilts for, she does with a lot of love and she takes a lot of time to pick out things, especially for the children's wards. She really has an affinity for the children's wards and the homeless and all these things that she does. So, thank you very much for recognizing her and thank you Forrest and what's her name there? Sue. Sue. And Sue, because you know, because I'm almost 70 and I have these winefarts, so. But anyway, thank you very much. Mr. Natoli is en route to the podium, we have two honorees from his district. And the first is Wayne D. Harmer. Is it Hamer or Harmer? I want to make sure I say it right. Harmer, Wayne Harmer, could you join Mr. Natoli at the podium and he'll say why you're being honored?
Well, like my colleagues, I'm very pleased to be able to stand before this audience and certainly to express our thanks to all of our Heroes of Human Service, but certainly to recognize some of those from District Five. The gentleman standing next to me, I think, actually the second, second-time recipient or you were at least nominated?
About four years.
About four years ago. And what this gentleman has contributed to the community, he's resident of Ranch Cordova, longtime resident. He's a veteran who certainly served his country and then upon leaving active service, settled in Ranch Cordova about a dozen years ago. Yeah. And since that time, has left a tremendous imprint on the community. Not unlike many of you, he has found a real place in, in, in serving and giving back to his community. The list is fairly lengthy, so I won't read all of them, but when you think about some of the activities certainly in Ranch Cordova, but in the broader community, for example, the California Capitol Air Show, the annual festivities, the lighting of the Christmas tree and the Cordova Community Program that they put together, the International Festival, movies in the park, Friday Night Concerts and of course, the grand celebration, the Independence Day Celebration in Ranch Cordova, Fourth of July. This gentleman though, is not just an attendee or showing up in an hour or two in advance to see what needed to be finished off, he's there from the very beginning on the planning, the setup, the conduct of the activities and helping out wherever he can, providing a helping hand. And then there's at the end to tear down, to pack up and to get ready for the next event and, and so as the seasons come and go and celebrations occur in the community, Wayne is ever-present. And so whether it's the summertime or Halloween or Christmas or Thanksgiving or festivities throughout the course of a year, the Fourth of July as I mentioned, he is there serving people of all ages, from all walks of life and he does it out of a generosity of heart and certainly a commitment to his fellow human beings in, in his community. And so, he's never daunted by any of the challenges and certainly I know that probably goes home and just collapses at some, in some days with all of the work that he does, but he does it because he loves his community, he loves the people in his community and he's always there to volunteer and help out whenever and wherever needed. And so it's my pleasure to recognize Wayne Harmer and certainly his family, I don't know, is your wife here today with you? Okay. And his family for, you know, giving their time and effort and obviously the sacrifices they make and when he's not around to help out at home, but he's there helping the community in so many ways. So Wayne, I'm pleased to recognize you as one of the Heroes of Human Services Award winners for District Five. Congratulations.
Thank you. I love to call myself a professional volunteer.
I think he bleeds red, white, and blue. Very patriotic. All right. Mr. Natoli is going to describe for you the Respite Club and what "CLUB" stands for. We are honoring today leaders of this group, Jerry Schur, Kay Richardson, Nancy Carr, and Rita Brown can't be here, but we invite her acceptors to be here. So if you folks could come down while Mr. Natoli describes your work.
Thank you, Jerry. When you have a club, you've got to recognize the club members, and this is reflective of the group and other volunteers. So as they work their way down here to join me, I would just describe that the Respite Club, and "CLUB" in this case stands for caring, laughing, understanding, and belonging. And this group of very dedicated volunteers, individuals, work most weeks, several days during the week, at the Cordova Neighborhood Church in Ranch Cordova, where they offer the opportunity for caregivers to get a respite from their caregiving for their loved ones. And so, it's a drop-in center where folks that either have challenges due to age or stroke, dementia, are able to come and be in an environment where these ladies and others provide an opportunity for them to be nurtured, to be in a safe environment, to have the opportunity to share with one another in some activities there that are wholesome and helpful to them, provided in a way that provides, you know, certainly respectfully, a lot of kindness and caring obviously goes into it. And it allows the caregivers, oftentimes a spouse or a family member, but others as well, some much-needed time to get a respite, to do some of the things that we may take for granted, to go to the store, to get their hair done, to maybe go home and take a nap for a few hours. But all that being said, it's done in a way that then allows the family member to continue to be in an independent environment with the loving support of their family, but also then to have that needed break. And so, the Respite Club does some very, very important work, and I know that each of the people who participate in the program receive, again, a very loving and nurturing environment. And the folks that are here today, Kay Richardson and Jerry Schur and Nancy Carr, and representatives who also are kind of the leaders in the program for Rita, are going to receive on behalf of Rita Brown. But these, again, ladies and others who volunteer on a regular basis to give themselves, to allow for that needed respite, also to provide the ability for folks to live in their home and to remain in the community. And so, with that, I'm particularly pleased to recognize Nancy, Jerry, and Kay, and then Rita as well. I know Rebecca Growlich is going to receive for hers, so.
Thank you.
And so, these, this is our Respite Club representatives, and I don't know if Rebecca or one of the other ladies, all of you are welcome to offer a comment if you'd like to, so.
Well, I feel real honored that you did this for our group, and we really appreciate it, and we really love our work, and all our people work together, and we keep our senior folks happy, and it gives our, you know, the participants' families a time to be by, to do what they have to do, and our people are well cared for, and we love all our seniors. Thank you.
There's quite a difference between Mr. Natoli and I. This has been a delightful thing to do, and I'm so happy that I can do this for these people. They are the most wonderful people, and you know that before the disease took them over, that they were just so much fun to be around. Just delightful. Thank you for everything. Thank you, darling.
I didn't know we were going to have to speak today. I have to say upon what Nancy said, that the club is a, it's an honor to be a volunteer there, and I enjoy it very much. The people are very inspirational, and they have a lot of problems, but they're still very inspirational, and it's very enjoyable to be there. And I appreciate the honor of this. Thank you.
Hi, my name is Rebecca Growick. I'm the Assistant Program Coordinator for the Respite Club, and I'm here to receive the award for the one volunteer who could not make it. Just to really be clear, we are a nonprofit drop-in day program for people who are struggling with dementia. Just because you have dementia doesn't mean that you're not still a whole person who enjoys life and who can laugh and have fun. That's what the club part of our program is. We are mental, social, and physical stimulation. The respite part, as Supervisor Natoli said, is for the caregivers. If any of you have ever cared for a loved one 24/7, you know how important it is to have time for yourself. So we invite you to check us out, to come see us. If you have a friend or a loved one, or you're just interested in volunteering, that would be great to have you come. The last thing I want to say is, as most tiny little nonprofits, we operate on a shoestring. If not for our volunteers, as represented by these three women, we would not exist for those with dementia and for the caregivers. So I really do thank you for recognizing our volunteers.
I want to wrap up with one more word of thanks for the members of the Human Services Coordinating Council who put this whole program together. And I want to take just a moment to honor our own county staff, Jennifer Fong, Jerry Thompson, and Gladys Deloney is here too, who provided staff support for this whole event and for the Human Services Coordinating Council generally. My favorite part, I don't know, because of where I get to sit during this ceremony, I got to watch all of your faces, and I really have, I was touched by how attentive everybody was and how moved you were by the other volunteer stories. What a source of pride to live in a community like Sacramento County where we have so many neighbors helping neighbors. Thanks for the privilege of talking about these fine folks today, and I turn the podium back over to Mr. Chairman Natoli.
Good. Well, thank you, Dr. Heller, for your work. Okay, well, the room is aglow, certainly with all the goodwill and good work that's been recognized here today. And with that, we have a reception, as Dr. Heller pointed out, and I want to thank the Human Services Coordinating Council one more time, certainly for being here today, but also for all your efforts to work with our staff to make sure this program comes off the way it does each and every year. And so with that, we're going to take a brief recess to join all of you in the lobby for refreshments, and again, our thanks for all your good work, your angels among us. So we'll take a brief recess. Okay, since we reassemble, I'm going to call the meeting back to order, and again, thank all of you for being here this morning, and there are some refreshments. Hopefully, some of you got to share in that, meet with some of our volunteers and our Heroes in Human Service Award winners and a chance to mingle with them. So, we do still have a very full agenda, and I know we have a number of off-agenda speakers, and again, I'm going to ask for your patience, because we do have other items that are on the agenda we're going to need to get to first, so, but we'll work to try to get that done before we take a lunch break, whatever time that is, to hear from the folks that want to speak off agenda on some issues that are important to you and other folks. Okay, with that, then, let's go ahead and call the meeting back to order and call to roll the establish a quorum, and we'll get started with our printed agenda.
Okay, Supervisors Frost.
Here.
Kennedy.
Here.
Peters.
Here.
Natoli.
Here.
And you have a quorum.
Thank you.
Item 21, you are acting as the Board of Supervisors, also the Housing Authority of the County of Sacramento and the Sacramento Housing Development Corporation. It's the 2018 Sacramento Housing and Redevelopment Agency Proposed Budget.
Okay, all right, very good. With that, I see LaShelle Dozier at the podium, so LaShelle, I'll turn it over to you.
Good morning. I'm LaShelle Dozier, the Executive Director of Sacramento Housing Redevelopment Agency. So I have quite a few slides, but in the interest of time, I will be going through pretty quickly and hitting the highlights, so slow me down if you need to ask any additional questions.
I'm going to ask to slow you down right now. We heard from members of the Redevelopment Agency that, the Commission, not the Agency, but the Commission?
Yes.
That they had a very short amount of time to review the budget, and they felt uncomfortable in passing it, and there were several no votes. And I know our staff hasn't seen it, and I'm wondering if we could put this off. I don't think your budget is calendar year. I'd like to have a workshop on this issue at the Board of Supervisors and then pass it, you know, the next week, hopefully pass it, but I don't really feel prepared to discuss this in depth, because I've had, I didn't even get a briefing on it, much less staff. So, I don't know if anyone else feels the same way.
I could provide some clarification for the Commission if you'd like, but...
Okay. Well, LaShelle, I think to the point, though, this is a calendar year adoption. You're here today to do a presentation. We could, I know we've got a fairly full agenda next week, could we reagenda this for next week? Obviously, you were prepared to run through it. I know we've got a pretty, is there a way to do that and then allow the opportunity for staff review for any briefings that would occur? And again, I don't know how it works for your schedule for the presentation standpoint, but would that work, Mr. Gill or Ms. Evans?
So, we're talking about the 14th?
Yes.
We can do 11:45, but the afternoon is full.
Okay, well, we'll have to, you know, maybe have to work until lunch, but we do that frequently when we're in session. So would that be okay to put it over for a week and have that as a workshop?
If, you know, if that gives our own staff enough time to look at it and for, you know, you and your executives to make the rounds with members of the board, does it...
It's entirely at your discretion.
Okay.
I guess, when's our first December meeting?
Fifth.
December 5th.
Fifth? And is there time on that agenda to hear it?
That's a better agenda, 11:15.
Yeah. Personally, I'd rather wait until the 5th, so we've got an opportunity to get our fingers into this.
Okay. Does that cause any problems with any fund receipts or anything? It doesn't...
No, it's still, we'll still be able to meet our deadlines, because it is calendar year.
Right, okay.
So...
All right. So if we did the 5th, I probably won't, you know, we might have a workshop, but it needs to be an action item too, because again, we'll be, only have one more meeting after that, so...
We can do both.
Okay.
Do the workshop and have action at the end if the board so desires.
Okay. Be sure you put enough time on the agenda, Madam Clerk, to do both of those things.
Okay.
Okay, so...
So, sorry to get you all prepared for today, and I know you're still looking forward to a long presentation today.
Okay. So what time are we looking at? 11:45?
No, 11:15.
11:15 on December the 5th. So, we did have one speaker on this, so in the event that you, we're not having a presentation, but Mr. Frame, Eric Frame, you'd signed up to speak to this item, so we're going to be, holding this over until December 5th at 11:15. Eric, did you want to make any comments? You may not be able to return.
Yeah, I'll make a few comments anyway. That's probably a good idea, because we should add some things to the budget of the Housing Authority over here. For instance, we need some truly affordable housing in Sacramento right now, because, as we all know, there's a major homeless crisis going on. We have about 14,000 homeless in Sacramento County, and that's based on the people, they registered for homeless when they signed up for food stamps. That was 13,562, but that was about last year. So, we know that more homeless is rising at the moment. So, I would hope, since we have this extra time, we throw in some tiny homes and perhaps go even farther and open up some of the vacant buildings we have all over the city and house some people for the winter, because, you know, people are dying out there in the winter. Last year, we had about 100 people die this last winter. So, if we could open up some of these empty buildings, I know some of the people that own these buildings, they're getting tax breaks for having an empty building. This makes no sense to me. We should give them tax breaks for housing our fellow citizens. Yeah, you know, tiny homes have been working across this nation to help curb the homeless issue. Even over in Yuba City, they did a tiny home village. St. Louis, Seattle, Portland, all these cities have done tiny home villages, and they've helped curb the homeless crisis. So, I know we can do it, because it's possible to build tiny homes. I've seen it happen. You can look it up on YouTube. We have a problem with vacant lots in this city, so let's use some of those vacant lots to build the tiny home village. Let's just try one, you know? Let's try one experimental tiny home village. It'd be good PR for the city also. The city desperately needs some good PR right now. So let's try one tiny home village. Make note of it, please. Yeah. Over 14,000 homeless, 100 people died last year. Winter's coming, okay? It's already here. It's getting really cold out. People died last year. Let's house our citizens, please. Try tiny home villages, try using the empty buildings all over this city. There's plenty of them. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Eric. Okay.
So I guess I would move to continue this to December 5th at...
11:15.
11:15?
Yes.
Thank you.
All right, so move to second and continue this, item 11, to December 5th, 11:15. Nothing further, please vote.
Unanimous vote.
Thank you, LaShelle, and we'll see you back then. Okay, thanks. All right, with that, then, we'll, item 22, and we have a request to speak on that as well, so...
Okay. Item 22 is the Resolution of Necessity Authorizing an Eminent Domain Action to Acquire Real Property for the Gerber Elder Creek Channel Improvement Project from Betty Yadra Abella, located at 9548 Gerber Road.
Okay. Mr. Morris?
Good morning, Chair Natoli, members of the Board, and Mike Morris with General Services. And I'm here this morning to introduce this item, which recommends board approval for a resolution of necessity authorizing eminent domain action to acquire real property interests for the Gerber Elder Creek Channel Improvement Project. The drainage master plan includes channel improvements to Elder and Gerber Creeks. The plan specifically calls for these creeks to be deepened and widened, and will allow for the gravity drainage of future storm drain pipes and are designed to protect future developments from the impact of a 100-year flood. The affected property being presented today is located at 9548 Gerber Road. The property size is about 1.11 acres and is improved with one single-family owner-occupied residence and several accessory buildings. The real property interest required for the project is approximately 15,513 square feet of drainage easement. Staff recommends acquisition of this easement for a drainage corridor as described in the resolution of necessity. There is no executed purchase agreement to date. Staff spoke to the property owner on two occasions in February and March, and the owner seemed amenable to the agreement, but subsequent attempts to contact her, including 10 visits in person and one by phone, reaped no further contact as outlined in the history of owner contacts in your board package. We are seeking approval of the RON today to ensure that the project stays on schedule. However, we are continuing to reach out to the owner. In fact, just last week, we heard from the owner's attorney, who may be speaking here today, and have scheduled a meeting for next week to discuss the property. The county obtained an appraisal from an independent appraiser, and commensurate with that appraisal, we have, we presented an offer to the owner. As required by law, the county also informed the owner... As required by law, the county also informed the owner that of her right to obtain an independent appraisal, for which the county will pay up to $5,000, subject to certain conditions. And notice of intention to seek approval of the resolution of necessity was mailed to the property owner at least 15 days prior to the scheduled hearing. If you have any questions regarding this project or the property, I do have staff here that can address those.
Okay, thank you, Mike. Can we ask Board members any questions first on this? All right, stand by. I don't have a speaker for him, but I did have a request submitted in advance to Chair's office and to the clerk from Mitchell Abdallah, the attorney of record, I believe. Is Mr. Abdallah here? Okay, you want to come, did you, yeah, come forward, yeah, Mr. Abdallah, please.
I'm, Mr. Abdallah...
Yeah, just step me through to two of those, that'd be great, thanks.
I'm Mr. Abdallah's clerk. He just sent me here to observe and...
Okay, so, we're understanding from Mr. Morris that they're trying to arrange a meeting with Mr. Abdallah next week.
Yes, we have a meeting scheduled next week.
Okay, so was there any other information you wanted to offer for the record?
No, no, I don't.
Okay, all right, very good.
Thank you.
Thank you much for being here. Okay, anyone else wish to address item 22 on the agenda? All right, seeing Mr. Kennedy.
Move staff recommendation.
Second.
Okay, all right, so move to second to approve staff recommendation. If nothing further, then please vote.
Unanimous vote.
Okay, thank you. Thank you for being here. All right, then we're going to go then to item 23.
Item 23 is the Report Back on Potential Use of Mental Health Services Act Funds to Support Additional Services for Individuals with Serious Mental Illness Who Are Experiencing Homelessness.
Okay, Mr. Gill, any opening comments?
No, I think Dr. Heller has the presentation, and she's going to walk you through the staff report and what our recommendation is.
Okay, very good. Thank you. Good morning, Dr. Heller, once again.
Good morning. I want to first set expectations for the presentation. The presentation is not a discussion of the homelessness issue generally, and I'm not going to deal with issues of how to get developers to put up affordable housing, or how to get landlords to accept vouchers, or any of those things. The task that I've been given for this morning is narrower, and it is to assess whether or not there are Mental Health Services Act funds available for the county to increase existing mental health treatment services that would serve individuals who are homeless and who are living with serious mental illness. And if such funds are available, to make a recommendation to the Board from staff of actions that the supervisors could take to make use of those funds. There's a lot of complex material here, but the shorter answer is yes, such funds are available, and we do have a recommendation. So if you'll bear with me, I'm not going to give a dissertation telling you all about the Mental Health Services Act. There are people here who know more about it, probably, about that act. But I do want to give you just a few basics, so that you can understand some of the detail. The revenue that we get from the Mental Health Services Act is divided into five components. I'm not going to go over all the details of all of them, but the bulk of the money, as you can see here, is in a component called CSS, or Community Services and Supports. The rules, by the way, this is where most of the treatment, especially the treatment for adults, is in this component, mental health treatment. And about 80% of the annual funding we get outside of the innovation component, with the bulk of, you could say, 76 cents of every dollar, it doesn't matter, the bulk of the money is in community services and supports. There are other smaller components. There's a prevention and early intervention component. Both the community services and supports and the prevention and early intervention have in the law a three-year window for spending the money, so that does not revert back to the state. Prevention and early intervention is generally, those funds are spent to deal with childhood trauma, adverse childhood experiences, and in Sacramento County, we also have a very successful project for young adults that provides early intervention at the first psychotic break for somebody with a serious disease such as schizophrenia. There is an innovation component. These are time-limited projects that last up to five years. If the project is successful, and if the desire of the Board is to sustain such a project after the innovation period, then it has to be sustained by other funding. The management guidance that we have always been given is that in this county, it's our policy that we don't generally undertake innovations or new grant proposals and so forth unless we have a plan for sustaining them, should they be successful. Not a requirement of the law, but certainly of our policy. Briefly, here are the other two components, capital facilities and technology needs. I want to make clear this is a small component, and it's not enough to do housing with. It's generally for technological innovations and workforce education and training. All of these short-term, limited-term funds, if the projects are to be sustained, are generally sustained with the community support, the CSS section or component of the Act, of the revenue. All right, a few things about management of Mental Health Services Act funds that I think will clear up some of the misunderstandings that may have been created based on earlier documents. All of the funds that the county has are being spent within allowable timeframes. And the way this works is that, generally speaking, about one-third to one-half of the revenue on hand at the any given year, we spend in the subsequent year. Sort of a first-in, first-out. We always spend the older money first. So if you're spending one-third to one-half of the money in any given year, you're going to spend all of it within the allowable three-year timeframe that applies to the majority of the components. That means that there is no reversion risk, no risk of having to pay money back to the state for the vast majority of the funds, certainly not any reversion risk of the money having to be paid back to the state in the community support component. The general point I'm trying to make here is to correct any impression that was left in the past, that, that we are accumulating aging funds, old funds, and then more the next year, and then more the next year, and that the old funds are building up. The closing balance at the, of any given fiscal year, and the way we've been managing the funds to date, represents about two years of operating expenses in addition to the allowable prudent reserve. I think, I think that's an issue worthy of discussion. Two years of operating expenses in the bank at any given time is, in fact, more than a prudent reserve. It's somewhat high. County staff recognized this about two years ago and began working with the Mental Health Services Act Steering Committee to expand programming, and added programs such as the Full Service Partnership for Transition Age Youth, a plan to extend the Urgent Care Center past its innovation period and so forth. So I think there is an acknowledgement that the balance on hand, which represents about two years' worth of operating expenses, is high unnecessarily so. Last point I wanted to make about our management of MHSA funds to date is that there are no funds reserved for long-term obligations. There is no cash on hand in an account that is reserved for obligations that won't come for a long period of time. So in particular, for example, mention was made the last time there was discussion of MHSA, of some $36 million or more that would be needed to support treatment services for No Place Like Home, which is a program that hasn't begun yet. To clarify, there is no reserve, there is no cash on hand that is being held for that purpose. Similarly, but with a little more complexity than I'm going to describe, there is no reserve, there is no cash set aside now for the long-term obligation of refinancing existing permanent supportive housing units. And I'll get, I want to come back to that in just, in just a minute, because there's some complexity associated with that one. When we project the future, what can we afford going forward in MHSA funds? We know, and I'm going to show you in a moment the numbers, so you can see this for yourself and don't just have to take my word for it. In the future, we are projecting operating deficits, starting in fiscal year 2018, 19, and continuing. Now, by operating deficit, I mean that the incoming revenue is not enough to cover the ongoing expenses in any given year. The plan then is, in fact, to spend down the fund balance. Now, we can change assumptions. There's assumptions that we'll be quite transparent about. So, we've assumed a 2% increase in revenue each year in the, in the planning, the projections into the future. And one might quibble with that and say, oh, no, the millionaires in California are doing really well, and we expect more tax revenue to be available to this program. Similarly, we might challenge the expenditure assumptions. The expenditure assumptions, I'm having trouble with that word, let me try again. The assumptions made about expenditures going forward show what we have budgeted, and one might quibble with that and say, well, you never spend as much as you've budgeted, so there's going to be more revenue left at the end of the year. We have tried in these projections to make some conservative and some reasonable and some generous assumptions and be transparent about those. So, for example, we haven't shown revenue enhancements, adjustments that might be made by the state, but we also haven't shown any reduced revenue for No Place Like Home, when that reduces the revenue by about expected 7%. A lot of detail here, but the point I'm trying to get across is that the assumptions we've made are transparent, and the projections would change if you changed them. When you see the projections, these are things that are not included. We have included no expenditures for No Place Like Home, treatment costs, and no revenue reductions for No Place Like Home. We have shown no additional mobile crisis teams. So you know we have four of those operating now. We have requests from other police forces, such as Elk Grove and Rancho Cordova. We've shown no funding for that kind of an expansion. We note that our funding for the staff, the clinical staff, the navigators that we've placed in hospital emergency rooms, at the jail, and at Loaves and Fishes, will expire this coming July. And in our projections forward, we have made, we have shown no expenditures for continuing those services. So if we're going to continue those services, we still need to look for funding for that. We have shown no additional services in these projections for foster children and youth, and we have some expectation that there will be a demand for such services as we try to find foster families who will take some of our most troubled children. We have not shown any funding for the sustaining of the proposed new innovation project, which is a public-private collaboration, multiple counties, hospital-based crisis stabilization unit. And we have not put on any of these projections that we're showing you today as you, for your knowledge, as you consider what to do here. We've shown no, nothing outside the MHSA budget, but some of the proposals on the table will, in fact, increase expenses elsewhere in the budget. So, for example, as we identify more adults with serious mental illness, we will find that there's inpatient hospitalization costs associated with their needs, and none of those are shown in the Mental Health Services Act projections, because they would be funded by realignment or general funds. Now, I've said what we haven't included. Here's what we have, here's what we have included, and I said I would come back to the refinancing of the existing permanent supportive housing units. We have included in our proposed expenditures in the MHSA plan that already exists, the Board has adopted, $5 million a year for three years, I'm sorry, for, yeah, for three years, that would be expended by the county, not held in a county reserve, but expended to SHRA and/or the California Housing Finance Agency for the purpose of refinancing the existing MHSA permanent supportive housing units. So it's in the expenditure line. It's over three years, total of $15 million is there. That's in the existing plan, and we continue to show it. I wanted to take just a minute and talk a little bit about what we mean by refinancing. Refinancing is kind of an odd term, and I wish, I wish we didn't, I wish that wasn't the word, because it communicates something that isn't quite right. When you think of a refinancing, you think about like redoing your mortgage to get a better interest rate. That's not really what's going on here. There's two things going on. There's a recapitalization of the housing units so that they can be maintained, air conditioners can be fixed, floors can be replaced that have warped or something like that. That's a capital. And there's also a capital operating reserve, and that's crucial to our success with putting up housing for needy individuals, like the ones we serve in the mental health program. The operating reserve is used to pay the difference between the rental cost that the developer or landlord must charge and the social security or other income that the person with mental illness has. So the social security check might not cover the actual cost to operate the unit, and the capital operating reserve fills that gap. So it's those two things that we mean by refinancing, right? Capital to take care of the buildings and the operating reserve. The first commitment, I do think this came across, the first actual commitment for the refinancing must be made in 2021, and then it stretches out in time across that. Now, these are estimates of what will be needed for the refinancing, or the recapitalization and replenishment of the operating reserve. It's an estimate. It could change. For example, if more housing vouchers became available for people living in these supportive housing units, then the need for operating reserves would go down. So there's, there's some flexibility and other work that you'll be doing is relevant to how much of this we'll need. But I wanted to get across that $15 million is in the planned expenditures. The reason we left, we gave, I want to say with that, the staff working on this gave thoughtful consideration to whether to leave that $15 million in the recommendation. And we left it there for two reasons. One is that if we don't set aside money for those recapitalizations, there'll be a big $20 million demand farther in time that will probably require a general fund to keep these, these units operating. That one's pretty obvious. But the second reason we didn't is that if you take that $15 million and invest it in services and programming in the short term, over the next three years, and don't put it in this plan to recapitalize the buildings, the programs you put up with that $15 million will be unfunded after three years, and there wouldn't be a plan to sustain them. Also, in the projections, and I'm telling you all this, because if you want to move it around, you'll know where, where your opportunities are.
Dr. Heller, can I just get a clarification? Just because the chart that's in the staff report, to your point about, and I think you made clarification about operating revenues versus refinancing, but if I read the chart that's on page seven, which I don't think is in your PowerPoint, it shows that the first, the first one that would come up for refinancing on that part of the ledger would be, actually refinanced in year 2023. 2021 requires a commitment, though, and, so I guess I'm understanding your point about if you start other things and then don't have funding to carry forward. So, I guess what I would take from this, though, that very little of this $15 million that's currently budgeted would go to refinancing, because you only, you only have two projects that are going to be called out for in 2021, and if you, if you're operating on three years in, three years out, relative to the, to the flow of money, then I guess I'm trying to figure most of this money would be for the operating capital program support versus refinancing?
Well, we use the term refinancing to refer to both. Recapitalizing the buildings for improvement and the operating reserve.
Okay, so you're talking about improvement to the buildings, so there...
Right. So it goes into both, and the extent to which it's used for either purpose, the capitalization or the establishment of the, or the replenishment of the operating reserve varies by unit, by operator, and so forth. I think that the larger concern about not doing this with the $15 million is, and the reason the staff didn't recommend diverting the $15 million, is not only that you would have to come up with general fund to do these refinancings at the time, but more likely that the $15 million you'd invest in programming would be done in the three years, and there would not be funds to sustain the new programs you'd put up, and you'd have to roll them back.
And I just wanted a clarification, as you've said it a couple of times, it was in the staff report, it was alluded to, and again, I don't want to interrupt your presentation, but as relates to use of general fund, I mean, there are a number of sources. Obviously, a general fund can serve as the backdrop for any particular issue, and again, it's called upon very heavily, as we all know, but it's not certain that that, the general fund would be called upon. I mean, again, you have the ability, depending upon flow of monies and a variety of things, and certainly truing this up in any given year, of actually looking at where you were, and so that not everything between 2021 and 2028 is going to be potentially a general fund exposure. I guess I don't necessarily see that as being the case, and tell me if I... And tell me if I'm wrong on that, but, you know, that general fund kind of puts a scare into folks on this side of the dais because then you wonder whether that competes against sheriff and libraries and parks and human services and on and on and on. But there's no, we have to watch this very carefully, I think.
Forgive the double negative, but you're not wrong.
Yeah.
There is no, you're correct that when the refinancing comes due, or when the $15 million would run out and we'd have to find funds to sustain the new programs in three years, it would not necessarily be required to use general fund.
You might cut programs, you might do something else, you might find another source, but you're going to be faced with a question.
Correct. We could cut other programs. That is correct. And I used to think that there was a likelihood that we could use realignment in such a situation. However, since the state diverted the growth in behavioral health, mental health realignment to deal with the IHSS program, I think there's virtually no growth expected in behavioral health realignment that could substitute. The staff recommendation is as it is because the management guidance that we've always operated on is don't start a new program if there's a likelihood that in three years you're going to have, you may need, you may need general fund to sustain it. And that's the management rule we've used. Obviously, you're the board of supervisors, you have the discretion to say, here's an exception to the rule if you choose to.
Right. And I appreciate, I guess I would just maybe, you know, for purposes, kind of categorizes this very simply, that it's certainty versus some degree of uncertainty, although there's uncertainty in a lot of things we do when it comes to budgeting, and again, we want to be prudent about it, talking about reserves, but also how you plan for it. So thanks for your explanation.
I'll show you the numbers so you can understand the level of certainty. And I wonder if we could go to the overhead projected because nobody's going to be able to see that chart. So we're going to try something else. Can I talk from this microphone and be heard while I'm over here?
Sure.
I'm glad I got a mic here. So here's a couple of things I want to illustrate from the points I just made. First of all, here's a year-end fund balance for one year. Doesn't matter what year it is, I'm trying to illustrate a point here. Great, thank you. And you see that in the subsequent year, there's 111 in the fund balance at the end of the year. In the subsequent year, the expenditures are some 46 million. So this illustrates the point that I was trying to make about how in any given year we spend a third to half of the funds on hand. And that's why there are no funds that last more than three years. So that's the first point that's illustrated. The second one is to look at the projected revenue and expenditures. And you can see that beginning in 2018, 19, the expenditures exceed the revenues in each of these years, which is why you have operating deficits in each of those years. This is in the existing plan with no changes. Now, that being said, what you see is that the unspent funds are going down. That was the intent. I think there is an acknowledgement of all of this, that having two years' worth of operating expenses in your fund balance is excessive when there are needs currently in the community that we should be meeting. So you see the fund balance going down, but not to zero, even in the projections, which is why the staff is saying, yes, you do have funds available in MHSA to put up additional services for individuals with severe mental illness who are also homeless. These fund balances that I'm showing you, which are not zero but which are going down, are in addition to the prudent reserve, which can be accessed when the state pulls a trigger having to do with the economy. So what else can I tell you about these? Here's where, in these expenditures, the projected expenditures in these three years include $5 million a year that we paid to SHRA or the Housing Finance Authority for the coming recapitalization and replenishment of the operating reserves for our existing housing. So there's your $15 million that we do not recommend diverting for the reasons I've explained, but I'm trying to be transparent about what's there.
Appreciate. We have a couple of questions, Dr. Heller, too. Supervisor Frost and Supervisor Serna, probably on that chart, so.
In the years 18 through 23, where we begin to run in the negative, that does not include the No Place Like Home 17, approximately 17 million that was described in your report. Is that correct?
That is correct. There are no planned expenditures anywhere in these projections for No Place Like Home. And similarly, there's no reduction in revenue shown. We expect possibly here or possibly here to see about a 7% reduction in revenue because that's how the state is funding the No Place Like Home. So we've shown neither here.
But in, so for No Place Like Home in 2021, it's an added 4 million. In 21-2, it's 6.3. 22-3, it's 6.3. So in theory, the end deficit is 17 million more plus the navigator funding, how much, you said our navigator funding ends in 2018. What is the amount of the navigator funding?
I don't have that at my fingertips. I have knowledgeable staff here, and I think before you vote, there's lots of people who want to testify. We'll put our heads together and answer that question before you have to take action.
But also, then, the urgent care, which is an added 3 million that'll go into CSS, that will be an added cost on the community services side for a continuing program. Is that correct?
The urgent care continuation in CSS after the innovation period is over is in these expenditure lines. So we have accounted for that.
It is included.
Yes.
But a new innovation program will come, will added funding come for a new innovation program?
Should we receive approval for the multi-county crisis collaborative? That's a partnership with a private hospital system. That'll be funded for a while out of innovation. It would have to be sustained with community services funds, but it's outside the period of this chart. So sustaining of that project would come sort of out here. It wouldn't change this number.
The No Place Like Home, we had intended to use MHSA funds for that. That can be used for the No Place Like Home refinancing.
That's correct. Well, I wouldn't call it a refinancing there. No Place Like Home requires us to make a substantial commitment of treatment dollars for the people who would live in the new housing. So that's the implication there, is we would need to put up a new treatment system for these folks. Although I would go on to say that, to be clear, that the same people who might benefit and need services for No Place Like Home are the people we might be serving in the programs we're proposing to put up now for homeless individuals.
So if you didn't put away that extra 5 million each year and you actually spent more upfront, how much time would you need? Would there be time to, would there be a way to say, you know, we don't want the general fund to be backfilling MHSA, we want to utilize the funds prudently and maximize what we can get out of them? How much time would you need in order to have a heads-up that you're going to have this need for funding? I mean, is that what you planned on? Is that the time you need? Or could it be done in a shorter period of time? Or is that just kind of gambling because you don't really know what your revenues are going to be each year because they fluctuate?
I think the answer is a little of each, to be honest. The plan is not to have any ambiguity there, to put this 15 million aside. We've already put 5 million aside last, that 20 million is about what we need to replenish the capital, according to our estimates. If we don't have that plan in place, then as we approach the refinancing period, we would have to be assessing our fund balance, setting aside funds within the three-year window, right about here, to begin putting aside funds to make sure we have them available, or we would have to go to general fund or realignment or some other source. What we don't want to do is have those projects fall apart. They're serving hundreds of people.
Okay. And then lastly, during our budget discussions, we talked about the foster care continuum and the possible need for more funding. We said we're going to give 3.6 million, but we may have to give more. We anticipate there's going to be more coming. Were we planning on paying for that through this funding, the MHSA? And is that included in these numbers?
It's hard to bend over. I'm going to go to the other mic. In our initial planning for changes in the foster care system associated with continuum of care reform, child welfare, continuum of care, we had really counted on mental health realignment funding for most of the support services that the foster children and the foster families would need. Given that the state diverted health realignment funds significantly for in-home support services, it'll either be general funds or MHSA that we will need. And we had planned on, we had begun our planning, looking at MHSA funds for the foster youth. Even in our recommendation that we're making today, and the staff is recommending additional services, substantial additional services for adults with severe mental illness who are homeless, we are counting on the PEI, the prevention and early intervention component of Mental Health Services Act funding to support the foster children. But I think everybody knows from other stories how much difficulty we're having placing those children and wrapping them with all the services they need so the foster families will take them. So it is a source of genuine concern.
So, but if we do include more upfront because we have this need, then it could potentially take funds that we would have had and require us to use general funds for the foster care continuum. Is that correct?
I think that's an accurate conclusion.
And then in, just for now, the final question is, it seems like, and tell me if I'm wrong, you can say we're going to spend, we're going to have a 75-bed facility with wraparound services, and you can appropriate money for that. But making that happen doesn't always, you can't just snap your fingers. In fact, you could throw a bunch of money out, you could appropriate a bunch of money out there the first year but not be able to bring that to fruition because you just can't get it done that fast. Is that a correct assumption? So just because we appropriate the money doesn't mean we're going to be able to get it on the ground and running and working that fast. I mean, we're still, we approved our initiatives, homeless initiatives, and allocated an extra $12.2 million just a couple of months ago, and those are still, we're trying really hard to get those in place. So it takes time.
It certainly is true that it takes time. I know that I have had conversations with the county purchasing director about when we can expand behavioral health services with existing contractors as opposed to having a whole new procurement. Those discussions are happening, and given the sense of urgency, I think, it's hard for me to predict how fast we can get such services on the ground, but we're in discussions now about how we can expedite.
We have existing facilities, so if we did allocate more funds upfront, could we put it, do we have the infrastructure to put it to work to really do what we're being at to help out in this way? Can we put it to work because we have that infrastructure? We already have the building, we can add more wraparound mental health services. Is that the case? We have room for expansion?
Most of the services we're talking about here are not residential, so I don't really think of them in terms of a building. But certainly, our programs and our contractors, knowing the need, would be highly motivated to deliver these services rapidly.
That's all for now. Thanks.
Supervisor Serna and Supervisor Kennedy.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Just one question. First of all, I think the part of the staff recommendation that I greatly appreciate, and hopefully it's not lost on everyone that's been monitoring this developing issue, is the fact that in the recommendation, you're looking at the out-years, the years past the life of the grant, years four through six, or perhaps in perpetuity, and how Mental Health Services Act funding would be used to affect the effectiveness of the intent of the grant and the years past the third year. So because you have this chart up, and I thought this was the right time since this table is in front of us, can you just briefly explain how we are making an assumption here about the available funding in those out-years past the life of the grant?
I'll try to do so with this table here, and then I'll come back to it when I, there's two more that show various scenarios.
If you want to wait to do it, then that's fine. I just want to, I think it's a unique part of the recommendation that I think deserves a little explanation in terms of what we're, you know, what we're assuming about the projected estimated amounts of various, you know, various Mental Health Services Act funding by way of the categories that we all acknowledge that permit us to be able to do that because I think it's an important part of what we'll be asked to make a decision about today.
The assumption that we used in putting together our recommendation was that whatever programs we put on the ground should be sustainable, that however, that it doesn't make sense to think about taking programs down after a grant expires.
Thank you very much.
The people will be there, they will still have some degree of impairment, they will still be in need of treatment. The contractors will have hired staff, and the demand will still be there. What's going on in this table that I would draw your answer to and answer to the question is that the fund balance, which here represents about two years' worth of operating expenses, is being spent down every year to this point, at fiscal year '21, '22. Now, the fund balance is at one year of projected operating expenditures. And if it went into the future and these assumptions held true, we would eventually get to zero in a fund balance.
Okay, so as part of the answer, then, we're expediting, the assumption is we're expediting use of the funding that we get from the state, and that permits us to do a better job of projecting out those out-years and the ability to sustain the impact of the grant?
Yes, I think that's accurate. We are saying it was never the case that we were illegally holding money past the allowable timeframe because we were spending the first in, first out. But it is the case that we currently have funds on hand that represent more than two years of operating expenses, and given the level of crisis in our community and if the board's intention is to use this funding source to address that, that is affordable and sustainable at a certain level.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, thanks, Dr. Heller.
Let's go back to the PowerPoint again.
Supervisor Kennedy, just give it.
Oh, I'm sorry, Mr. Kennedy. Thank you, Mr. Chair. So I have one fundamental question about this chart and the numbers it represents. It's almost as though it's taken in a vacuum and nothing else is going on. And so my question is, at any point, do we take into account, because we have now, as a county, committed to working with the city on whole-person care. So it stands to reason that if we're going to do that, and we're going to be serving those people regardless if there ever was whole-person care or not, because it's what we do, it's a mandate. But this doesn't take into account that $64 million that is going to be utilized largely for navigation and case management and coordinated entry. So we're kind of pretending like that's not happening. That should change our bottom line if we're utilizing those funds that the city has gotten through whole-person care, right?
It is the case that this chart represents the current approved MHSA plan, which does not take into account the potential for a significantly increased number of people being referred for our treatment services yet. When we get to the staff recommendation, you'll see, I mean, you'll see that we are recommending additional services and funding that would take that into account.
Supervisor Kennedy, this chart was to answer the question, where are the funds and what category are they in? That's what this shows. When Sherry gets into Attachment 2 and Attachment 3, then that whole-person care and any other initiative we're doing, that factors in then.
Okay, thank you.
But, I mean, the general point about this chart, which it does not take into account the potential that there would be a significant take into account the potential that there would be a significantly increased number of people presenting from services beyond, for services beyond current projections, such as if the navigators uncover more. And that's why we're acknowledging and saying, yes, we think there's a need. This chart was designed to address where is the money? How could we afford within MHSA to take into account that new demand? So let's go to, let's go back to the PowerPoint briefly. One more page, oh, it's me. It's my, sorry. There we go. This is the basic logic on how the staff sized the initial county proposal. We begin with the point in time count of individuals who are homeless in the county. The chronically homeless is a different federal definition, which may come into play, but that's, the 3665 is the significant number here. Generally speaking, the point in time count of court is an underestimate of how many people there are in the year. And my understanding from the people who are familiar with the terms of the art is that you double that number to estimate. So the 3665 doubled. We then took the federal, this is the Substance Abuse and Mental Health Services Association and the Housing and Urban Development, they estimate 20% to 25% of homeless individuals are living with a serious mental illness. You might read other assumptions. I know if you, if you just, if you assess how many people who are homeless are suffering from depression and anxiety disorders and so forth, you would get a higher number. But in California, we have diagnoses and degrees of impairment that designate serious mental illness of the nature that the county would serve, as opposed to the managed care firms that are paid by Medicaid to serve people with those other disorders. So we start with the assumption that there are some 1,500 Sacramento County residents who would present to us, who are homeless and also need treatment for a serious mental illness. We estimate that about half of those are already receiving county services because we do have a lot of services on the ground now that serve homeless and recently homeless individuals, or that their diagnoses are such that, and their degree of impairment is such, that the managed care firms and the clinics under contract to those management care firms should be serving them as opposed to the county's mental health plan. And I'll just say that, I mean, these assumptions are discussable. We're not here to advocate for these numbers. We're just being transparent about how we built our recommendation. The additional services that we're recommending today include 200 additional enrollments in full-service partnerships. That's our most intensive program. It's the one that's most flexible. It takes into account housing needs. And it also, if there's a co-occurring substance use disorder and mental illness, there's the potential to deal with that as well in a full-service partnership. And an additional 600 enrollments in other levels of care outside of full-service partnerships. We have costed those out and come to a cost for such services of some $11 million annually, $7 million from the Mental Health Services Act, which would draw an additional estimated $4 million of federal Medi-Cal funding. And we have projected out for six years. Six years is not a magic number, by the way. It's just like what would fit on the chart. The intention, the intention is that this is an ongoing program. So if you wanted to say another year, then it would be 77 million. So there's no magic about that number.
Sheri, just real quickly, so on that number, though, with 11 million and the 4 million drawdown Medi-Cal, combined with the seven from MHSA, is that formula, if there were additional monies available, is that pretty much, you know, that 60, 40, 55, 45, is that, you know?
Roughly speaking, that's a good rule of thumb.
Okay.
I mean, it varies.
So it's scalable?
Yes, it is scalable. Absolutely. One, you know, it depends on the nature of the service. Some of the services provided here are Medicaid eligible and draw federal match, and some are not. So this is our rough estimate that we use. But it is scalable. I mean, it's scalable numerically and financially. Whether it's scalable, whether, you know, whether the providers can find enough licensed clinical staff to scale up is a whole separate question. And it's relevant to the question Supervisor Frost asked me about how fast this could roll out, about how fast staff could be hired and identified without raiding them from our existing contracts and programs.
Okay.
This plan, by the way, as I said at the outset, is limited to a discussion of what we can do with Mental Health Services Act funds on hand. It does not yet take into account the next big behavioral health project that we have in the works. As you know, for some time, we have been working toward a recommendation to the board to opt into the, what's called the Organized Delivery System waiver, which is the drug and alcohol or substance use disorder waiver. And that is going to significantly increase the funds available, especially detoxification, residential treatment, medication-assisted treatment, all those kinds of treatment for addiction disorders would be substantially increased. So we're not prepared to quantify that for you until we come to the board with the waiver recommendation for drug and alcohol. But I want to make clear that I think that the population of homeless individuals who are, who are suffering from disease, whether it's a mental health illness or addiction-related illness, we have more plans in the works that are coming at you. Today, we're just talking about the Mental Health Services Act. And we wanted to make the point finally on this page that this is our initial service plan. We start here. If the demand is higher than can be met at this level of funding, once the programs are on the ground, once the staff is hired, once the service offerings are there, once we open our urgent care clinic later this month and see who is presenting and how many, there is, there is the ability to adjust upwards. And we'll have more information as we go along, not only about the nature of the services needed, but about the funds available. Did we spend less next year than budgeted? Did we get more revenue from the state than anticipated? So we can make our decisions about affordability in response to the demand as opposed to laying it out at the outset. That's, I guess what I want to say here is, we'll serve whoever comes to us. That's what we do. We assess their needs, and we provide the service. They're entitled to it as Medicaid eligible. So there's no cap on service. We're simply showing what we know we can afford and what we think the initial demand will be, and we can make adjustments in subsequent years.
Dr. Heller, just quickly on that last point, because I wasn't on the chart, but to your, the emphasis you put on that. So when you say, "We will serve," but you have to have the capacity to serve without long delays and so forth. And so maybe as you continue through this and you get to your wrap-up, kind of think about how, if we were to not only characterize that as you just said it, but then to actually put that into, you know, you've put forward a recommendation, and we're going to hear from lots of folks here today about that. But if we, if we make that commitment and say, "We will serve," but we also recognize there are limitations to what you've been speaking to already in that. And so with the discussion around the whole person care, it's complement to what services we would provide and the ability to do that timely and to do it in a way that's sustained, and that's an important point you've made all along. But I, but I think it's going to be critical to the decisions before us, and I speak for myself, but I think for, for, you know, the folks that are all very interested in this, certainly the board members, but people in the audience and people in the community, is that our ability to serve, as things either ramp up, either they ebb and flow, or maybe they just flow and they keep flowing, you know, the ability to do that and to then to be able to move money around. And whether it's MHSA, or it's drug Medi-Cal waiver, or it's other complements and monies, wherever they might be, I mean, that commitment of itself, and I think this county is certainly, you know, good to its commitments, to characterize that in a way that has the budgetary framework and support behind it, but certainly the policy support, is going to be, I think, key to whatever we do with the resolution. So again, I appreciate what you just said, and I think about how we might characterize that beyond whatever we talk about with dollars and/or programmatic elements that we either we want to do, would like to do, are doing. I think realistically, you've put some parameters on that, and so I don't know about the ability to, to serve.
All right.
At least all that would be present themselves.
I appreciate your emphasis on the point, and I'll simply say that I have enormous pride in the record that the professional staff, clinical administrative of our department and our providers have shown under, under extreme pressure of being able to deliver the service that people are entitled to and that people need, and to keep that in balance, to plan an expansion, know how long it's going to take to roll it out, know the likelihood of being able to find licensed clinical staff and meet the needs. The only place, frankly, in behavioral health where I think we have, we have occasionally not done that, as you know, is for residential drug and alcohol treatment, where we have sometimes had a waiting list, and we brought that to the board's attention, and the board acted by putting additional general funds in to deal with that issue. But in the case of mental health, it's always a balancing act of what's the demand going to be, which services are needed once people are assessed, and putting the programs up in time to meet the need. I think frankly, you should feel proud of our record in doing so.
Okay, thanks.
Okay, I think, I think I've said this, but I want to tell you that in our, in the plan that we have proposed for you, we are maintaining the planned expenditures for the refinancing. And I think I explained to you why we recommended that. Not primarily the one that comes to mind, which is that we might not have the funds readily available for the refinancing. But, but one that doesn't come as readily to mind, which is that if we take the 15 million that is planned to expend for the refinancing and put into programs, we don't have a means for sustaining those programs in the MHSA budget after the three years. So what our plan does, it increases the operating deficit each year and therefore spends down the fund balance. And I think I showed, I'm going to show you on the chart. I haven't showed you yet, but I'm about to. Let's do that now. Let's go to the other. So here's the same chart that we've looked at, and we've added in to the county plan the $7 million a year ongoing in perpetuity for additional services, full-service partnerships, RSTs, and so forth. I'm sorry, the regional support teams, I shouldn't talk in acronyms. And what you see is that the operating deficit increases, and you see a spending down of the fund balance. To the point where in the community services and supports, we are below, let me see if I can pick out a year. Here's where we are below one year of operating funds in the fund balance and going, that's where we run out if all of these assumptions about revenue and expenditures are true. We're adding $7 million. This is in MHSA as a whole, and this is in community services and supports component. Overall, there's still money left, but some of it is, came to us in innovation, or prevention and early intervention, or technology or workforce, and so you can't spend it to rescue the program when it runs out of money. That's the recommendation. Now, why, why do we feel comfortable, even if it's going negative out here? Why do we think this is, are we willing to recommend the $7 million? First of all, because we need to do something. The demand is real and serious. Secondly, we think that the unspent funds at two years of operating is too high and ought to be spent down. And by the time we get out here, we will know if any of these expenditures came in lower than expected and any of these revenues came in higher than expected. So we have, we have time to fix that problem.
I think one of the things that that slide, Sheri, if you can show, says countywide homeless with severe mental illness, that should be read into if it's whole person, any other city, anybody else that wants access to mental health, that's how the 7 million is designed for. And I think Supervisor Serna, you had asked a question earlier that it goes on, it doesn't stop after three years or four years. In conversations with DHH staff, what became very clear with the points that Sheri's made is that there is a need out there, and we should get the programs going and not have a situation that sometime in the future, we're looking at shutting them down. So that's the basis of us having this funding going forward. I think one of the points that Sheri made is that that is, if it changes, if the demand's more, if we need to come back, absolutely, we'll be back to the board, asking for more direction, amend the budget, what we need to do. But that's the basis for our recommendation.
And again, I appreciate the fact that staff included that in the recommendation. I think, I agree with you completely that it's incumbent upon us to address the need that's fairly obvious to everyone, not just during the life of a grant, but in perpetuity, quite frankly. And let's not kid ourselves, too. If we do something big and bold relative to what's being asked of us, what's been set in front of us in terms of the grant itself, it's going to set a very real expectation, and a rightful expectation, that the county is, you know, it's going to be a new day for not just the city-county partnership, but for the county's responsibility to address homelessness in a new, creative, and more effective way. So I think it accomplishes a number of objectives to acknowledge the fact that we have this responsibility to be responsive in those out years.
While I have the overhead projector up, I'm going a little out of order here, but we want to get through this and give other people a chance to talk. This chart, Attachment Three in the staff report, represents the proposal that city officials and others brought on October 17th, which represents an expenditure of some $18 million additional for three years of Mental Health Services Act money. We have question marks here. I mean, our view is that the people will still be there, and they still need treatment, and we'll have to sustain the program. But we didn't put that in the numbers. We didn't want you to think that we're trying to drive up the deficits or make it go to zero sooner, so we didn't put that in there. But what you can see is that the operating deficits are substantial, both overall and in the component. And we get, we get to negative in 2021. I don't know how the people in the audience can see that or not, but of course, it's all online, and people can look at these numbers for themselves. Now, there have been other iterations. I think there was one on Friday of a new variation that, that we did not try to model here because it went beyond MHSA funding, right? It included substance abuse funds and others outside of this chart. So it would have been a little bit artificial to put those numbers into this chart, because I don't think there's any intent of, of funding all of it out of Mental Health Services Act dollars. But I just wanted to show you what the effect would be.
Okay. Dr. Heller, Supervisor Serna, you had a question?
Yeah, I just wanted to point out, just because I haven't heard it mentioned yet, I'm sure it was just kind of an oversight, because this is very complicated. But all of this presumes that the maintenance of a prudent reserve currently at $19 million, correct?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes.
It's an important.
Right. The fund balance discussions we're having are, go beyond the prudent reserve. I do, the language is, the language of that is artful, but I want to make clear that it is not the case that the county decision-makers have access to the prudent reserve whenever needed to rescue a program that's negative or something like that. The prudent reserve is accessed when state officials declare it, and then other, all counties have access to their prudent reserves.
Thank you.
All right, thanks.
Okay, let's go finish up this PowerPoint presentation. That's enough with the complicated numbers. If you could bring back the PowerPoint, we'll try to get through the rest of this.
There you go.
All right. So, so the county's plan, which I've shown you on the chart, part of the reason we sized it the way we did, I've explained how we calculated the need. We could quibble about that. But there was a clear intent, if expenditures come in less than expected, or revenue comes in higher than expected, to deal with other issues that we've talked about, such as maintaining the navigators in the emergency room, and we owe you a cost on that. The mobile crisis teams and serving foster youth, there are others as well. And we've already discussed the issue of being concerned about the need for general fund. Okay, let's go past this. I'm sure, I'm sure lots of speakers will talk about the role of the county and the role of the city in dealing with this very visible issue. I just wanted to take a moment myself to say, to express some pleasure in the fact that the county and city are clearly on the same page with regard to what the most significant priority is for the county, and that is to increase treatment capacity in mental health and substance abuse. There was There was a period of time when criticism was directed at the county for leaving money on the table or for not pursuing the whole person care. Our rationale in recommending to you not pursuing that grant had to do with just this, the concern that more navigators and so forth would not, would not be our role. Our role is to increase treatment capacity and we should do that with Mental Health Services Act funds, with drug and alcohol waiver and so forth. Therefore, I see what the city and what is doing, what the county is planning as complimentary and not contradictory. And I just wanted opportunity to get that out in the hopes that somebody would report it.
Okay. Supervisor Kennedy?
Actually, I was going to draw that out of you. So.
Well, I'm glad, I don't really like getting ahead of you, but I'm glad I was on the right track there. So the services are complimentary, although we see the services we are proposing as countywide, we think there will be referrals to these services, not only from the navigators that the city is putting on the streets for whole person care, but also from the new shelter and the new housing programs that the county is establishing in and outside of the city. It's my understanding as I, as I read the city's whole person care proposal, that eligibility for the use of the funds is countywide, although the target of the project, that the managed care firms will identify and produce data and so forth, are city residents. So again, I see this as complimentary and not, should not be a source of conflict.
Dr. Howard, we have a question. Supervisor Peters?
Yep.
Thank you. Sherri, I think you read my mind. What I wanted to ask you, I haven't had a-
That's two.
Yeah, in a row. Haven't had a chance to ask you yet, but I've heard differing opinions on the city whole person care as to who it benefits. And is it countywide or is it just residents of the city of Sacramento? I'm not sure what you just said.
Well, I'm sure there are people here more knowledgeable about the city's plans, current plans than I, but I did read their proposal and what the proposal says is that to be eligible for the services funded by whole person care, you just need to be a resident of the county. It's not limited to city. But the targeting effort, the data pulls that will be done by the Medicaid managed care firms, the outreach that will be done by the outreach, will focus on the city. So it is possible that people will be served who are outside the city, but the, but the navigate, the outreach will be focused on the city. That's how I read their initial proposal. It may be that they've updated it since then.
That seems circular to me. I don't really, I'm trying to get to the point of understanding whether residents countywide would benefit from this, but it sounds like they wouldn't if the focus of the program is city residents.
So, so let me distinguish between my understanding of whole person care and my better understanding of what we're proposing. It's clear that the county program we're proposing, the treatment programs, we're proposing to expand the-
Our countywide.
Our countywide. No ambiguity there. It's my understanding from my reading of the city's proposal and my, and opportunities I've had to question staff who put that proposal together in the city, is that nobody would be turned away from whole person care or deemed ineligible to participate in the program because they have a residence, the last formal residence they had was outside of the city. Eligibility is countywide, but the outreach efforts, the targeting, the data pulls that would be done by the managed care firms and so forth will be focused on the city.
Okay, so I get, I understand targeting and outreach.
Okay, I'm sorry.
I don't understand how the data pull, I'm not sure what that is and how that might affect the decision on where someone lives.
I've gotten to the point where I feel uncomfortable explaining the city's project because I'm not-
Okay.
I'm not sufficiently knowledgeable and let's, I'm hopeful that there are people here who can answer your question about the city's intent.
Supervisor Peters, if I, if I could, besides city folks answering, what our proposal just being redundant is no matter where you are in Sacramento County, we will provide you the service. That's what we're recommending, whether you came in for whole person, our program and other data entry. So that's the big distinction.
Oh, okay.
That our program does that. We're not, in discussions with staff, we were not narrowing it down to one avenue. It was for everybody that can get into the system.
Okay.
I think I've said most of this, so I'll try to go quickly. This is our understanding of the, the request that the city made in October and I showed it to you on the chart. I won't go back to that. It reduces the fund balance in community service support to less than one year of operating by 2019, 20, which is a lot sooner, gives us flexibility to recover, and it exhausts the fund balance to zero by 21, 22. As I understand what, what happened on the October 17th, that proposal was based on taking all of the planned expenditures for the refinancing of the existing houses and diverting it to this purpose. And in addition, it assumed a reserve of some 36-plus million dollars for No Place Like Home, which does not in fact exist in current funds or in the budget. And we already did the chart.
Excuse me, Supervisor Frost?
I just want to make sure I understand this correctly because in the budget during that time, this last winter, there was one night where we were here until midnight and there were, every seat was filled in the house and we were talking about housing and how the county needed to expand our housing. And what you're talking about is the funding to continue that part of our homeless initiatives. You're talking about those refin, what's, what we're calling refinance is the, is the delta between what those individuals can afford and what we're, our subsidy to make them whole for continued housing, which this, just this last winter was a huge discussion between the county and, and the city and constituents.
It is, it is a correct assertion that Sacramento County has been enormously successful, more so than other counties frankly, at putting up actual housing with wraparound services for formerly homeless individuals with, with severe mental illness, that the, the refinancing protects those investments and makes sure they don't continue so those people don't become homeless. And I would go on to say that the No Place Like Home program has the promise of substantially expanding our capacity to put up that kind of housing and make actual housing units available.
So redirecting that, those funds takes away from that housing, those housing initiatives.
If we redirect the refinancing monies in the short term, we, we could risk harming those, the availability of the housing units, or we risk having to come up with an alternate funding source to protect those investments. Just to summarize here, the staff recommendation, we think it will be effective. We think the program's needed. It can be adjusted upwards over time. There is no intention to turn people away if the program turns out to not meet the demand. If it's the, if it's the board's wish to increase the funding commitment and the direction that you give to us beyond the staff recommendation, there are a couple of ways to do it. One is to change the assumptions, the projections we're making about how much revenue we'll get and maybe the millionaires in California will do much better than expected and so we should project more revenue, or we won't spend everything that we've budgeted and so expenditures will come in lower. That's one way. The second way you could increase the plan beyond the staff recommendation is to change our planned expenditures. That's where the 15 million for refinancing is in the planned expenditures. You could decide not to do that, understanding that any of those changes increase the likelihood of the need for general fund or relinement or, or program cuts. I didn't put that there because I didn't want to alarm existing contractors and clients, but as Mr. Nettley pointed out, program cuts would be, existing programs would be another option. And finally, next steps. We have written the resolution for you, should you choose to adopt it in its current form, for you to direct the staff to take the funding level decision you make and make it real, allocate how many full-service partnerships, take that to the Mental Health Services Act Steering Committee as required by law. Come up with a plan that gets posted for at least 30 days, after which the Mental Health Board conducts a required public hearing. I don't, I don't think the board would have to do anything more in terms of having an elaborate program planning session like this. We would be done. The next step would be for the board to adopt the revised Mental Health Services Act plan or the new update, and it would be incorporated in the county budget. And we understand the sense of urgency and, and that there's a, there's a need to meet the demand as soon as it presents. We've had a good record of doing so and we're exploring ways to do that, but the process is definitely, you can't, it doesn't work for you to reallocate MHSA funds absent the process I've described. It has to go back to the Mental Health Services Act Steering Committee. There has to be a Mental Health Board hearing and so forth. We can expedite, but, but our experience has been quite frankly, that working with the Mental Health Services Act Steering Committee has been a joyful and informative and productive process that has led to the success of many of our programs.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you, Sherri, for your presentation, for responding to questions. I've got a couple of board members punched up. I just wanted to get one clarification, back to yours, your slide 15. If you just go back just one, where you have your staff recommendation.
15. Up, up, up. Come back, come back. Did I turn it off inadvertently? There we go.
Right there.
Okay, yes, sir.
Yeah. So just, just to understand that bullet point where again, the top bullet speaks to sustainability, obviously to the recommendation that you've outlined, but that 66 million over six years, then if we were to do the simple math, you recognize you attached to the chart with sustainability in mind, that for the first three years, that's $33 million. Now, only 21 of that would be from MHSA, but then the drawdown, the Medica, additional federal drawdown would add the additional 12 million. So is there, with that, the ability in that six-year, again, you're doing a lot of projections, looking at, you know, what you think the numbers would be and so forth, the ability within that to shift to either early years or latter years and having the flexibility, not only to the numbers, the folks that would present themselves, but then the ability to sustain those services. And so as you present this as being sustainable within the realm of all the various things you pointed out, do you believe there's some flexibility with that number so the event we, that this board, after hearing all the testimony, wanted to shift some of that to the front end and/or have the ability to then shift it to the back end, depending upon how quickly things roll out and so forth? Is there some accommodation for that? Because you just kind of charted it out as 7 million plus the force, 11 million annually, so.
Yes, yes, there is. So for example, it would be, it seems to me likely that if you authorize, whatever amount you authorize evenly over three years, we wouldn't spend the first year's budget probably in the first year, right? Because, because it takes time for the contractors to, we have to acquire the contractors and they have to hire staff and, and so forth. And there'll be, we don't expect the city's navigators or the county shelter to present us with 800 people on the first day. So there, there would be some underspending at the outset and it would probably roll later. What we, what we would be reluctant to do, it seems to me, is to expand the program to spend all the money in those three years because then we couldn't sustain it in the, in the fifth or sixth year. So we're always taking that into account. And, you know, and frankly, if we don't spend it all in the first year, I'll probably be coming here to ask if I can please use it for the foster children.
Mm-hmm.
That's about as candid as I can be.
All right. Thanks, Sherri. Supervisor Serna, and I think Supervisor Frost, you punched up a moment ago.
You answered.
Okay, okay, all right.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. So first I want to thank all our staff that have been working on this. Sherri, I think you did a very thorough job of explaining a very complicated subject. A lot has been said and reported about the last hearing we had on, on the subject and unfortunately then, I think there was some pretty palpable frustration by some of us that we weren't, you know, primed at that point to have the information necessary to make the informed decision that hopefully we, we get to make today. But I think the work that you've applied and certainly your very capable staff, Uma, Jane Anne, I want to thank both of you specifically for, for your work on this has really, I think, been clarifying for a lot of folks, myself included. So I wanted to lead with that, that thanks and thanks to our CEO for, for his direction to, to make that happen. What I would like to suggest, and this is going to be a bit unusual, is a deviation from kind of the standard protocol we have when we have hearings like this in terms of, you know, when we take staff oral testimony, when we hear from the public, when the board deliberates. And I think there's a good, good reason for it and I'm going to do my best to try and explain it. First of all, I want to, since I'm issuing thanks, I want to extend my thanks to my colleague, Supervisor Kennedy. He is, he's our board liaison to the Mental Health Board. It's clear that he's made mental health a clear priority for, for him since joining the board three years ago. And I've been working with him, had the good fortune of working with him throughout the summer months to kind of circumnavigate this opportunity in front of us where its challenges are, where it's, you know, where it might actually be possibly improved. And we've been working with the mayor's office, council members are two by two for now several months on this. So I want to thank Patrick for, for all your, your service in that respect. We have been working very hard on this and by we, I mean both the mayor, Patrick, myself, Jose and Jose Hermosillo, Jerry Azavito are assigned, agreed to consulting firm that the city and county staff have been working with, that certainly Patrick and I have been working with in the mayor's office. We spent a good part of the last four or five days really thinking carefully about what it is we want this to be in terms of that opportunity in front of the board to make a decision about. And so in that spirit, we spent this weekend really thinking carefully through what an alternative resolution, the mechanism that we'd, we'd use to memorialize the decision that we're going to hopefully make today might look like and how that might deviate from, be different from staff's recommendation. We gave it a lot of thought. In fact, Patrick and I had a chance to meet with several of the service providers late last week to quite frankly, get from their perspective what it is we should really be honing in on to make sure that whatever decisions made by the board is going to achieve the, the objectives that whole person care seeks to make available for our constituents, are both our city constituents and our county constituents. So that's a long way of saying we've given this tremendous amount of thought, not just over the last few days, but certainly been very, we've been very busy the last few days. So Mr. Chair, what I'd like to suggest, and I know that the CEO's office is in possession of an alternative resolution that again, the mayor, Supervisor Kennedy and I co-drafted this weekend and I believe has now been circulated to, to the board. I'd like us, I'd like to at least reference in concept what that, and summarize what that, that resolution would do, just in terms of how it is distinct from the staff recommendation. And I have staff, my staff here from District One that are prepared to hand out hard copies of that alternative resolution. So everyone in chambers has an opportunity to read what I'm referencing. I'm not going to read it. I'm going to point out some of the important distinctions. If I could do that, I'd appreciate that, Mr. Chair. And then I would ask your further indulgence that once we have a chance to understand this alternative resolution, that in terms of the speakers we would hear from, I think it's important, as it was the last hearing, to hear from Mr. Ewing from the Mental Health Services Act Oversight and Accountability Committee. I thought his insights about, about the Mental Health Services Act funding availability, the timing, more or less all the details about it, about something that is fairly complex was very helpful for me, I think for others on this board and for the, for the public. So I'd ask that we hear first from Mr. Ewing. I know that the mayor and various city- I know that the mayor and various city council members are here from the city of Sacramento. I think we always extend that courtesy to, to elected officials. And then I think one of the more present thought leaders, quite frankly, on this subject as of late, has been Jonathan Portius with WellSpace. And I think, again, we, Patrick and I reached out to the provider community late last week. I think it would be good to hear from him third, and then, and then take the rest.
And the next 44 after that, right?
Yeah, and then the next 44 after that. But I think that, that would kind of tee up maybe some reaction to the, to what I'm about to explain, but also might give the, the public, the rest of the 44 that want to address the board, something else to consider. So, I'd like to proceed in that, that manner, if that's okay with.
Mr. Chair, if I may just quickly answer Supervisor Frost's question, and then move to that process. The, the hospital and jail-based and emergency room and jail-based and Loews and Fishes Navigator grant that's ending, if we were to sustain that, it'd be approximately a million and a half dollars annually.
Thank you.
Okay, thank, thank you, Sherri.
So, very briefly, the, the alternative resolution, the things that I want to point out that are distinct about this, and again, that represent an agreement between the mayor's office, Supervisor Kennedy, myself, is that we would dedicate 44 million in County Mental Health Services Act funds over the next three years to expedite services for individuals in serious mental health, mental, serious mental illness and/or co-occurring substance use disorders among the homeless population. And then there's some detail in the alternative resolution about the specific pots of funding that that would be derived from. There would be the establishment of a Whole Person Care Implementation Committee. There's been a lot of question and concern, I think rightfully expressed, about how city of Sacramento-centric is this targeting versus actually the service delivery. All those are very relevant questions for this board, as we represent more than the city of Sacramento. I think what we tried to do relative to the establishment of and complexion of this particular committee, which is at the bottom, the bottom bullet of page one, is to reflect that there would be ongoing decision-making that reflects the broader geography of the county just beside the, the city of Sacramento. And then lastly, I've mentioned this already a few times in the course of my questioning of, of staff, there is an intent here to direct staff to plan sustaining elements of the Whole Person Care Implementation beyond the life of the grant, should it not be extended beyond 2020, and do so in an amount not less than 4 million per year allocated from available and appropriate, appropriate Mental Health Services Act funding sources that would be subject to annual approval by this board, and also would be based on recommendations from both the Mental Health Services Act Board and the Whole Person Care Implementation Committee. That speaks to what I think is an absolutely critical part of what we're being asked to consider here, which is the duration of the application of a significant amount of new resources for holistic care of our homeless population past that third year of, of the grants. So, again, that's, that's kind of what I wanted to, to say about the, the alternative resolution, and hopefully everyone that wants a copy, has a copy, is able to digest it a bit, even if you're not intending to address the board, it gives you some flavor for how we, the three of us, working with our consulting team, I think managed to get to a place where we, we can support something mutually.
Okay. All right. Thank you, Mr. Serna. Okay, we have the alternative resolution, it's been circulated earlier today, and certainly members of the audience have that. Thank you, Mr. Serna, for speaking to that. So, we'll probably have some questions as we come back. We need to get to our speakers, though, so I guess I would invite Mr. Ewing, come forward, then Mayor Steinberg and members of the council, if they would like to, and then Mr. Portius, and then we will get into the, all those have signed up, and I'll call those in order that have received them, so. Good afternoon, Toby.
Good morning.
It was, it was good morning, that's since passed.
Yeah, that's right. Pardon me. Good afternoon. Thank you for the opportunity to come back and talk with you today. My name's Toby Ewing. I'm the Executive Director of the Mental Health Services Oversight and Accountability Commission. I, I want to let you know that we're very focused on fiscal transparency, we're very focused on making sure that these dollars are out in the community, that they're being deployed in ways that are effective, and, and that we're really focusing on strategies to improve the quality of care and the services that we're offering, and, and that includes the efficacy of the dollars that we're spending. And so, I applaud you for, for looking ahead and thinking about that, you know, what you have in place today and what you're trying to get done. I, I also want to thank your staff that, following the last discussion, they came and met with me, and we talked through the conversations that we had in this meeting, in, in this venue, around the, the original proposals that were put out there and some of the confusion over reversion. And I, and I appreciate that today's packet much more clearly conveys where the dollars are coming from and where they're being deployed. I, I would say that in the conversations with them, and that we are focused on, in terms of our fiscal transparency, and I think this was raised by one of the board members, is that the MHSAA dollars are not in a vacuum. There are other funds on the table. There's realignment money, there's drawdown of, of Medica. And there's also, at least in, in the work that we are doing, an expectation that over time, there will be changes to your programs, and mostly because you are spending innovation dollars in ways that allow you to reprioritize dollars, to move them from low-value uses to higher-value uses. And we're seeing a number of counties that are really beginning to rethink their base funding and scrutinize more aggressively the decisions that have been made in the past, so that you are aligning the, the decisions you're making with what's happening in the community. And so, I, I appreciate the, the budget presentation that shows where the dollars are coming from and how you expect to use them over time. I would encourage you, and encourage all counties, to really think about what are the opportunities six years out to really do a better job with the base funds, not simply balancing the budget, right, but really thinking about the impact of those dollars. I do, I also want to point out that although it does appear that there is no risk of reversion, in other words, you know, beyond the AB114 dollars, and, and recognize that there is a negotiation between the state and the county over what that level is, beyond the AB114 dollars, there does not appear to be a balance that would be used beyond the three-year timeframe for these dollars. But as your staff very properly pointed out, is that you do have two years of operating dollars in the bank. There's some, there's some press stories today down in San Diego, looking at what's happening in, in, in other counties, and these very large balances are very concerning. It does look like, under the spending plan that you're envisioning, that you would spend that down, and I think the direction that, that the commission is, is pushing really is to say to counties, make explicit decisions here and start to spend down, down these dollars. I, I don't have the, I don't, in my head, the, the figures in, I think it was 2023, if you incorporate the staff plan, but some of the counties that we're talking with, they're targeting about a 50% annual revenue, not expenditure, cash flow surplus, really as a way to, to balance your cash flow needs over the course of the year. The, the 200% balance on a year-over-year basis really reflects the fact, as I look at the dollars, that you have not spent, at the end of this year, you will have not spent a dime of, this is again, prior to the alternative resolution, right? You would not have spent a dime of this year's funds, a dime of last year's funds, and you would have had about a third of your funding from a couple of years ago. And so, that situation creates a, a very difficult conversation as we talk to the public, as we talk to state-level policymakers, because they'll often ask us, why is it so difficult to spend these dollars, given the unmet needs? And so, I, I do appreciate that the staff have clarified the figures that they're put, that you're putting in, a proposed expenditure plan in place. I, I would, however, just encourage you to, to think about how quickly you spend that down, and how do you do that in a way that doesn't tie your hand, in terms of some of those fluctuations? The comment was made about the prudent reserve, the prudent, there is a trigger, and the trigger generally is when there's a decline in the economy, and your projections show a couple of dips in the economy, and so there's a very real likelihood that, that trigger could be pulled, and you could access your 19 million dollars. And, and staff has appropriately pointed out that that's a decision that the state makes, but it's a decision the state makes in consultation with the counties. So, I, so there's a lot of flexibility in there, and, but I think, the, the point that I want to make today, relative to the, the last conversation we had, is that we are trying to create the improved transparency around the broader budget, and highlight that you have a lot of discretion over how much federal dollars you pull down through Medica. And, and that six-year window that your staff is looking at gives you the opportunity to really manage both your revenues and your expenditures in ways that creates some, some security to spend down your large surpluses. Because from our perspective, from the, from the perspective of this state-level commission, it's the large surpluses that really create challenges in terms of both state-level policymakers and the public. And so, I think, you know, the commission is, doesn't have a position on how the county uses the funds, as long as it's used within the confines of the Mental Health Services Act and, and mental health needs. But, but we're, we are focused on making sure that you actually do spend these dollars in a timely fashion, particularly given the unmet needs that we see in the community. So, again, I, I really want to, you know, thank the staff for coming over and talking with me and walking me through some of their figures for improving the level of transparency. We want to see that in terms of the public being able to access those figures. We're building tools comparable to these for all of the counties, and, and we do want to include realignment, federal drawdown, and other funds, so that, so that not just the board, but the public can see the larger picture. And, and I, and I simply, again, add that the, the opportunity here is to think about that six-year window to learn to make better use of the dollars you have, beyond making sure that you have a balance of revenue expenditures. With that, I thank you again for the opportunity and answer any questions you might have for me.
Okay, thank you, Toby, for being here. Any questions, Mr. Ewing?
I, I just wanted, Mr. Chair, I just wanted to thank Mr. Ewing for, once again, being here, taking the time to certainly consult with our staff, and the time between the last hearing and this one, certainly talking to the three of us, the mayor, Supervisor Kennedy, and myself, in the intervening days, to get, you know, the best handle we could on the availability and the permitted use of Mental Health Services Act funds, and how, you know, we are charged with fitting that into the context of Whole Person Care and understanding kind of where the, the guardrails are, and how best to do that. I think is your, your, your expertise has been invaluable in that respect, so I just want to publicly thank you for that.
Thank you.
Thank you, Toby. All right. With that, then we invite the mayor, Mayor Steinberg, and I know he has members of the council here, and Councilmember Schneer, and Jennings, and Hanson. I know Member Harris was here, so I just acknowledge you all, and whether you intend to follow the mayor or not, that's up to you, but Mayor Steinberg, welcome.
Thank you very much, Mr. Chairman, and I appreciate you introducing my colleagues here, councilmembers Hanson and Schneer, Vice Mayor Jennings, Councilmember Harris was here earlier. Just like all of you, I do nothing alone here. This is a, a team effort, and today, I think, I hope, will represent a team effort with you, the County Board of Supervisors. This, Mr. Chairman, in my opinion, is a watershed day for our community. We have a moment in time to change the arc of homelessness in Sacramento County for the better. I fully embrace the alternative resolution, and I thank Supervisor Serna, Supervisor Kennedy, and all of the supervisors for your hard work and for considering this most appropriate alternative. $44 million of Mental Health Services Act dollars, combined with $64 million of Whole Person Care, and we don't even count the value of tens of millions of dollars of those housing vouchers and public housing units that we have shifted for use of the homeless. We will have, if the alternative resolution passes today, a combined new, and I emphasize new capacity, of at least $108 million, in addition to the current programs, of course, to combat this growing problem aggressively, now, now, not at some uncertain time in the future. This combination and this partnership is about more than just the unprecedented amount of new resources. And I emphasize the word partnership. And I hope that when the alternative, if the alternative resolution passes, that we don't lose the importance of the substantive, substantive partnership and the task force which the alternative resolution calls for, because we can do much more and much better together than we can do alone. This partnership gives us the ability to literally get thousands of people off the street by funding the five essential components to success. Whole Person Care will pay for assertive and consistent outreach. We will have that capacity to intervene one-on-one or two-on-one with the treatment-resistant person on the street who's suffering from mental illness or substance abuse, and we can get 75 to 80% of those people off the streets. Whole Person Care will pay for case management. For I've said many times, you don't get that person in and then give them a voucher to go get housing or employment assistance or help for their mental health issue or substance abuse problem. They need to be enveloped with a trained and caring professional to guide them through the early stages of recovery. Third, we have set aside those 1,075, 1,755 discrete housing units. You're embarked on funding triage. We're funding triage and emergency shelter off of Railroad Avenue in Sacramento. This is the beginning of a housing foundation. Again, if we work together, we will have many more opportunities to house people. Fourth includes third and fourth, third is triage and shelter, fourth is permanent housing, and fifth, of course, is mental health and substance abuse services. Because without that component, this is why this request is so essential, because Whole Person Care, as I've said many times, there's nothing magic about it. It's money. And it's money, though, that allows you to spend on two, two out of the five components. The Mental Health Services, this act today will allow us to, in combination, provide everything that a person on the street needs to end their homelessness. I suppose this debate today comes down to three simple questions. Number one, is the need compelling now? I think the answer is obvious, whether it's the 85% increase in the point-in-time count or frankly, what we and our mutual constituents experience every day in neighborhoods, in business corridors, on the streets, in our parks, and of course, what the poor people, the homeless people, who, you know, most of them once had real lives, the hard times they've fallen on, and, and their needs, the need is compelling now. Number two, do we have the will and ability to serve thousands of more people now? I appreciated what Dr. Heller said, that if I understood it, is that the county, together with the city, you've got the capacity, once the resources are allocated, to, to, to do the job and to help more people. And I know you're going to hear from the many providers out here today who say they're begging for more resources to be able to expand their capacity and help more people. And finally, the question is, do we have the money? And I don't know whether it's important to go back and forth and debate the county staff resolution versus the alternative resolution, but I think the frustration, if you will, from our end, to some degree, has been this idea represented in the county staff recommendation that essentially, we must reserve tens of millions of dollars for many years to sustain programs, and accept that in doing so, we cannot do more to help alleviate the crisis that is occurring today in real time across our community. The staff recommendation calls for helping hundreds. The alternative resolution, in combination, in real partnership with Whole Person Care in the city, will help thousands. You know, combating homelessness is not a new program. It's this idea of creating a new program. In fact, I appreciate, even with the staff recommendation, that you call for expanding full-service partnerships and, and the step downs. This isn't a new program. This isn't a new program. Whole-person care is not a new program. You have as your core mission, as we have in our core mission, trying to make this problem better. These are just resources we have that, in combination, we can put to use to get at what we haven't been able to get at together in any kind of a substantial way. And so on behalf of my city council colleagues, and I think I speak on behalf of all of them, I urge your support for action now. I urge your support for the alternative resolution. Thank you very much, Mr. Chairman.
Thanks, Mayor.
Mr. Mayor, we have a comment. Supervisor Kennedy?
I'm sorry. Yes?
Mayor, thanks for coming.
Thank you, Supervisor.
So how would you, in light of the alternative resolution, how would you allay concerns that some might have up here who don't just represent the city of Sacramento, or don't represent any of the city of Sacramento, as far as this serving county work?
So there's the letter of the law, and there's the spirit of the law. And I think Dr. Heller, in some ways, spoke to the letter of the law. Supervisor Serna, in your questions, drew that out a little bit more. Number one, the grant is very clear that the outreach is to be conducted not exclusively within city boundaries. That's the letter of the grant. Let me tell you what the spirit of the grant is, as the city's mayor. I want nothing more, and it is our intent to partner with you to extend the outreach well beyond the city, into the other cities of the county and in the unincorporated county. This is a county and a regional problem. Now, it's true that a lot of it exists and resides within the city, but we started this conversation 10 months ago with the recognition that this is now spreading and happening everywhere. So if we're in full partnership, and I think the alternative resolution represents or gives that hope of a full partnership, as long as the follow-up and the implementation is consistent, it is the intent of the city of Sacramento, through its whole-person care grants, since we are the fiscal agent, to allow, encourage, insist upon outreach beyond city borders, beyond city of Sacramento borders.
Thank you. Also, I'd like to, you know, it talks about it in the alternative resolution, but I wanted to have it said, stated here now. Should whole-person care have problems down the road through audits or anything like that, you know, clearly, you and the city do not foresee that happening, as you applied for it. But should that happen, under your partnership, do you foresee the county of Sacramento having any liability?
No. The county is not on the legal hook, period. The city is the fiscal agent. We stepped out. We did this. We're the ones on the hook. But I'm not going to let it go, if I may, because I want to just say, because what underlies some of the, you know, it's tension, let's...
No, you were doing really well.
I was doing well. Okay. I want to reemphas-
He's not going to let it go, so here it comes.
No, I'm not. I just want to reemphasize the importance of real partnership. We bring resources to the table, you bring resources to the table, we're doing this together. That wasn't that bad, was it? Okay, thank you.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and if no other questions, then we'll have a standby. We've got to hear from some folks.
Thank you very much.
Okay, Dr. Jonathan Portius, and then followed by Ryan Lufborough, followed by Eric Frame, and Howard Lawrence. Dr. Portius.
Thanks very much. It's an honor to be here. I had a whole stack of things I was going to say, but you have...
Well, I'm not going to put you on the clock, so shorten the stack, so everybody else can be on a two-minute clock.
Well, no, you've made it very simple for me. So firstly, obviously, I'm going to encourage that you honor and support this resolution. This community has needed a singularity and a vision that comes from both the city and the county, and actually, the cities around the county. And as a licensed clinical psychologist and a community business leader, what I'm feeling is a singularity of vision, which really, really helps. WellSpace Health has tried, as an entity and as a partner, to build capacity in the community. We've spent almost four years now in partnership with the county and with the city, trying to figure out how to access things like the whole-person care waiver. This is not a new thing for us. What's happening today is remarkable, because it creates the bigger vision that I think most of us dreamed of, which was to go out all the way to the border of the county. So it's a gift, some of my friends would say it's a mitzvah, and we're really grateful for it. The other piece of vision here is that you are looking beyond whole-person care. You're suggesting a long view and taking the momentum of whole-person care and taking it forward. So this is a new and wonderful position. You're also suggesting a focus on youth, and some of my colleagues have said we need more of a focus on youth. So just imparting that interest in youth in this resolution is critical to many of us in the provider community. You know, we see the noble efforts of our colleagues in the county. You carry the many, many lives, and 20,000 people with mental illness are carried just day-to-day by your mental health programs. But even in the Medicaid program outside of Kaiser, we still have another 340,000 people, of whom many have mental health disorders, and there's going to be a need for this expanded capacity. Whole-person care is one thing. What you're doing to amplify whole-person care is remarkable, and I do hope you vote for it. Any questions?
Thank you, Jonathan. Thanks for your... Okay, Ryan, just time quickly, Councilmember Harris, I understand you wish to address this, so, Ryan, if you could just hold for a second, I'll invite Councilmember Harris and stand by.
Good afternoon, Supervisors. I appreciate you, Chair, for letting me speak. For the last two and a half years, I've sat on the Homeless Two by Two with Supervisors Kennedy and Serna. We've developed data and looked at all the aspects of homelessness. You know, I'd have to say that your alternative resolution is bold and courageous and forward-thinking. I totally appreciate you coming to this point of view, because I believe that we've been directed by our constituents to collaborate extensively to get on top of the homelessness problem here in Sacramento. If you look at the numbers in our area, our homeless population is relatively low compared to any other West Coast major city. Now is the time to act, and by taking this resolution to fruition today in a vote, you are going to set the stage for us to be able to get on top of a problem that affects a relatively low population compared to other cities, which means ultimately, it will be tremendously less expensive than if we waited. If we waited even a year, the task would be much more daunting and much bigger to get on top of. So I just wanted to say thank you to my colleagues on the Homeless Two by Two. I think you're moving in the right direction. Totally appreciate your efforts, and I hope that this resolution will be supported. Thanks.
Good, thanks, Jeff. Thank you, Councilmember Harris. Okay, Mr. Lufborough. Thanks for your patience. Thanks, Ryan.
Absolutely. Chairman, members of the board, good afternoon. My name is Ryan Lufborough. I'm CEO for Sacramento Steps Forward. We're a nonprofit dedicated to ending homelessness through collaboration, innovation, connecting individuals with the services they need to gain stability. And I want to thank you for your effort. Partnering and aligning systems is a difficult task, changing the culture of service delivery and how we look at the state of homelessness, moving from a opinion that it may just be centrally located and acknowledging it as a crisis on the West Coast and certainly here in Sacramento. We know firsthand in the continuum of care, in our partnership with Sacramento Steps Forward and our advisory board, where we, the last few years, have really looked at streamlining and honing in our efforts to establish a housing crisis resolution system, having coordinated entry, and also looking at housing first, all of which is focused on the most chronically homeless in our community. And I say that to illustrate the difficulty and the hard work it takes to get to that point. Last year, the system, and that is the system wide and all of our partners, housed in subsidized housing, 747 households. There are additional 1,400, though, that were housed in non-subsidized environments, meaning with assistance, they're able to gain their housing and stability back without having to go into a subsidized environment. Acknowledging that, we know that for federal dollars, local government dollars, the heavy lift is for those that are most chronically long-term homeless. But we also know that if we activate our base, our faith community and volunteer base, that we can have greater outcomes. So the responsibility goes beyond just whole-person care, a relationship between a county and one city. It's all the cities, the county, and those that are members of our citizens here in Sacramento. So when we propose that there be a triage center, we need careful consideration for the community to accept those. When we're looking at affordable housing, careful consideration to accept that affordable housing. Without changing the number of units that are available to this system, we don't have the chance that we would have otherwise to show a true decrease on the streets of Sacramento. So I want to support the alternative resolution that's been proposed. I want to thank you for your partnership with the city of Sacramento and for staying the course till we can see the day where we truly see that decrease of individuals on our streets. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Ryan. Thanks for your efforts as well. Okay, Eric Frame, followed by Howard Lawrence. Is Eric? And then following Howard will be Robert Copeland and Bob Erlinbush.
Hello again. Okay, so let's look into the number of homeless, because I hear we have over 14,000. That's based on registering for food stamps, and they also marked homeless when they did that. We know there's an 85% increase recently. I hear from city council that the whole-person care grant is something that'll happen over the course of three years. So housing 1,775 people over three years, that's kind of not that many. That's kind of very little, since we have 14,000. Or even if we trust your numbers of 4,000, then it's still not enough. And if it's over three years, meanwhile, we have people going homeless, because the rent prices are ridiculous here. So how many people are going homeless each year, is another number I'm wondering, because, you know, if it's like 1,000, then housing 1,700 people over three years isn't really that much help. Like many have said, we do need a housing-first solution, because, you know, I think we're skipping ahead if we go to the mental illness part, you know, first. We're going to not provide housing for 25% of those mentally ill people, but homelessness itself causes the mental illness, you know? Because, first of all, you're not allowed to sleep in this city, and your tents and sleeping bags and blankets are taken away. You know, the lack of sleep is a big factor in mental illness. You do know this. So, yeah, we need housing first. More tiny home villages, more apartments that are affordable, truly affordable. What we can do is also provide safe ground for the people, so they can shelter themselves with tents. That way, they're not dying this winter. They have the safe ground that gets them out of this unconstitutional, inhumane no-camping ordinance, so they can at least survive for the winter. That would be good. We could reopen up the public bathrooms that were closed recently, because nothing like holding it in, you know, causes mental illness, you know? So repeal the no-camping ordinance. I'm speaking to city council, because they have to do that one. Big picture, people, this city, we, the people, have spent $400 million on an arena that we didn't want.
Okay, Eric, let's wrap up, please.
Okay, so let's, you know, bill us again. If you want to bill us for affordable housing, we'll pay for affordable housing, something we actually want.
Okay, thanks, Eric. Okay. All right, Howard, followed by Robert, followed by Bob Erlinbush. Good afternoon.
Good afternoon, Chair Natale, members of the board of supervisors. My name is Howard Lawrence, and I'm a representative of Sacramento-area congregations together. I must admit, Supervisor Serna, you kind of threw me for a loop. I had a prepared speech. Now I'm going to have to try to wing it.
That was the idea.
That was the idea. Well, you achieved that.
First time in 20 years, Howard.
I would remind you that ACT is a faith-based, community-organizing network, and so today, I would really like to speak to you from a faith perspective. And to us, you're faced with a moral decision. What you do today could help alleviate the suffering and the pain that are endured by the people that have to live without shelter. Clearly, a full partnership with the city of Sacramento, implementing whole-person care, is part of the roadmap needed to end homelessness in Sacramento. It's also, we believe, a major building block to meet the call that we in Sacramento ACT have been advocating for quite some time, as you may remember, Chair Natale, in August at my congregation, St. Mark's, the need for a comprehensive regional approach to address this problem. You know, we can fight about how much money is available in which fund or so forth, but at some point, we need to sit down as a community and identify what the need is and what are the available resources, and how can we bridge that gap. I think by adopting the substitute resolution, we're taking a major step in that direction. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Howard. Okay, next, Robert Copeland. Robert? And then Robert's followed by Bob Erlinbush, followed by Diana White. Good afternoon, Robert.
Hi, my name is Robert Copeland. I belong to Sacramento Homeless Organizing Committee and Sacramento Tenant Union. Mayor Steinberg left out two important things. One, we need a more affordable housing now, and two, rents are going up in Sacramento County. We are, did you know, we are the fastest-growing county by percentage of rental increase by cost? Did anybody know that? That's got to go down. Rental costs has got to stabilize or go down in Sacramento. Alternative plan by Phil Serna and Mayor Steinberg, step in the right direction, in my opinion, but it's not good, goes far enough. I don't believe the point-in-time count at all, because I know, I found a website that says how many children are homeless in each school, each school in California. And some schools in Sacramento have over 100 that are listed homeless in Sacramento County, which is not the worst in the state. LA has beat us by far by net rent. But even one homeless youth or one homeless person in Sacramento County is too many. And how many people are actually dying on the streets? Last I heard, 71 last year, 78 the year before. How many this year are going to die? And how many homeless are not going to get the mental health services that they actually need? You've got to figure all that out. Step in the right direction, but doesn't go quite far enough. We need more housing now. Thank you.
Thank you, Bob. Okay, Bob Erlinbush. Good afternoon, Bob. And then Diana White, followed by Joel Case, followed by Diana Hanson.
Good afternoon. Bob Erlinbush, the executive director of the Sacramento Regional Coalition on Homelessness. We totally support the alternative resolution. Very specifically, what I'm handing out to you, as you probably know, that we issued our still tragic homeless deaths report yesterday, again, 71 deaths in 2016 in the calendar year. Generally speaking, over a 15-year period, that means one homeless person has died on the streets every seven days. But in the last four years, that equates to one person dying every five days. So from October 17th to today, in the 23 days, somewhere between three and five homeless people have passed away. The mayor asked a couple of questions. Is there a compelling need now? Absolutely, obviously, to save lives, nothing less. One of the, a couple of things to pick out from the resolution, I liked that it was included in the first bullet, a sense of urgency, driven by saving lives. You can see on the fact sheet that I passed out to you that, looking at the HMIS system, of the 71 people who passed away, only 30, less than, about 40%, were engaged in any sort of homeless service, and many of those people self-identified mental health, substance abuse, chronic health disease, et cetera. So as the mayor said, we need aggressive outreach, specifically to find those people who aren't using services as identified by the HMIS system. Do we have the money? Absolutely, as your resolution says, and today, hopefully unanimously, you will show the political will to partner with the city. Thank you.
Thank you, Bob. Okay, Diana? And Diana's followed by Joel Case. Good afternoon, Diana.
Hi. I'm here representing the Association of Behavioral Health Services, and based on what's been said here today, I also have changed up my remarks just a little bit. been said here today, I also have changed up my remarks just a little bit. And I think what I want to do is just let you know the association's hopes in terms of the vote you take today, whatever plan is put in place. And that is the importance of the services to be provided countywide, which we've talked about a little bit today. Ensuring adequate funding to new and existing programs. It doesn't do any good to expand services if you can't attract qualified staff to work on them, or that turnover is so large that the services are compromised. That any efforts put into place are sustainable over time. And that the MHSA process, sorry, that we continue to support the integrity of the MHSA planning process, and again, ensure the sustainability of the current continuum of care.
Okay.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Diana. Thanks for being here on behalf of the association. Okay, Joel, Joel Case, followed by Deanna Hansen, followed by David Ramirez.
Thank you for the opportunity to speak. I'm here to share my experience as a citizen and to speak out in support of mental health outreach. In 2009, I was technically homeless. This is what I looked like back then. I had crippling depression, and I had a best friend at the time who was schizophrenic. The substance abuse treatment that I received turned my life around. I now have an apartment, a job, and I'm self-sufficient. But my friend, his schizophrenia went untreated, and we parted ways, and he ended up getting murdered. He was shot by a stranger. And I believe that that murder took place as a result of misinterpretations of his behavior because of his untreated schizophrenia and substance abuse, alcohol. I'm speaking out in hopes that, I'm very encouraged by the things that have been said today, but I'm hoping that we can spend as much as we can on outreach because the conversations that I had with my friend when he was alive, we did not understand how our bodies worked and what alcohol was doing to us. We just knew it made us feel good. What I've learned from my brief treatment changed my life. And I'm hoping that all of the money that can be spent on outreach to educate the homeless community about alcohol and about substance abuse, I'm hoping that that outreach will be done. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Joel. Thank you for being here today and sharing as well. Okay, Deanna Hansen, David Ramirez, and Linda Yang, I believe.
Thank you, Chairman Natoli, and all the supervisors. And I have to say, particularly Supervisor Serna and Kennedy, for all of the work that you've done in helping to bring together a coalition and collaboration with the city. That's been a very frustrating thing as a resident of Midtown since 1975. It's a long time ago, and I've seen a lot of changes in Midtown since then, most of them very, very positive changes, except for the homeless problem. And that's continued to grow. And now I live across the boundary line in East Sacramento, and I was amazed at the number of homeless people that I see every day and every night on my block. So that's continuing to spread beyond, obviously, what used to be downtown Midtown. And for those of you who don't represent the areas within the city of Sacramento, it's, I'm sure, beginning to affect you as well. I have two grandchildren that live in Shingle Springs, and El Dorado County has homeless people there. So I'm certain that Carmichael and Citrus Heights and Elk Grove and other parts of the county are beginning to notice they have that problem. So I'm here mostly because my grandchildren spend a lot of time with me in Midtown, downtown area, and seeing homeless on the street is something that they've been very concerned about. They want to know, and they're young, eight and 13, they want to know why something hasn't been done for these people. So that's the question I'm asking, and again, thank you for your help.
Thank you, Diana. Okay, next, I have David Ramirez. David? And then David's followed by Linda Yang, followed by Claire Bonzal. Good afternoon, David.
Good afternoon. Thank you very much, supervisors, and all who are here for directing attention to this important issue. My name is David Ramirez. I'm with Sacramento Area Congregations Together, or ACT. I actually don't know very much about homelessness, or mental health, or housing in this community, except that clearly there's a very obvious crisis, and it's meeting a significant opportunity. And I am much gratified to see the attention that's being paid and the partnership, anticipating a favorable vote on the alternative resolution. The new partnership between the county and the city. On the mental health side, I know it's been expressed here, there are other needs that the homeless people have, and I look forward to the city-county partnership addressing all the needs of the homeless in time to come. Thank you.
Thank you, David. Okay, following David, then I have Linda, Linda Yang. Linda here? Okay, if not, then I'll come back to her later, see if she stepped out. Claire Bonzal, followed by Holly Harper, followed by Joan Burke. Is Claire here? Okay, Holly, Holly Harper?
Holly's here.
Oh, Holly's here? Okay. And then Holly's followed by Joan Burke, followed by Paige Madden. I think Joan's gonna beat you down to the podium. That's okay, either one. Good afternoon, Holly.
Hi, thank you, Chairman Natoli, and all the board members for honestly putting so much time and commitment into this. I'm Holly Harper. I'm with Sutter Health. I'm gonna keep this a little brief. I think most of you know how Sutter Health feels about this incredibly important issue. We are here today because we understand it. We get the importance of the public, the private partnership. We get the importance of delivering a continuum of care that works together, that doesn't operate in silos. So we launched the Getting to Zero campaign almost two years ago, and we committed millions of dollars to get thousands of people off the streets. I think we're on the brink of doing something really great. I think this community is on the brink of doing something really great, and we are committed to doing that alongside you, alongside the city, with the whole person care grant, alongside you. And we're in full support of the alternative resolution. So again, thank you for the enormous amount of time and consideration, for having all of these conversations with Sutter Health and with a lot of the people in this room today. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Holly. Okay, Holly's followed by Joan Burke, and then Paige Madden, and then Rick Bettis.
Good evening, good afternoon, supervisors.
We're getting towards even, yeah.
I too ask for unanimous support for the alternative resolution. I think you've been trying to balance immediate needs and prudence and forethought for future needs, and you are making the right decision if you support the alternative resolution. You know, we've all read about the horrible wildfires that rendered so many people in the city of Santa Rosa homeless, and we were shocked by that. And we were, I think, very comforted by the immediate emergency response that has come forward. And as others have said, these folks who are homeless right here in our community are suffering greatly, and it's a catastrophe of another kind. It's not a natural disaster, but it's a moral disaster, and the effect is the same. We have people suffering without a roof over their heads. This will make a difference. I think working together with the city is the start of a beautiful friendship, and may it continue. Thank you.
We can all be in Friendship Park. How's that?
Sounds good.
Thanks, Joan.
Can I have a hug, Darrell?
Okay, thank you, Joan, Paige Madden, Rick Bettis, and Paula Lamazi. Good afternoon, Paige.
Hello, I am Paige Madden, and I'm the communications coordinator for Loaves and Fishes. And I just want to say that we are, just like Joan said, we are fully supporting this new resolution because we're honestly, we're at this pivotal moment where we can choose to either continue to go on our own separate paths to try to address homelessness, or we can choose to finally come together and pool our resources and have a bigger impact. And so that's why we support the new resolution. Thank you.
Okay, good. Thanks, Paige. Okay, Mr. Bettis, and then Paula Lamazi, and then Rosemary Younts.
Thank you, Chairman Natoli, board members. Rick Bettis, I'm speaking for the League of Women Voters of Sacramento, and I also might say for the Sierra Club, because even though at the local level, they haven't really addressed this issue, at the national level, four years ago, they established a social justice campaign and committee that, this is certainly consistent with that effort. I wanted to speak in support of this alternative resolution. I think it's a wonderful step in the right direction. Mental health is really important when it comes to addressing this, and I think it's particularly important, you know, this is, we have Veterans Day coming up this week, and a lot of those folks are veterans who have suffered subterfus tremendously, and they are down on the street. I've seen them every evening when I walk home from downtown to Midtown. And as a volunteer at a homeless program for, in a faith-based home program for several years, I, you know, the more you get to know these folks, the more you realize that there are really good people out there on the street, and they need your help and compassion, and I really appreciate what you're doing. So I urge you to vote for this. Thank you.
Good, thanks, Rick. Okay, following Rick, we have Paula, and then Rosemary Younts, and then Chet Hewitt, and Mariah Bruce. Hi, Paula.
Hi, good afternoon, Chair Natoli and supervisors. I just wanted to, I'm with Sacramento Homeless Organizing Committee, and I just wanted to add our support for the alternate resolution. I think it's a great opportunity for our region for helping to end homelessness. Thank you.
Thanks, Paula. Okay, Rosemary Younts, and then Chet Hewitt. Good afternoon, Rosemary.
Good afternoon. Hi, Rosemary Younts, and I am speaking as a member of the Mental Health Services Act, and I too have a lot less to say after the introduction of the alternative resolution. But I do think that some of the points I wanted to make are very relevant, and I think that being, first of all, to acknowledge and to thank the county that has not gotten such a good rap during this whole issue for hard work and efforts and services that they have been rebuilding for many, many years. These services are direct and core mental health treatment services, and without them, navigation and case management could not be effective. So I want to say how much I appreciate the county mental health staff and your efforts here with the board, and I'm very happy that we have come to a collaborative agreement with the city of Sacramento, and we look forward to working with you and doing whatever we need to do to make it happen. Thank you.
Good, thanks, Rosemary. Okay, so Chet Hewitt, and I see Rebecca Sloan coming forward.
I would just like Chet Hewitt. He had to leave, but he was here to speak on behalf of St. John's Program for Real Change. He is our board chair, but he had to depart. So I would like just to express our gratitude for this discussion today. We are really grateful to see the partnership emerging between the city and the county of Sacramento. We have enjoyed our partnerships with both of these public entities and are looking forward to continuing in that partnership. We, at St. John's, are a long program. We used to be a 30-day program, and now we're anywhere from a 12-to-18-month program. We heard today about all the types of services that need to come together for wraparound services, and that sometimes those do not include residential care. So if you're not familiar with St. John's, we are a residential facility that does do wraparound care services, as well as employment training, employment experience, and employment placement. When women leave our program, they are living self-sufficiently. They've been reunited with their children, and they are not in the system anymore. They are making room for others to enter into the system. We see a lot of opportunity in this partnership to continue in that way, and we would eagerly want to be part of the long continuum of care to make sure that all needs are met for women and children. It's getting colder. Our waiting list is long. We want to be continuing to work with you. We are eager to see the RFP released so that funds that are being made available go to direct service. And with that, I would just close and ask you to take two other testimonies after me. These are two young women in our program that just want to, very briefly, within your two-minute time, talk about their experience in homelessness, the services that they needed to be successful, and their journey at this time. Thank you.
Okay, great. Thanks, Rebecca, and thanks for, Chet, for being here earlier and for you speaking on his behalf. So I have Mariah Bruce, and is it Kyra Burnett-Daly?
I didn't actually say that we support the alternative resolution.
Okay. But you weren't out of time.
You can say it again.
Okay, all right, very good. So is it Mariah and Kyra, or Kyra?
Yes, sir. First of all, I want to thank you for the opportunity to be able to speak today. I tell my story of my experience and the hope for a homeless outreach. My story starts very average. My mother was a nurse, my father a lawyer. I also have four brothers, and I'm the only girl. To the average passerby, I had all the opportunities I could ask for. My mother loved me deeply. I got good grades in school, and I was talented and active in sports. But what people didn't know is I was being heavily abused physically and emotionally by my father, and sexually abused by close relatives. The abuse ended up getting so bad that I was, at 16, sent to a foster care home to live with seven other children until I was 18. Despite these life changes, I kept a mask-like persona, wanting to forget the past. I was popular in high school. I graduated with decent grades, and I moved on to college. But inside, I was slipping, suffering from extreme anxiety and an ongoing mood disorder. I looked to drugs and alcohol for relief. Hopeless and disconnected, and quickly, I quickly became heavily addicted, losing employment in and out of abusive relationships, and never having a safe place to lay my head. Suicide seemed like the only option. It wasn't until age 25, out of desperation to save my life, did I turn to the doors of St. John's Program. With the help of counselors and psychiatrists, and classes that helped me build a foundation for my life, did I make new goals to continue strong in my recovery, gain stable employment and housing, and now I actually want to get my bachelor's in computer science, aspiring to become a software engineer. That's my story, and I just really thank you today for even discussing this outreach for homelessness. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, Mariah. Is it Kyra?
Kyra.
Kyra, Kyra. Good afternoon.
Hi, my name is Kyra Daly. I have been a resident at St. John's Program for Real Change since June 13th. That is four months and 25 days. I came to the program with my four living daughters, and I came after leaving a domestic violence relationship that I was in for three years. My children and I stayed short-term, 30 days, at a domestic violence safe house. And after my daughter, Eliza, died at six months from SIDS, my abuser turned to not only being physically abusive to me, but to my children. I was no longer able to keep my daughter safe at that point. So we left. So let me give you a little insight on what that meant for me to try and leave. Because I wasn't allowed to work, I didn't have any money. Because I wasn't allowed to have friends, I didn't have anybody to call. And because that previous year, I'm sorry.
It's all right.
I lost my father, my sister, my aunt, my grandmother, and then finally, my daughter. I didn't have any support. My mother got hit by a car and died when I was 17 years old. So with no parents, no spouse, no friends, I literally had to find my own way to support my kids. I moved to Sacramento on a whim because my stepmom, who was suffering from cancer for the third time, said my kids and I could spend a few nights with her until I could get back on my feet. But because she lived in a very small studio apartment, her office noticed very quickly that the six of us were there, and she was threatened that if we didn't leave, she'd lose...
that if we didn't leave, she'd lose her housing. So we left, and we moved into my car. And me, my 11-year-old, my 10-year-old, my three-year-old, and at the time, my six-month-old slept in my van for almost 30 days. I would take my kids to the drive-in movie theater so that they wouldn't realize that we were homeless. I would, we would stay there until they fell asleep. I didn't want them to know that I had no idea what we were going to do next. But I now have an opportunity to not only get my life back on track, but to be in a position to be financially stable for my kids. I've obtained my high school diploma through the Highlands High School Program, and I've obtained certificates from classes ranging from money management to positive thinking. And because of the Vocational Learning Work Program, I now have experience at a job to be able to put on my resume, and I'm soon going to be in a position to work again. My older children get picked up every morning and are safely transported by a school bus, while my younger two children are taken care of and provided everything they need during the day at a daycare that's provided to me. And without this program, I really don't see how I could have ever gotten this far. On my own, I didn't know what I would do, but with the supporting hands that I'm receiving now, after just 147 days, I do actually finally see a light at the end of the tunnel. Thank you for this, giving me an opportunity to discuss my situation and let you know how important it is to me also that you guys may take this into consideration.
Good. Good job. Thanks Kyra. I would just say to Kyra, and Mariah, and Joel, and others who've shared certainly your very personal stories, it takes a lot of courage to do that, but obviously with the help and support that you've spoken to, you've been able to rebuild your lives and to gain that foothold that you need to be successful and be happy in your lives. So thanks for being here today. Okay, we have Leo McFarlane, followed by David Huseid, and Brian Talcott, our next three speakers. Leo, good afternoon.
Good afternoon. Leo McFarlane, CEO for Volunteers of America. I'm very pleased that you, we have an alternate resolution in front of you today. We're in full support of this resolution, and encourage you to adopt it unanimously. I spent this morning walking some of the streets around 12th and B, talking to some of the folks that are camping out on the sidewalks. My general assessment of that was that 90% of them are struggling with mental health issues, as well as addiction. These dollars and these resources and this focus on reaching out, whether it's a triage effort, but the mental health counseling and support that will be coming forward will potentially finally help folks move off the sidewalks and into supported, medicated housing that will sustain them in the future. So we're very much in support of this. Thank you very much, and for all the great work that both the city and county have done on this issue, and the prior investment the county has made in homeless services over the years. Thank you.
Thanks Leo. Thanks for your work too. Okay, David.
And Brian, and then I believe it's Hetty Govanar?
Well, like everybody else does, Phil pretty much ended my whole speech, so I'll just kind of go to the end. But I just wanted to also second, thank you all you guys for all the work you've done, keeping the doors open in Serna Village. So I'm just going to go to the end. Basically, what I was going to say is, it's really nice to hear about services. You know, I'm a service provider, and housing is so important, but services, services, services is what we need, because people do get better. We can change. So the need for services is what makes the Whole Person Care Act work. Remember, half measures avail us nothing. We need county and city working together, obviously with Phil's resolution and the mayor's. We're going to do this together, so.
It's our resolution, not his.
Our resolution, yeah. Team Phil and Team Daryl. And again, thank you all, and we're all in support of this resolution. So thank you.
Okay, thanks a lot David. Thanks for your work. Okay, Brian, and Brian's followed by, I believe it's Hetty or Hetty Govanar?
Good afternoon Board of Supervisors. I'm Brian Talcott. I'm the Program Director at Women's Empowerment. I'd like to commend the two young women who came and gave their testimony. Those are the same women that we serve as well. Women who are homeless or formerly homeless, who have multiple barriers, mental health, drug and alcohol being only two. I want to share just a really quick story. When I first started working at Women's Empowerment almost four years ago, one of the, one of my mentors, who was a graduate, shared her own story with me, and she told me something very important I always reiterate and remember, and that's a woman, or a person really, doesn't have a mental illness before they become homeless. They will. So, most of our women suffer from some sort of mental illness, whether it is severe or minor, but over 80% of our women have experienced domestic violence, and what comes with that is definitely PTSD and anxiety disorders. So I want to commend you, because I did have a very different speech prior to the alternative proposal, for, one, really, really thinking about putting more resources into this issue, but also, I've lived in Sacramento for over 27 years, and this is one of the first times in my professional experience remembering that both the Board of Supervisors and the City Council are working together. This is a super-heavy lift. We all know that. But I just want to commend you for coming to the table as well with the city to do this work that is so important. So thank you.
Good. Thanks Brian. Okay, Hetty?
So, my name is Hetty Govanar, and I live in Arden Oaks, which is in Supervisor Susan Peters' district, in the Arden Arcade area of Sacramento County. My neighbors and I have noticed for quite a while now that homeless people, and obviously impaired people, are moving into the area in increasing alarming numbers. I came here today to ask for your help to spend the money now, but it sounds like with this alternative proposal that you are going to spend the money now. I did want to share that increased law enforcement is not the answer. Just, just last month, our Sheriff's Patrol encountered two males, separately, who were walking in our neighborhood looking for a place to sleep. And it alarmed our community, because we kind of feel like a little island out there. But large lawns are not a good alternative to providing people with shelter and a safe place to stay and the kinds of services that they need. So I hope you do vote for this alternative proposal, and thank you for your time.
Thank you Hetty. Okay, next I have Christine Dugger, I believe, and then Erin Taylor, followed by Noel Cameran. If you're on the side, Alice, you can come from the side too. You want to follow it around. Got your exercise?
Yes, hi, sorry. I'm Jennifer Faring, and I actually have the proxies for Erin Taylor and Christine Dugger as well, so I thought I'd jump up.
Okay, all right.
At the earlier opportunity. So I'm Jennifer Faring. I'm a District One resident and Elmhurst homeowner, and I'm the owner of a small business located at 11th and K Streets. And I want to thank you Supervisor Serna, your leadership on this makes me glad I voted for you. Thank you. Everyone in Sacramento is experiencing homelessness. Some of us experience it as homeowners and business owners, who are greatly worried about the humanitarian crisis we see before our eyes every day, on our doorsteps, in our yards, on the sidewalk, and in our parks. We see our neighbors suffering, and we think, how did this happen? What can we do, and how fast can we do it? Others of us, a shocking number of us, are experiencing homelessness as a personal crisis, living dangerously without secure food, shelter, healthcare, and other basic needs. We are all in this, and we must all do what we can with our compassion, our time, our resources, to address the present-day reality of the inhumane harm created by having fewer services, emergency shelters, and housing units than there are Sacramentoans who need them. I'm doing my small part. I pay my taxes. I volunteer. I'm educating myself, donating to nonprofits, and talking to my neighbors. And the city has stepped up, and we are so fortunate that such competent and professional nonprofits are ready to stretch to do what's needed at this time. So the county is this last big piece of the puzzle, and it's not just your money that we need, but your expertise, your infrastructure, your trust, and your partnership. So I urge you to support this alternative resolution, because the time for an aligned and coordinated response is now. Thank you.
Thanks Jennifer. Appreciate you then being here, and speaking on behalf of Christine, Erin, and then Jennifer herself. So, okay, Noel Cameran, Noel's next, and Noel will be followed by Barbara Hopkins and Patty Kleinconnect.
All right, good afternoon. Noel Cameran, Executive Director of Loaves and Fishes. I just want to start off, thank you to the Board of Supervisors, Chair Natoli. I'm here now in support of the alternative resolution. The proposed action is an encouraging step in the right direction, and I hope it's the first of many. Please continue to examine all parts of the homeless system, and I just want to encourage continued collaboration with regard to strategic planning, outreach, service delivery, discharge planning, and the establishment of more permanent housing for folks who are experiencing homelessness. Working with private nonprofits, the faith community, and with city programs like Whole Person Care, these types of approaches have proven to be successful in other communities. And I hope that we continue in this direction, and eventually we get ourselves to functional zero and end homelessness here in Sacramento. So thank you.
Thank you Noel. Okay, Barbara Hopkins. Is it Barbara? Oh, there she is, okay. And then Barbara will be followed by Patty Kleinconnect and Susan Gallagher. Good afternoon Barbara.
Good afternoon. I wasn't going to speak when I heard about your exciting, exciting alternative resolution, and I'm just so thrilled. As a volunteer, since I've lived here for 23 years, I've been volunteering with various homeless programs, and I know how vital this program will be with people working together, as you will be, and I'm just so excited about this. And I look forward to hearing the conclusion of your vote. And the other thing I would like to mention is that the young ladies who gave their life story, that was really very turning, is the fact that in volunteering with various programs around the city, I've seen so many people like them turn their lives around and take charge, and it makes it all so worthwhile. So, on their behalf, and the many people that you're not hearing, I just want to say thank you.
Thank you Barbara. Thanks for your comments as well. Okay, Patty, and then followed by Susan Gallagher, followed by Danielle Zavala. All right Patty.
Good afternoon Chair, members of the Board of Supervisors. Patty Kleinconnect, representing the River District. And just the fact that you're having this discussion today indicates you recognize the seriousness of the situation, and we really appreciate your doing this. Homelessness is devastating to those individuals and families experiencing it, and you're well aware from correspondence you receive that it has a great impact on our neighborhoods and businesses. On a positive note, both the city and the county have identified needs and outlined plans to address homeless services and provide additional services. We need to recognize that homelessness doesn't have geographic boundaries, and it's imperative that the county and the cities, in the unincorporated cities, work together if we expect to see the programs work. We need solutions. We need success. We need everyone to work together to make it happen. On behalf of the businesses and property owners in the River District, I ask that you as leaders work together and help make a difference in the lives of those people experiencing homelessness, and support the alternative resolution before you. Thank you.
Okay, thank you Patty. Okay, Susan Gallagher, and then Danielle. Welcome back Susan, it's been a long time since you.
Yeah, long time.
Good to see you.
Here I am, starting trouble again.
That's okay.
Good afternoon Chair, Supervisors, and I'm very excited to hear that the county and the city has come together on this very important issue. So that's very awesome and exciting, but I do think that I can't quite join into the love fest yet, because there's a few issues and concerns that I have. And the first one starts with unspent MHSA funds. And I know that NorCalMHA has been raising this issue for the last few years and asking many questions, and we have received some answers, but I would have to say that a lot of them are not necessarily fully satisfying. For example, we were told that these unspent funds were earmarked for future projects, but we never really heard what those future projects were going to be, or how much, you know, of the allocation would be needing to be set aside for those future projects. I think there was a little bit more clarity today, but I think that these things still remain opaque to the stakeholders, and I'm not too much more clear on it after today's presentation. I appreciate the efforts to clarify, but I think it's really, really important that the stakeholders understand these things very clearly. And so kind of, the thing I'm going to reiterate the most is stakeholders, stakeholders, stakeholders. I know when Daryl helped write the act, one of the things that he put in there, and it's in the regulatory language, is that a stakeholder process should be happening at every local level regarding the funding, how it's going to be allocated, and we should be part and parcel of that. And so, when I talk about the robust community planning process, today was a perfect example of not involving the community planning process, because we saw an entire presentation that none of us have really seen before. And it's a great presentation, and this is good stuff, and we want to support it in every possible way, but stakeholders aren't an afterthought. We have to be first and foremost, and we're supposed to be driving this process. And it's great that public servants sit in rooms and make great decisions about things, or what they think are great decisions, but without our involvement at every level, you're just never going to come up with a community to find solutions that are so required. I mean, the community, we know what's best. And oftentimes, these things are going to emerge from a robust community process. And we have 5%, we're allowed to take 5% of our CSS dollars and put that towards community planning processes. And so I would just really encourage the county to do more of that, because it's just really, really essential. I think that the family members, and the clients, and the people receiving, we know what's best. We've been there, we understand, and we want to be part of that, and we want not to be an afterthought. And then, as far as the Whole Person Care Initiative, I'm really, really thrilled that we came up with the alternative resolution, and we support that, but again, stakeholder involvement has to be a part of it. Can't be people in rooms behind closed doors. Has to be something that is transparent, and the opaqueness should go away. This has been a problem for a long time. So I thank you very much for your time today.
Thank you Susan, thanks for being here. Okay, Danielle, and then Daryl Rutherford, and then Erin Johnson.
Hi, good afternoon Supervisors, and thank you so much for the opportunity to speak on this. My name is Danielle Zavala. I am the Associate Director and General Counsel at NorCalMHA, and Susan is my amazing, wonderful boss. So I wanted to come up here to show my support for the substance of the alternative resolution. However, I do have a slight quibble with the process. Again, as Susan mentioned, you know, the stakeholder planning process with MHSA funds is paramount. We need to ensure that we are honoring that process, and these urgent circumstances, and they are urgent, should not permit or justify circumvention of the community planning process. That's very important. I would like to ask that the Supervisors consider to clarify within the alternative resolution that wherever it says to direct staff, that it include the language, direct staff together with stakeholders, because that was an issue that arose with the Mental Health Improvement Coalition several years ago. It was not clarified that stakeholders were actually intended to be involved, and they were not. They were not involved with the planning for that funding. So I want to ensure that whatever comes before the MHSA Steering Committee is not simply rubber stamped, but that it's actually discussed, and stakeholder input, and any changes and recommendations are included, as long, excuse me, as well as stakeholder involvement in the oversight, evaluation, changes, implementation, and improvement to any programs that are created through this funding source. Thank you very much.
Thanks Danielle. Okay, Daryl Rutherford, Erin Johansson, and Courtney Poole. Noel, Daryl?
Good afternoon Chair, Supervisor Daryl Rutherford, Executive Director of Sacramento Housing Alliance. And it's an honor to be here today to hear an alternative resolution being proposed. I think on the surface here, it's something we're very supportive of, as well as, you know, given that this is going to be an opportunity to provide services to those experiencing homelessness, which is the most compassionate thing that we could be doing at this time. I also appreciate this opportunity for you guys, both the jurisdictions and other jurisdictions in the county here, to come together and collaborate to address this issue. As Chairman Natoli said at our Housing Summit last week, that this is an opportunity for a team to come together and practice collaborating and working together. And we appreciate seeing you guys work through this and figure out ways that you you guys work through this and figure out ways that you can be collaborating on it. But in order for all of these efforts to be successful, public resources need to be leveraged. This alternative resolution, I think, addresses that, so I'll move on to some of my other comments. As you all know, that we are in desperate need of more funding sources to build more affordable homes, so that the people who are receiving these services have a stable home to exit to and can be successful in moving forward in their lives. We've sent all of you back in June, our letter and reports on the new funding sources that we would recommend that the county look into and I think this is a great opportunity, again, to practice this collaboration, work with your other cities throughout the county, figure out how we can get a multi-hundred million dollar bond on the ballot so that we can immediately address the needs and build new affordable homes, but then also really work to figure out new sources for permanent funding that will be ongoing and can help alleviate these issues. So, again, I appreciate the work that you're doing, the collaboration is key, not only amongst yourselves, but amongst all of us in the community as well. We need to practice what we preach and I look forward to working with all of you as we do that. Thank you.
Thank you, Daryl. Okay, Erin, then followed by Courtney Poole, and then Jaime or Jamie Keenan.
Mr. Chairman and Supervisors, thank you so much for this opportunity. My name is Erin Johansson and I'm Executive Director at TLCS. And this is truly an opportunity. I think I really want to first and foremost recognize that with, I don't remember the exact quote, but with great pain comes great opportunity and that's the place we find ourselves right now. So, thank you very much for the effort that you've put forth to come up with the resolution before you. And also, I think that what the community really needs from our elected officials is leadership and vision and you have this opportunity right now, in this moment in time, to join forces with the other elected officials from all the cities around Sacramento County and really provide that leadership. The provider community has been wanting that and asking for that and we are so delighted to see that you are here at this place right now. The providers from mental health who have been delivering these services for years under the support and direction of the Division have been getting excellent outcomes. The capacity just needs to be increased and that's what you're talking about and that's the perfect answer. The one thing that I would like to really emphasize, I think Daryl mentioned it and it's been alluded to but not really focused on, is that lack of affordable housing is really going to have an impact on our ability to execute this plan. So, both in housing, deep housing subsidy, and in increasing housing stock, those are parts of this puzzle that we still need to really address, but in full support of the resolution before you and thank you very much.
Thanks Erin. Okay, Courtney? And then Courtney is followed by either Jamie or Jaime and Kathy Cresswell.
Good afternoon. My name is Courtney Poole and I'm a community organizer and social worker with Mutual Housing California. I get the honor and privilege to work closely with formerly homeless resident members in our Housing First Community, Mutual Housing at the Highlands. Throughout my two and a half years working at Mutual Housing at the Highlands, I have witnessed the power of affordable, supportive housing to change people's lives. At our community, we celebrate small and large victories every day. One more day of sobriety, individuals finally being awarded SSI that they deserve and need, members empowering themselves to develop and facilitate art groups, journaling groups, and resident councils in the community, members effectively treating physical and mental health needs, the list goes on. Besides these victories, I have witnessed the power that a supportive housing environment with mental health services can play with resident members experiencing challenges, trauma, and disappointments in their lives. Our resident members at Mutual Housing at the Highlands engage in discussion about how grateful they are to have found housing, but they also see how many people are still out on the streets. They understand the difficulties of seeking services downtown and know that it is important for all areas of Sacramento, both the city and the county, to be working to address this issue. We need everyone's support in addressing homelessness in our region. We need the city of Sacramento, we need the county, we need affordable housing developers like Mutual Housing California, and we need service providers. Please vote today to release MHSA funding and support the alternative resolution to play your part in creating sustainable solutions for this issue. Thank you.
Thank you Courtney. Okay, is it Jamie or is it Jaime? Jamie, it must be Jamie.
So, Jamie's one of our residents at Mutual Housing at the Highlands and she had to leave, so I'm taking just 30 seconds of her time. I'm Rachel Isco, the CEO of Mutual Housing and Courtney articulated everything really wonderfully and I just wanted to support the alternative resolution. It's a great city-county collaborative plan. I was concerned about what that means for the capital operating subsidy proposed by staff, which is a really smart thing to do, to set aside funds for the next several years to build a subsidy to retain MHSA-funded units for the residents who qualify for those without displacing them over time. And it sounds like that money is retained in this plan. Is that correct?
We'll need to get an answer for you, Rachel. I think, but suggested in the resolution, I reiterate, coming from the community's services portion, at least in the resolution, so I don't know if that impacts-- we'll get that clarified before--
The operating reserve--
Rachel, we'll get it clarified before we take it up, so, okay. Thanks Rachel. All right, then Kathy, Kathy Cresswell, followed by Jeffrey Tardigie. I assume Rachel was done? She's been redirected to the mayor, excuse me, but that's all right.
Rachel, were you done?
Were you done?
Oh, sorry.
Yeah, okay, all right, very good. All right, Kathy.
Good afternoon Chair and Board of Supervisors. I want to, Kathy Cresswell, and I wanted to support the leadership that the Board has already shown in your new initiatives addressing homelessness and including in particular your use of boomerang funds to support your initiatives. And I want to highlight how important that is and unique in this region and it's a demonstration of how you are using your critical resources to impact this problem. This is a unique moment and opportunity to partner with the city on the whole person care. And my experience on the Continuum of Care Advisory Board really has reinforced the need for and the value of collaboration and partnership between local governments. So, I want to thank Supervisor Serna and Kennedy for their leadership in working with the city and the mayor in developing this alternative resolution. Given the recent reports on the number of people dying on our streets every week and just our ability to see with our own eyes the human suffering that continues and is expanding, what you do today can really make a difference in impacting that. So, I really urge you to support the alternative resolution and as others have said, also be continuing to work on finding those additional resources we need to build more permanent, supportive, affordable housing. Thank you.
Thank you Kathy. Okay, Jeffrey Tardigie, followed by Tiffany Mok and then Michael Alt.
Hello Jeff. Well, I am here to hold you guys--
You got an haircut.
--to that accountable-- Yeah, I'm no longer Grizzly Adams. Sue and Patrick, you weren't here in 2008, but to Don will understand, Joe, and I say, you need to once again look back forward five years and think right now the decisions that you make. For Patrick and for Phil, this should be only the first step. What needs to happen is what happened 50 years ago's for Sacramento with the veterans of how you addressed as retirement, how you addressed the needs that were here. You need to look at, and Sacramento has been ideal in the past, of looking forward at times and thinking ahead. And what you need to right now focus on is what is the way homeless needs to be addressed in the future. Right now, because with the fires, which will probably continue, and other disasters that we see going on in this nation, we need here in this state of California, here in Sacramento, is to figure out how permanent housing and how homelessness is addressed permanently. It will always be here with us. It has been something that, you know, you just need to spend, whether it's task force or whatnot. I listen and go to the stakeholders for the state on homeless first. I hear, you know, federal money, $20 million here every year. I hear making the investment, $20 million once again here. And we only consider this a drop in the bucket to what are the problems. So, again, I would advise you is, yes, you say potential, just for the future. What you really need to do is figuring out how things work.
Okay, thank you Jeff. Okay, Tiffany, and then Tiffany is followed by Michael Alt, followed by Jameson Parker. Hi Tiffany.
Hi, good afternoon Chair and Supervisors. My name is Tiffany Mok and I am here as a fellow resident, Sacramento resident disturbed by the increase in homeless residents. I am also here to support the alternative resolution and thank Mayor Steinberg, Supervisor Serna, and Councilmember Harris for their support and leadership. I want to also support the speakers before me that stress the importance of a stakeholder process and in this vein, to acknowledge how rent increases and development have impacted homelessness. Without stakeholder engagement, the county's analysis is correct that the services will be unsustainable. As a start, we should thank them for enrolling residents in Medi-Cal and how this role will be vital to helping all residents have a home in Sacramento. This role, of course, will be appreciated by many of our first responders, our local health providers, schoolteachers, and even our law enforcement. I've yet to meet a law enforcement or public safety official who joined the profession to stop a man from sleeping on the sidewalk. Thank you and I'm optimistic with this first step and will be watching as all our residents will for increases in helping all our residents. Thank you so much.
Thank you Tiffany. Okay, Michael, and then Jameson Parker and Mackenzie Wilson. Michael?
Chair Natoli, members of the Board, Michael Alt with the Downtown Partnership. I will make a mental note to turn my speaker slip in earlier next time.
I don't shuffle them.
Yeah, no, no, no. Yeah, yeah, I'm looking forward to dinner. The reality is, for us, it's probably been, and I think it goes without saying for many members of the business community, probably the most challenging time that we've ever had. And I think it would be good for you to know, we've had the opportunity over the past year to develop a really solid working group amongst the region's Business Improvement District and had a lot of substantive dialogue related to impacts. The impacts not just of homelessness, but mental health, aggressive behavior, the level of frustration, I think for you to know, is at a time that it is unprecedented with our districts. For Supervisor Serna, Supervisor Kennedy, Mayor Steinberg, this is what leadership is about. We needed a solution, we needed answers, we needed something to provide additional resources to what is growing into a challenge that is unmanageable in this current situation. We needed more resources, we needed more help. We cannot afford for whole person care to fail. It needs to succeed in order for us to make some real progress. We support the resolution. Thank you for your leadership on behalf of both the county and the city. On behalf of our Board of Directors, please support this and move this forward. Thank you.
Thanks Michael. Okay, Jameson Parker, followed by Mackenzie Wilson.
Good afternoon Chair Natoli, Board. My name is Jameson Parker with the Midtown Association. We represent about 1,200 properties in Midtown and along the Long Island Hammer Corridor. I think Michael said it very eloquently, so I don't have to repeat many of those things. We definitely have noticed a trend over the last year of increase in frequency of calls for service around homelessness, but not only that, the complexity of the calls and the hostility of those calls have been a kind of alarming thing for our organization. So, we really applaud the collaboration that the city, county, and other partner agencies have taken on this approach. We're supportive of this alternative measure that's before you today. Thank you.
Great, thank you very much. I just want to announce too, if people are riving for the 2 o'clock item or the 2:15 item, we're going to finish this item, remember how long it takes, and we're going to take testimony from folks on the off agenda and then we will break for lunch and come back for the 2 and 2:15 items, so, for the rest of the portion of the agenda, so we're gonna, that's how we're going to proceed.
We are going to continue the closed session until next week.
Okay, we'll close, it's closed session will be put over as well, so, okay. Mackenzie?
Where do I start? The last time I stepped foot in this building was actually 10 months ago, when you guys decided to declare a state of emergency on homelessness. It's interesting to see that I show back up 10 months later to see a skeleton of what it is that you proposed to do. I think that it's ill-advised to vote on something when I have no idea where all of this money is going to go. You had conversations from stakeholders not getting to have enough say in what's going on. And I also would like to also ask if any of you happened to make it to the State Capitol the other day, where they held a presentation on why Housing First and the Housing First model is the way to go about possibly solving our houseless population issues. We talked about the increasing numbers that we're starting to see in our districts. Like I said, I'm having trouble trusting this partnership that has taken 10 months to even possibly happen on a piece of paper, while at the same time, out of the same mouths and in the same breath, our elected officials also criminalize homelessness and being outside. And so, my question really is, one, where's the housing? Because that's the point. What are we going to do to permanently house individuals? Because I can't give them services and keep them involved in services if they don't have a stable place to keep themselves. And then I also want to know when we'll be able to see it, because like I said, I think it's ill-advised for anybody to vote on this stuff today. I mean, it's important. The money is here now, here it is, it's cool, let's talk about how to spend it, but again, without talking to your community and your stakeholders over there? I think that, again, saying yes to our elected officials who, like I said, at the same time criminalize homelessness, make money off of the criminalization of homelessness, give money to our sheriffs to continue the criminalization of our homelessness, and our Sacramento Police Department to continue the criminalization of our homelessness is a problem. So, again, I'd like to just more see a town hall where we start to invite individuals. I don't want to see backdoor deals between Phil Serna and Mayor Steinberg.
Okay, thank you Mackenzie. I have Kelly Bennett, Ed Manning, and then I'll call once again Claire Bonzel or Linda Yang, if they came back. Otherwise, we're getting on to the last few here, so, okay. Kelly? Hi Kelly.
Hi, I sat there so long, I'm not sure what I was going to say, but I'll give it a go.
Time to think about it though.
Kelly Bennett, I'm the CEO of Sacramento Covered and we were formed in 1998, have a partnership between the city and the county and all four health systems here in Sacramento. So, we know a little bit about collaboration in our day. We've been doing community engagement around healthcare access since that time. You've known us as Cover the Kids or the Mayor's Commission on Children's Health back in the day. We are contracting with the city on the early engagement phase of whole person care. We started, let's see, Wednesday of last week, 37 individuals have been enrolled to date through a very thoughtful and assertive process that is respectful and meaningful. I did want to address earlier comment about, while it makes my heart beat really fast that we could expand very quickly to a countywide process, we know that we are capable of doing that. We have a presence with all eight hospitals today and through many partnerships throughout the county, I think stand ready to ensure that the outreach and engagement piece and the connection to care and housing supports could be very meaningful countywide. What else was I going to say about that? We stand ready and we're very excited about this new alignment opportunity and we're, we just want to express our support for the alternative resolution today. Thank you.
Thank you Kelly. Okay, I have Ed Manning. Is Ed? Hi Ed.
Mr. Chairman, members, my name's Ed Manning, I'm a resident of the city of Sacramento. I'm here today to support the alternative resolution, to congratulate the Board and the mayor and the council on tremendous progress in solving the homeless issue. I live in the city and I work downtown, so I see the visual signs of homelessness. I live near the American River Parkway, so it's something that concerns the entire community. the American River Parkway, so it's something that concerns the entire community. This is a tremendous partnership, and it takes partnerships to solve, solve this problem and a whole-person approach. It takes a suite of services from mental health to housing and beyond. I'm also a member of the board of the St. John's Program for Real Change, and I'm also here representing that board today. We have had a partnership with the county that was very successful. It expired in September in terms of one program, and I'm here both as a resident and as a member of that board to say, we think these partnerships matter, that they serve the community greatly, and it is only with partnerships that we can do what needs to be done for the entire homeless population, especially a part of the population that's less visible, that of women and children, and you've heard from some people today who've successfully competed, completed the program. So I'm here to say I, I, I reach out my hand to work with each of you, with the city, with the mayor, and with everyone in the community to try to serve the entire population of homelessness as best we can, and to find solutions that work. And thank you again for approving this great program and for your partnership with the city.
Thank you, Ed. Okay, so did Claire, or Claire Bonzo, or Linda Yang return? If not, then note that, hold on one last time. So I have Andrea Crook is the last person to, I have for speaker forms, those will be the last speaker on item 23, then we'll bring him back to the board for discussion. Andrea.
Good afternoon.
Good afternoon.
So I'm Andrea Crook. I am the Director of Advocacy for Advancing Client and Community Empowerment Through Sustainable Solutions, a program of NorCalMHA. We were recently awarded the client stakeholder contract through the MHSOAC and represent clients throughout the state of California. I do want to say that I do support the alternative resolution, but not how it came to be. And Phil Serna, I too found that this was a really frustrating process, and my, my talking points, however, haven't changed. I have this mascot, and I forgot to bring it, but it's a little stuffed animal. It's an elephant. And it represents, I feel like, myself and the individuals that I represent, because I often feel like we're the elephant in the room. I, I feel like, you know, the best of intentions were being made when the mayor's office and Sacramento County and Sacramento City came together for meetings. But I oftentimes feel like individuals with the actual lived experience are an afterthought. And I want us to go back to the basics. I want us to go back to the actual intent and the law of the Mental Health Services Act. I mean, this was, I've been involved in this since its inception, and it's so exciting. It's an opportunity for us to do business differently. And, you know, according to the MHSA statutory standards, counties have an obligation to ensure clients of the public mental health services are part of the development and implementation of MHSA-funded services. And additionally, counties can use up to 5% of its planning estimated dollars each year for community planning process. We had a very robust community planning process at the beginning, when we first started this back in, you know, '04, '05, '06, but since then, we really haven't seen that. I do want to say that we have an individual that is a client advocate liaison, and that actually has lived experience with recovery and homelessness. And so at the very least, we want to ensure that we have individuals that represent this community at the table when these decisions are being discussed, and be able to take it back to the community and get further stakeholder input. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Andrea. Okay, Andrea's our last speaker. Thanks to all of our speakers. Thanks to those who've been very patiently, patiently waited, and others that are still waiting to address us on other issues. So I have Supervisor Frost and then Supervisor Serna.
Thank you. I want to thank everyone for your comments and your input. It means a lot. And I have been listening while you've been talking. I read the revised resolution, which is significantly different than what we had planned to, to do today. It bring, it discusses some changes that could impact our homeless initiatives, and essentially change the whole plan that we had voted on a couple months ago. And where I know I, it's important for all of us to work together in partnership. I've, I want to work with the city of Sacramento and all the cities in the county. I have some questions. The questions I have relate to what programs are we going to have to cancel if we redirect funds away from our existing initiatives? Because our initial initiatives that we had established were all based on, we, we know where to navigate them to, we just don't have that place to navigate them to. We need more housing. We need more wraparound services. So if we allocate, I think if we have money to spend, we definitely should spend it if it will help the efforts of all of us concerned. But not to the point of jeopardizing the sustainability of programs that are actually keeping people in homes. And so I'm not clear in my mind, is, is our voucher program gonna be compromised and people will actually lose their home because we don't have that funding? And do we have the money in our general fund to backfill the cost associated with, with this if there's not enough MHS, you know, mental health services funds and Medi-Cal funds? The resolution is asking for the county to participate in administering whole-person care, which it seems like that's just, you know, maybe a meeting a month, but I don't know what that means. Our staff work really hard. They've, they're experts at what they do, and they, they have to now maximize what they can get out of their day just to get their work done. It's not like we're overstaffed. So if that, if redirecting our resources to administer whole-person care is gonna, could potentially be a cost to the county, and so have questions relating to what would we need? Would we need more employees? Is that gonna require that we grow our employee base in order to, to make this happen? I, I'm concerned about that. We talked about allocating $44 million over three years, and that we could run out of money by 2021. And at that point, that's not that far off. My question is, what programs end, or where, where does the money come from to backfill those programs? And does our already strained general fund have those monies? Will this impact our voucher program and SHRA's budget and their whole plan moving forward? I don't know how that fits in. The resolution is also asking for $4 million annually for the county to sustain the whole-person care program, and I'm not sure how, where that money comes from, and how the county funds that, and what programs we have to redirect funds from in order to fund, fund that. There's also some added, outside cost implications that were not included in the, in this, in this summary of numbers. There, there are impacts on costs associated with how we do all these programs, and making those changes is gonna require different, different resources in different places. I don't know what those costs are. There's also, it, Mayor Steinberg talked about whole-person care will pay for case management, but wants the county to help administer the whole-person care. In this resolution, it talks about wanting the county to participate in administering whole-person care at no cost to the county. I don't know what that, I don't know that that's no cost to the county. I'm not sure what the resources the mayor needs. Once, one person said it's ill-advised to vote on this today because we don't have enough information on where the money is going to come from. I, I think there's wisdom in that, that this is, like, came to us last night. I think I got this resolution in an email last night. I haven't seen the numbers, so I'm not sure. I, I don't know how to vote on something that I haven't really seen the numbers, and I don't know how it impacts the county's budget and our, our whole plan moving forward. We, we have a plan to try to partner with whole-person care to fulfill that continuum, the housing part of it, the wraparound services, you know, and unfortunately, it takes time to put these things into action, but we're working on it, our staff are working on it as fast as possible. ACT said, today we face a moral decision, and I think that's true. The question I have is, what programs are we cutting in order to, and how, how does that all shake out? What are we cutting? I can't see the bigger picture because I haven't had time to look at this. So I think, I, I would like to request that we continue this item based on the fact that we don't have enough information to, to really evaluate how this impacts the county's entire plan and, and our homeless initiatives and our budget. I, I'm very concerned about protecting our general fund. The county has, the county has some big considerations coming up next year, and so I feel it's important for us to, to not go into this with the idea that the general fund can easily backfill whatever we don't have enough money for. We need to use our Mental Health Services Act funds as smartly as we can, and we need to try to partner, I want to find ways that we can help Sacramento City, help the mayor, and help this, most of all, help the homeless people transition out of homelessness, and then have the programs that can sustain themselves to keep them under a roof and help them be successful in, in that. So I'm just gonna throw that out there, that I feel that we have not had enough time to look at the full ramification of this resolution that just came to us last night. So I'd like to move that we continue this item and this discussion to a time when we have more information.
Okay, all right.
Or I'd like to just put that out
Get it out there.
As a consideration.
All right. Okay, would you expect any responses to any of your questions? If not, I'm gonna move.
Well, I don't even know if we can answer all that today. I mean, can we? Can we answer those questions today?
I think what the second resolution does have in front of you is 44 over three years. Staff recommendation was seven, which 21 over three years. So that's another five, that's $5 million extra that's coming in, in it. Will it have an immediate impact on us cutting programs? I'm looking over at Sherri. I don't believe that immediately in year one or year two, but that's a potential down the road, that if revenues don't come in, that that could have impact on the programs. We will be throwing this plan up every year, and we'll be able to report to you what that will look like. Second question you had was the voucher program, and that, I don't believe this will have an impact on it, but I need to check with our experts to make sure that I'm, I'm correct on that. Immediately, is there general fund dollars that we have to backfill in year one? I don't believe so, but it goes back to the first question, that if revenue's not there, if there's more money, that could be an issue. Your third question, fourth question was $4 million, if I understand the resolution correctly.
And does it impact SHRA?
Yeah, and then that question.
Do the voucher, does the lack of funds for vouchers impact SHRA?
I need, need to have staff help me with that. Your other question is, from year four on, is the resolution calls for $4 million per year to be allocated from MHSA funding source. So to answer your question on that one, I think the resolution contemplates that the MHSA funding source will be the ones that will be funding that. Whether the money's available or not, that's an annual true-up that we'll do.
But that's just part of our programs that we're on an ongoing basis that anyone can take advantage of, so it's there anyway. It's already there. Is that what you're saying?
No, a little bit different.
Or is that added money?
I think, I believe the way this written, it adds in there. The county still has this program, and that's clarification I wanted with this resolution. We got to that point, is that we have our own program, the countywide program that we're doing. This bullet point basically states that the whole-person care will have a minimum of $4 million going forward. And I'm kind of looking at both Supervisor Kennedy and Serna for some assistance.
Similar, similar to what staff proposed, but it was a greater amount. It was $7 million.
Yeah, so this is not just strict whole-person care. It's the whole homeless program.
For, for services. You had built $7 million in for six years
Yeah.
versus $4 million for years four through whenever.
And that's $7 million, by the way, took into account in the staff report, the federal match.
Right.
This doesn't, so we would still be getting that federal match
Right.
above and beyond this.
Okay. Okay.
So maybe an easier way for, to understand that would be to give the gross amounts, Supervisor Kennedy, you just...
Would be to, I'm sorry, give the gross amounts?
Oh. Well, you're, you know, Sue's asking a question, you're answering it a slightly different way, and personally, I think it'd be if you add up the $7 million for three years, or four, three years, and then the four for the next couple of years versus what the county staff report says. I just wonder if that might make it easier to understand.
And are you saying that, are, when you say $44 million for, over the next three years, so are you saying $14 million a year, or are you saying $10 million plus whatever Medicaid we can take advantage of?
I think, actually Nav touched on it. I think Sherri actually mentioned it during her presentation. I believe the mayor and his staff have alluded to this as well, is that the, the expectation is in the first of the three years of the grant life, you're not gonna have an immediate expectation for the full, whatever it is, 14 in equal chunks. You're gonna have probably ramp up, I believe, at 6.6 roughly in the first year. Yeah, we'd have to figure that out, but, but I don't think we're talking about necessarily equal distribution of the $44 million in each of the three years. It's gonna be appropriated, or it would be assumed to be appropriated based on the demand in those years.
Well, this is, I mean, $44 million, that, so it's basically our, our homeless initiatives supporting
No, I don't know why you keep, I don't, I'm not sure why you keep saying that. I'm not sure. I don't know how to interpret that. I'm sorry. This is separate.
Maybe Nav, you can help.
I think, let me, let me come at it this way.
Where's the money coming from?
That's a good, that's, that's a good way to say it.
The same place that staff assumed it was coming from in their recommendation.
But it's twice.
That's the easiest way to say it.
So Nav, let's see if you can tie it all together.
The way I'm reading this resolution is that it's $44 million over three years, not an annual amount. We had simplified it saying 777. So we got to 21. This resolution gets to 44. I'm also reading this that it's not strictly for whole-person care. Whole-person care is a component of that 44, whatever the county initiatives countywide we're doing, all that comes into it to come to that $44 million. So if the 44 means $4 million first year, then 20 next year, and then whatever amounts left, that there's not a straight line in there, because it's gonna, it's gonna take some time to get the programs up and running to get to that spot.
This is intended to complement the whole suite of other initiatives the county has already embarked on.
Yeah, that, that's what I was getting at. So whatever we, we have going on... Yeah, that, that's what I was getting at. So, whatever we, we have going on, this does not take any funding away from the initiatives we have. I'm looking down that way, to make sure I'm saying that right.
The, the county is, over six years, utilizing all of our MHSA resources, so this is 44 million on top of that?
Let me come at it this way. I think...
It's, it's in addition, he said. So, how are we going to fund our, how are we going to fund it?
I think the delta, and I'm looking at both supervisors to make sure that I'm saying this right. The delta is, this is 44 for the first three years, but we had proposed was 21. So, delta is an additional 23 million. Is that...
Twice as much.
Yes, that's correct.
So, that what money comes from is whatever fund balance we had, it makes the fund go negative sooner. It's a projection, but that's where the money's coming from.
But you have less of an impact on the same funding source in the out years, years four out, because it's four, not seven.
Yeah.
Right. This is buying down that fund balance. It's not creating a new fund.
And, okay, go ahead.
One that Sherri showed us when she was up. So, I, I think the difference is, some people are talking about annual expenditures and some are talking about three years. I'm, I'm wondering if that's where the discussion needs to be clarified.
I think if I could annualize it, I understand that's not the proposal, but annualize, the way I'm thinking about it is, ours was seven straight line all the way through. This is for first three years. I'm annualizing at a 14.6 million, then year four becomes 444 all the way out. Did I say that?
Yeah, and annualize it, but understanding that you're not going to have that equal appropriation.
No, I'm just saying, I'm just trying to compare apples to apples.
Yeah, that's right.
But it takes from this, the community services funds, which also is subsidizing our voucher programs and other housing programs. So, that impacts housing, right?
It does not.
Does not?
Yes, I understand that the voucher and other housing programs and housing initiatives do not depend on Mental Health Services Act funds. The only involvement of Mental Health Services Act funds in housing is in the full-service partnerships that we operate out of the Mental Health Services Act. I do want to correct one thing that was said, though. The first paragraph of the proposed resolution does specify that the funding is for people who will be enrolled in the City of Sacramento's Whole Person Care pilot program. So, it is not a sub, Whole Person Care is not a subset under this language.
But you said that the No Place Like Home was, and the refinance funding for the capital operating reserve was coming from MHSA funds earlier in the day.
So, I think what, what has happened is the refinancing component that we spent some time this morning, simplistically, if you're looking at it, the delta between what we're proposing and this alternate resolution, that's where the dollar amount difference is.
Is, is it the unspent fund line here?
Yes.
Yeah, that's page seven.
So, in the, in the, if it's all spent in the first three years, where will the money come from for the other programs?
I, I am taking seriously the admonition from several of the speakers that we shouldn't decide that in this very moment because we need to talk with the stakeholders about where it would come from. But, but the two likely places that would come from is either spending down the fund balance to zero much earlier than projected in MHSA dollars, or not making the, the investments for the refinancing of the existing housing over the next three years. Those are probably the two most likely options, but we would consult with the stakeholders.
And the third one, to be fair, that was discussed this morning, was cuts to programs.
Cut, which programs? Which programs would, would we, would go first? I mean, how do you decide that? That's hard.
I think that's what Sherri's saying, is that as we engage in the stakeholder process that we go through, a lot of these details will get worked out at that point.
And that's, and quite frankly, that's why the resolution has belt and suspenders and belt again, because it, it references the multiple oversight bodies that would, including our own, including this body, including this board, that would have to be certainly advised, involved in making decisions about expenditures moving forward. That's pretty clear in the, in the alternative resolution.
Plus, this has to be a part of the MHSA steering committee and the MHSA annual report process anyway.
Okay, all right. Any else you feel?
I would just, I would just draw your attention to my concern about the language, which would restrict any MHSA dollars spent on these new and expanded programs to only individuals who are enrolled in the City of Sacramento's Whole Person Care pilot program.
Well, I thought we were going to just be, be eligible countywide. That was stressed very early on.
That wording is a little off-putting. Maybe it needs, can be revised.
I think it was an attempt just to identify the context of what we're trying to do, which is a city grant. So, unless the mayor wants to maybe help clarify it at the, at the podium...
And again, we will reiterate, it is a city grant, but it's to be spent throughout the county.
I think the question, if I'm hearing what Sherri's asking, is, the way we were contemplating our thought process was that any kind of program that's out there countywide will be eligible for this money. I took a different interpretation of what Sherri did, just reading this. I still was holding on to that principle. I think what Sherri's asking for clarification from the board members is that, is that still true, or is it only for Whole Person Care? Is the avenue to get access to this, you got to be Whole Person Care eligible, or if the county has its own initiatives, are those folks eligible for this money or not? That's the question.
So, for example, I know, I know the mayor's eager to answer the question too, but as I read the Whole Person Care criteria, you have to not only be Medicaid eligible, but have two hospitalizations in the past X months, or one hospitalization and two, yeah, there are, there are eligibility criteria for Whole Person that are more restrictive than Mental Health Services Act. I'm concerned that you don't want to pass a program where a seriously mentally ill homeless person from a community outside the city presents, does not meet the criteria that the city signed up for with the federal agency in its Whole Person Care grant, and they'd be excluded. That's my only concern.
Again, I think this is, we're talking about the subset of that population, one of which would be Whole Person Care individuals.
So, maybe it's and/or, maybe there's and/or in here, but Mr. Mayor?
Yes, thank you. This is my interpretation. Anyone who is part of the so-called point-in-time count, who is living with immense mental illness ought to be eligible for these, for this $44 million, regardless of whether or not they are a Whole Person Care recipient. But the larger point, again, is that we want to do as much consolidation of approaches and programs as possible and points of entry so that we are all working on the same population.
Right.
That's the whole point here. And if we can, it's this whole thing about consolidating our resources, but there's no question that you don't have to be Whole Person Care eligible in order to benefit from this $44 million, but that sort of misses the point. We're trying to create a different subs, kind of substantive partnership that allows us to focus on the same group of people who are represented in the point-in-time account. And if, just one other thing, the resolution, I think Supervisor Serna and Kennedy have drafted this rather artfully. It, it doesn't, it, it requires the staff to participate in the city's Whole Person Care governance structure to support the design and implementation. That's another way of saying, let's work together and try to address the plight of the same population.
Which we've already committed to do.
Yeah, we're already doing, I thought we were already doing that.
I mean, that's what I'm saying. So, that part of it there is nothing different than what we've already committed to do.
I agree. I agree.
Okay. Mr. Gill, I'm going to turn back to you here and see if you can, we've heard from the mayor, we've heard from Ms. Heller, we've heard from our colleagues here.
I think depending on what the board's desire is, if this is a resolution, Robin and I had a discussion offline, is that if you could send this back to us, adopt it or give us some authority to make some of these changes. The staff has questions, as you can see that we have. I think attorney has some questions too. And if you, if this is what the board wishes to do, adopt it, give us the direction to work these things out. Robin, you want to weigh in?
Robin? Counsel?
I would just ask for some time to smooth over some legal issues regarding governance, ownership, liability. So, small language tweaks might make it a little better for the county's participation.
Okay, so we could potentially adopt a framework here today with, you know, a good deal of specifics attached to it, certainly some dollar amounts and, and direction, but you'd want to go and refine that? Is that what you're...
Can I, can I just add one thing? I, I just want to ask if we could add, because we've always operated under the, with the idea that we're not going to create a plan that requires a backfill from a general fund in the event that that plan becomes unfunded or short. Can we include wording in, in this that general fund is, with the idea that this is not going to, that's not going to be part of the funding associated with this?
The board can give us that direction, absolutely.
Okay. All right.
So, if I could just understand, I realize Mr. Serna's next, but I just want to make sure I understood what this language workout is. And it's really, is it looking at the, the, the grant language to make sure that the county, unincorporated counties and the other incorporated cities are eligible to be, have their services paid for in this?
Can I, can I give an example?
We all, we might all agree here, but does that work with the language of the grant?
Sure. The other is, is I think between the city attorney and the county council, we would like the county to not encumber the city's audit...
Isn't that...
Component.
All right, so, so let me give an example that Robin and I spoke of that I think is a legitimate issue, and that's, but it's totally workable and within the framework of what the, the intent of this resolution is, is not changed. As an example, establish a Whole Person Care Implementation Committee. We all, we all agree that, at least, I would say Supervisor Serna and I agree, that that's an important component, and it also, I think, addresses some of the issues that those that are concerned about this only being a City of Sacramento, kind of Sacramento thing. It addresses that. However, she makes a good point in that this has the county establishing the Whole Person Care Implementation Committee when it's technically not our grant. So, it's really not appropriate for us to establish what we would, but you could, we could easily rework those, just a couple of words, to say that, you know, work with the...
The city.
City, you know, in their, on their committee, and, you know, that type of thing. So, that's, that's one instance.
Yeah.
Okay.
But I don't think that in any way flies in the face of what the intent of this resolution is.
All right.
I think the guidance that we would seek is that if this is the resolution the board wants to adopt, we have a framework in front of us. What we need to know is the dollar amount, and I think you have some of these bullet points that Supervisor Kennedy said, give us the authority to work out the language, to fix words or whatever we need to get it done to make this resolution operational.
Okay, all right. Well said. Okay, Mr. Serna, Mr. Kennedy, and Ms. Peters.
Okay. So, I'm prepared to, to move the, move the resolution. That was the intent. We, we, Supervisor Kennedy, the mayor, myself, and very capable consultants spent a good amount of time, being very, very thoughtful about the language here. Of course, everything can be refined over and over again, but what I'm not interested in doing today is punting. That is absolutely not an option for me. So, if our CEO, one of my colleagues, maybe two of my colleagues in our county council are just feeling too uncomfortable with the language, what I do want to affirm, and I want to affirm it formally, and I want it based as a vote today, hopefully, up or down, is, I think the CEO mentioned it, the, the funding amount, the commitment, the, the part that, that is probably most critical here is both the amount that we would fund in terms of the complement to Whole Person Care in those first three years, the life of the grant, the $44 million, and certainly the ongoing commitment of funding to sustain the efficacy of the grant, past the grant's life. I think Supervisor Kennedy makes a very good point about the wording for bullet point number four in terms of which party is establishing what committee. That's fine. If we want to, you know, smooth over things like that, that, that's fine. But I, I do think today this board finally needs to make a formal commitment up or down about, about the resource that's in question, the resources. So, I'm prepared to, to move the alternative resolution with the intent to have our county council, the city's attorney, our CEO, work together to smooth some of the less substantive language, quite frankly, that does not redefine, reassign, otherwise affect the commitment of the $44 million or the $4 million per year in years four in perpetuity. And I would look for a second.
I second.
All right. We have a motion, a second, and we still have supervisors wish to speak, and so don't put the vote up yet. We're not ready for that yet. We will come up, back in a minute. Thanks. Okay, anything else Supervisor Serna, then I'm going to Supervisor Kennedy, Supervisor Peters, and Supervisor Frost?
I would just add, Mr. Chair, I appreciate the indulgence of, of my colleagues today. I know this is not, it hasn't been easy, and perhaps it won't be an easy vote for some on here, but to me, given the amount of time and, and thought that, I know that my colleague Supervisor Kennedy and I have put into this, working with the mayor, and certainly carrying out our fiduciary responsibility to, to consider the fact that we represent districts, yes, that overlap with the City of Sacramento, but we also are part of a, a governing body that represents a much broader geography that includes unincorporated areas, and that's why we made every effort we could to recognize that so that there is less, or the minimal concern by some on this board, and I suspect we'll hear some later, about this being quote-unquote "too city-centric." I, I agree with the mayor wholeheartedly that it's, the time to act is now. In fact, we had a little running a bet about a certain metaphor about doing something and getting it off the pot. The time is now to do that, because, quite, quite frankly, you know, we've spent months on this, and the, the, the challenge is not getting any easier. We heard the death report numbers again today. We and our constituents see what we see and feel the way we do every day about, about both the human tolls of homo, human toll of homelessness as well as the social toll. So, I'm not interested at all in punting and kicking this can down the road a single day longer. I'm looking for a commitment by this board and by this county today. Thanks.
Okay, thanks. Mr. Kennedy?
I just want to say that I wholeheartedly concur with Supervisor Serna's comments. I do think that we all know the dire circumstances that this community is facing every day. We don't have time to continue this. We need to act fast. We need to act now, but not recklessly. And a lot of, great deal of thought and deliberation has gone into this alternative approach, sometimes some heated discussion, but always polite. And I, I think that, you know, the imperative is on us as policymakers and as a county to utilize or better utilize the resources that we actually do have today, rather than put off what needs to be done for, in the future. So, I, I hope you'll seriously consider taking this, what I think is a historic step toward solving a problem that is vexing us all.
Okay, thanks, Mr. Kennedy. Ms. Peters?
Thank you. Well, I appreciate that a lot of work has gone into it, but of course, because of the Brown Act, only two people from our board were able to participate in those discussions. So, some of us are just learning about it today at a level of detail, and I appreciate the need for speed. But there, I think, in order to get a consensus from the board, it's important to flesh out all the questions and get the answers so that there's a comfort level in going forward. So, I still have a few questions. I, and you may have answered some of this before, but I want to know where the stakeholders fit in, the, the mental health committee. There's a new committee called here, so how, how is all that going to work? Does someone know?
The, the law requires that any amendment to the Mental Health Services Act plan and its current spending requires deliberations by the Mental Health Services Act Steering Committee, also sometimes referred to as the MHSA Stakeholders Group. Committee, also sometimes referred to as the MHSA Stakeholders Group. We have a strong history of that group interacting with staff and teaching back and forth and coming up with a plan. Then a revision to the plan, or alternatively, a new plan, needs to be posted publicly, and then there needs to be a public hearing held by the Mental Health Board, at which point the revised plan comes back to this Board of Supervisors for final adoption. Generally, what happens is that if a budget amendment is required, it's consistent with that plan. Generally, the revision doesn't take place that, you don't have to move money that fast, and so it would be incorporated in the budget process for next fiscal year.
Okay. So after today, you're going to, the attorneys are going to polish up the language, and then you're going to take it to the Mental Health Board.
To the Steering Committee.
And they're going to have, pardon?
The stakeholder steering committee first, then the Mental Health Board.
So they're going to have a hearing, at which time they may offer suggestions, and then it comes back to us at the Board of Supervisors to approve it, and then it goes into the budget. Is that?
That's, that's correct.
I'm fine with that. I wanted to be clear on the language of our current homeless initiatives, which we passed in June. Does anything we're doing affect those in a negative way?
No, Supervisor. There's, there's no negative impact to our community initiatives from this.
Okay. So I just wanted to get that on the record.
I think Supervisor Peters, the main point that, in that one, is the way this is written is, what's created the confusion, I think we've worked that, we're working that through, is that anybody is eligible. As mayor, is anybody at the point of time, I think the staff's concern's always been, was that that definition is much broader. Whole person care narrows it down. We're not taking the narrow definition. We're taking a broader definition. So that encompasses our plans, whole person care, and anything else that's happening in the county.
Okay. Thank you. I just want to get that on the record. And so then, there would not be any effect to current service contracts to the nonprofits that are engaged by your department, Mr. Lake.
You can get ready for a boost.
It appears to me that it would not affect existing services or contracts in the current fiscal year. There might be an effect in the subsequent fiscal year, and the Mental Health Services Act Steering Committee and the public process, the Mental Health Board will flesh that out.
Okay.
And make it crystal clear what those effects are.
And that has to do with us using some of the money that's in the unspent category in the future to deal with this, and depending on what the state budgets are, state and federal budgets are in several years down the road, it could affect possibly a contract.
Correct. And it could affect this, this coming year, our ability to sustain other programs such as the navigators and the emergency rooms, but not during the current fiscal year.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay. Good questions. Okay. Supervisor Frost.
And then I just wanted to reiterate that I'm hoping that my colleagues will consider putting wording in there to protect general funds, and with the idea of this is going to be reviewed annually anyway, and we're going to determine what is needed on an annual basis, because you can't put it all to work all at once. Can we include that in your
Any thoughts?
...motion?
I'm not interested. I think it's pretty clear as is. This is the universe that we're talking about is Mental Health Services Act funding. I don't know how more clear it can be.
So you are not?
And since we, since we have to revisit it anyway annually, I don't see what the point is.
So no, I'm not interested.
So it's not with the idea, though, that this is funded by general fund?
No, that's, yeah. That is not.
And it is going to be reviewed annually?
In fact, multiple times by multiple advisory bodies and decision-making bodies, yes.
Okay. And I also want to just add, this is not about punting. It's simply that I believe in our homeless initiatives, and I'm excited about them and don't want to do anything to jeopardize what we've worked so hard on. So I just want everyone to be aware of that. So thank you.
Thanks. Okay. Comments from my colleagues, and we do have a motion and a second. I just want to comment very briefly that I think with all the good work that's, you know, been presented today, certainly by our staff, by our committee of our colleagues, working obviously with the mayor and others from the city, there is, again, I think, part of the questions that have come out here, there are a bit of a disadvantage for, again, adhering to the Brown Act, which I think we all certainly do and pay very close attention to, so that we don't have serial conversations or discussions. At the end, we have, we put trust and faith in our fellow members to go forward and to certainly represent the interests of the county, but also work in the spirit of collaboration and cooperation with, whether it's the city of Sacramento or other city partners, depending upon the delegated and assigned task. And so I think that that's, again, in fairness to certainly some of the questions that come forward, I think are, you know, are very real, and I think ones where, again, for those of us that had access to it last night, got it, some of us got it, you know, as late as this morning, and to, again, to reflect on what's in here and the direction to be given is not unimportant, obviously been stressed by our speakers. I want to thank to our, the folks that stayed with us all morning, now through a good portion of the afternoon on this, because, again, that input is very, very important, and I think the emphasis, and I want to thank Dr. Heller and certainly Oma and others for, again, they've been saying very clearly, I would just say to the, to the stakeholders, again, who are real people and represent organizations, but certainly I think the interests of folks who have been very deeply impacted by, you know, challenges of mental illness, either within their family frameworks, certainly within their own personal selves, and I think that is clear, whether it was in the legislation or not, this county has, in, in, in good faith, I think, continued to respect that and reflect upon it, and take that very seriously. And I think that as we go forward with any resolution today, and it's been said by some of my colleagues, but I wanted to reemphasize, I think that's very important, and again, I appreciate that our staff takes that seriously and that we're going to, as a part of this, assuming this is approved, that direct that back. And I think, again, the Mental Health Board, Mental Steering Committee, and obviously working with the city is, this, I think, assumes that with another committee structure of some sort. So I would just say that, that I'm prepared to support the resolution here today as it's been outlined. I think with some of the, you know, the questions have been addressed, they fill in some of the holes, and again, I can imagine that from a staff perspective, there's probably still any number of questions, but I have faith that council and our CEO and certainly our, Dr. Heller and others can work very closely with the city staff and, you know, and working through those with our, our committee representatives as well. So I would just note, too, lastly, that I think that the whole issue of housing, we've talked about that many different times, we'll continue to talk about that, but I would want to reflect just one, I think, very salient point that's been emphasized by many folks here, is that we can have X million dollars available to help folks get steered in the right direction and make those contacts. We can get them into services and to have good treatment regimes that they'll allow them different pathways to, to hopefully better health and better situations for them and their families. But if we don't have a place when, once the treatment is, is completed, whatever that may engender, and then they, and they would go back, particularly those in the homeless segment of this population, then we really are going to have a difficulty. We're going to be in, and this was reiterated with me yesterday, we're going to be spinning and spinning and spinning, and it'll spend a lot of, while folks are waiting to basically exit that, and I think that's going to be incumbent upon all of us. Certainly, this county has a role in it, but working with our city partners in the cities, not just the city of Sacramento, that's going to something, it's a much bigger issue than what we're talking about here today, but it's very relevant and it's very connected to that. And lastly, I would just say that it's important, I think, this, this emphasis on availability countywide, we represent certainly the city of Sacramento, this residents, and obviously whoever may be homeless and within the boundaries of the city, but we have six other cities, and we have a large unincorporated area that includes both urban and suburban communities as well as rural areas, and homelessness really knows no bounds. It's not just about people without housing, though. It's about folks with addictions, with mental illness, and with other challenges. And so I think it's, again, as this county has for, for generations, we'll continue to be one of the providers of both first and last resort, and we'll do our best to, as a partner, obviously with this additional pot of money and with the city's commitment, the city of Sacramento's commitment to continue to provide services to the people of this county, all million and a half of them, in my thinking, anyway. So with that, then, I will bring the question back to us. We have a motion and a second. If we want, maybe just get a quick restatement, ma'am clerk, so it's understood what's being voted on here, so.
Yes.
Because we have a couple of comments in addition to that, so. Okay. Well, it turns to you. You want to go ahead and state what you, what you have for the record as far as the resolution?
Oh, I'm sorry. I didn't realize you were asking a question.
We're going to vote on it in just a second, so everybody goes away with a clear understanding.
I understand that we're voting on the alternate resolution that was presented by Supervisor Cerna.
And Supervisor Kennedy.
And Supervisor Kennedy. I'm sorry.
Right. And some, but there's some direction that comes out of that. Is that, I think we need to make sure it's clear about what, yeah.
I just want to restate the direction is to authorize the county executive and county council to work with the city attorney to make sure that the language in here is very clear about what we're stated intent. If we need to, we will come back to both Supervisor Kennedy and Supervisor Cerna if we need major changes, which we're not contemplating. The framework that you are doing is the framework that's in here, and it's more of a language issue. The dollar amounts are fixed
Right.
...in here, and it's just a matter of language and definition that we have.
Correct. And as a matter of courtesy, I think both Supervisor Kennedy and myself would like to see that if it's, if there's going to be any iterative exchange between your office and county councils, we'd like to kind of see how the language is coming along.
And once we are done with that, if I could just add one more component, we will file that with all board members, so everybody has
Absolutely. All board members, but again, there's a little bit of disadvantage, again, with faith and trust in our colleagues, but we, there's three of us who aren't necessarily privy to all that, so we need to be, needs to be clearly understood, so. Okay. All right. Everybody comfortable with what we're voting on, then? Okay? If nothing further, please vote.
Unanimous vote.
We have it. All right. We do have some off-agenda folks, and I want to take that before we break for, well, it will be a late lunch, maybe dinner by the time we get there, but so, and respecting the folks who have been patient, so please exit quietly. We're going to stay in session and take our off-agenda speakers, and then we're going to break for the rest of the remaining portion of the agenda, so. I had a number of folks that in and out this morning. Please exit quietly, please. We're still in session. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. And there were a number of folks here, off agenda, similar topics, I don't know how many folks have remained, and I know that I could call some folks, what I would do, because I think they're mostly along the same subject, typically we allow a maximum 15 minutes for a group of folks to speak on a non-agenda item. So I don't know, Tanya, you're still here? If you want to maybe come forward and indicate how folks want to speak in a group or individually, because I had probably 20 speakers, and I think some of those folks who had to leave, they've indicated that, so, but I would allocate 15 minutes for the group if somebody wanted to act as a spokesperson, and I, so I invite Tanya, she didn't say she wanted to be first to speak, but if you want to all come down together, and I'll just put some time up on the board, kind of want to work with you on allowing time to present here. Good afternoon. Thank you for your patience.
Good afternoon. Tanya did have to leave, and so
Okay.
...there are a group of us who are still here.
Okay.
My name is Sonia Lewis. I would like to say, prefacing the topic that we want to speak on, 30 years ago, the crack epidemic ravaged many black communities and families throughout this country, contributing to the homelessness that we are now facing that you guys just voted on a resolution. We don't want to look back 30 years from now and wish we had not ignored this important issue. Real partnership involves the voice of the people. Having an oversight commission will help today's topic of unhoused populations and services, allowing for accountability and transparency. When black lives matter, we, meaning you, all lives will matter, and we will win. Let me repeat that. When black lives matter, all of us win. Again, my name is Sonia Lewis, and I'm a resident of Sacramento community. Despite every single effort, Scott Jones and the Sacramento Sheriff's Department has refused to provide the community with the documentation, any documentation. When impacted communities have the power of oversight, it ensures transparency and accountability. The Sacramento Sheriff's Department currently is the only oversight to the Sacramento Sheriff's Department. Isn't that an oxymoron? As the Board of Supervisors, we need you to create an oversight commission that has the following criteria and power. We demand for a community-led commission as oversight of the Sacramento Sheriff's Department. This commission should have the power to investigate police misconduct, police-involved shooting, and in custody deaths, and then have the ability to share the results of their investigations with the greater community. This commission should have the power to discipline and enforce violations. This commission should have subpoena power. This commission should have the power to develop and change the Sacramento Sheriff's Department's use of force policy. This commission should have the power to share data information and updates with the community, including footage and reports from incidences. This commission should have community-nominated and elected members only, with at least two members having been impacted by police brutality. This commission's members should have absolutely no connection to law enforcement. And finally, this commission's members should be paid, and the commission should be given the budget to do the work it has been given the power to do. Thank you.
Thank you, Sonia. Next.
My name is Feng Lei, and I'm a resident of Sacramento community. Despite every single effort, Scott Jones and Sacramento Sheriff's Department have refused to provide the community with any documentation. When impacted communities have the power of oversight, it ensures transparency and accountability. The sheriff department currently is the only oversight of the sheriff department, oversight to the sheriff department. As the Board of Supervisors, we need you to create an oversight commission that has the following criteria. We demand for the community-led commission as oversight to the Sacramento Sheriff's Department. This commission should have the power to investigate police misconduct, police-involved shootings, and in custody deaths, and then have the ability to share the results of their investigation with the greater community. This commission should have the power to discipline and enforce violations. This commission should have subpoena power. This commission should have the power to develop and change Sacramento Sheriff's Department's use of force policy. This commission should have the power to share data information and updates with the community, including footage and results from incidents. This commission should have the community-nominated elected members only, and at least two members having been impacted by police brutality. This commission's members should have absolutely no connection to law enforcement. This commission's members should be paid, and the commission should be given a budget to do the work that it has been given the power to do. I, as a community member, feel very much impacted by police brutality. Just as any member, any person sitting up there, you should feel that impact.
Thank you, Feng. Okay. Next.
Hello. My name is Sarah Morris, and I'm a resident of Sacramento community. Despite every single effort, Scott Jones and the Sacramento Sheriff's Department have refused to provide the community with any documentation. When impacted communities have the power of oversight, it ensures transparency and accountability. The sheriff department currently is the only oversight to the sheriff department. That's a joke. As the Board of Supervisors, we need you to create an oversight commission that has the following criteria. We demand for a community-led commission as oversight of the Sacramento Sheriff's Department. This commission should have the power to investigate police misconduct, police-involved shootings, and in custody deaths, and then have the ability to share the results of their investigation with the greater community. This commission should have the power to discipline and enforce violations. This commission should have subpoena power. This commission should have the power to develop and change the Sacramento Sheriff's Department's use of force policy. This commission should have the power to share data information and updates with the community, including footage and reports from incidents. This commission should have community This commission should have community-nominated and elected members only, with at least two members having been impacted by police brutality. This commission's members should have absolutely no connections to law enforcement. This commission's members should be paid, and the commission should be given a budget to do the work it has been given the power to do.
Thank you, Sarah. Next.
Hi, my name is Adrian. I'm a resident of SAC County, and I'm also a member of the Sacramento chapter of Black Lives Matter.
Adrian.
We're here today because Scott Jones and the Sacramento Sheriff's Department have refused to provide the community with any documentation. When impacted communities have the power of oversight, it ensures transparency and accountability. The Sheriff Department currently is the only oversight to the Sheriff Department. That's crazy. As the Board of Supervisors, we need you, we need you to create an oversight commission that has the following criteria. We demand for a community-led commission as oversight of the Sacramento Sheriff's Department. This commission should have the power to investigate police misconduct, police-involved shootings, and in custody deaths, and then we should have the ability to share the results of these investigations with the greater community. This commission should have the power to discipline and enforce these violations. We should have subpoena power. This commission should also have the power to develop and change the Sacramento Sheriff's Department's use of force policy. In addition to that, this commission should have the power to share data information and updates with the community, including footage and reports from said incidents. This commission should also have community-nominated and elected members only, with at least two of these members having been directly impacted by police brutality. In addition to that, this commission's members should have absolutely no connections to law enforcement. Super emphasis on that, no connections to law enforcement. The commission's members should be paid, and the commission should be given a budget to do the work it has been given the power to do.
Thank you. Next.
Hello, my name is Rhonda Okonkwo, and I'm from Black Lives Matter Sacramento.
Hi, Rhonda.
And I am a resident of Sacramento community. Despite every single effort, Scott Jones and the Sacramento Sheriff's Department have refused to provide the community with any documentation. When impacted communities have the power of oversight, it ensures transparency and accountability. The Sheriff Department currently is the only oversight to the Sheriff Department. This needs to change. Again, I say this needs to change. As the Board of Supervisors, we need you guys to create an oversight commission that has the following criteria. We demand for a community-led commission as oversight of the Sacramento Sheriff's Department. This commission should have the power to investigate police misconduct, police-involved shootings, and in custody deaths, and then have the ability to share the results of their investigations with the greater community. This community, this commission should have the power to discipline and enforce violations. This commission should have subpoena power. This commission should have the power to develop and change the Sacramento Sheriff's Department's use of force policy. This commission should have the power to share data information and updates with the community, including footage and reports from incidents. This commission should have community-nominated and elected members only, our people, our community, with at least two members having been impacted by police brutality. This commission's members should have absolutely no connections to law enforcement whatsoever. This commission's members should be paid, and the commission should be given a budget to do the work it has been given the power to do. Thank you.
Thank you, Rhonda. Next. Good afternoon.
Good afternoon. I'm Alan Ash. I'm co-chair of the Sacramento area chapter of the ACLU. I don't care if you remember my name. Remember the name's Adrian Ludd. Remember Ryan Ellis. Remember Michael McIntyre. Their stories and many others raise questions about sheriff deputies' use of force that our sheriff refuses to answer, even though he has the discretion to let their loved ones know what happened. Fighting that lack of police accountability goes to a core purpose of the ACLU, keeping government power accountable, transparent, and under the control of the people. While this county board formed the Sheriff's Outreach Community Advisory Board back in 2007, the purpose and powers of that body have nothing to do with accountability and transparency, and that's what Sacramento County needs. That's why the local ACLU chapter board voted unanimously to join this group here today and endorse their demands for police accountability and transparency. That's why the thousands and thousands of ACLU members in Sacramento County that I represent, who are your constituents, are asking that this board at least place police oversight on your agenda in the future. Let members of the public tell you about their frustrations getting answers, information, or almost anything from the sheriff's office when they're, when the sheriff uses force on them or their loved ones. Do some investigation into how oversight can work. Look at how the LA County Board exercised its power last year to create the County of Los Angeles Civilian Oversight Commission for their sheriff. Look at how voters in San Diego County created its Citizen Law Enforcement and Review Board by charter amendment in 1990 for their sheriff. Most importantly, though, police accountability and transparency promote public safety. When policing takes place in the sunlight under community control, the quality of policing increases. When everyone can trust and cooperate with law enforcement, we're all safer, and that's the kind of safety that's not just for the privilege, but for every member of our community.
Yelling. Good afternoon.
Hello, my name is Anheli Tonell. I am also a member of Black Lives Matter and a resident of Sacramento's community. Despite every single effort, Scott Jones and the Sacramento Sheriff's Department have refused to provide the community with any documentation, which further creates a divide between the law enforcement and the community. When impacted communities have the power of oversight, it ensures transparency and accountability. The Sheriff Department currently is the only oversight for the Sheriff Department. As the Board of Supervisors, we need you to create an oversight commission that has the following criteria. We demand for a community-led commission as oversight of the Sacramento Sheriff's Department. This commission should have the power to investigate police misconduct, police-involved shootings, in custody deaths, and the ability to share the results of their investigations with the greater community. This commission should have the power to discipline and enforce violations. This commission should have subpoena power. This commission should have the power to develop and change the Sacramento Sheriff's Department's use of force policy. The commission should have the power to share data, information, and updates with the community, including footage and reports from incidents. This commission should have community-nominated and elected members only, with at least two members who have been impacted by the police brutality. This commission's members should have absolutely no connections to law enforcement. This commission's member should be paid, and the commission should be given the budget to do the work it has been given the power to do. Thank you.
Thank you. Next.
Good afternoon.
Good afternoon.
My name's Brazee. That's all I'm going to say about my name and stuff. You know, I just want to say that it makes me a little nervous to be in here talking to all of you and a little anxious, because I feel like when people speak out, especially people that look like me, oppressed people of the communities of Sacramento County, you know, fear of retaliation or assassination, jail time, prison time. But once again, my name's Brazee. I represent Charge of Castle Organization. We support Sacramento Black Lives Matter, and I'm a resident of Sacramento County. Despite every single effort, Scott Jones and the Sacramento Sheriff's Department have refused to provide the community with any documentation. When impacted communities have the power of oversight, it ensures transparency and accountability. The Sheriff Department currently is the only oversight to the Sheriff Department. That's hilarious. As the Board of Supervisors, we need you to create an oversight commission that has the following criteria. We demand for a community-led commission as oversight of the Sacramento Sheriff's Department. This commission should have the power to investigate police misconduct, police-involved shootings, and in custody deaths, and then have the ability to share the results of their investigations with the greater community. This commission should have the power to discipline sheriff deputies. This commission should have subpoena power. This commission should have the power to develop and change the Sacramento Sheriff's Department use of force policy. This commission should have the power to share data information and updates with the community, including footage and reports from incidents. This commission should have community-nominated and elected members only, with at least two members having been impacted by police brutality. This commission's members should have absolutely no connections to law enforcement, period. This commission's members should be paid, and the commission should be given a budget to do the work it has been given the power to do. And this should be highly considered, because any deaths that happen are on you.
Okay. Thank you, Bradley. Okay, we got, again, certainly in deference to, we let the last lady speak, so, yeah.
My name's Rebecca Sherrod.
Hi, Rebecca.
I am a resident of the Sacramento community. I'm also a taxpayer, and my tax dollars, which I think of as an investment in the public good, are certainly not being used to ensure a sufficient level of quality control in law enforcement. In my household, this is a definition of a bad investment. I'm a member of Black Lives Matter, and I want to say, Black Lives Matter, no compromise.
Thank you, Rebecca.
And as we wrap up, thank you for giving us this 15 minutes. As we wrap up, people couldn't stay till this afternoon for work obligations and the such, but the NAACP is on board with this initiative. Women Take Back the Night is on board with this initiative. Women United are on board with this initiative. Brown Berets are on board with this initiative. ACLU is on board with this initiative. So many other organizations here in Sacramento find this to be an atrocity that Scott Jones and the Sheriff Department continues to take advantage of disenfranchised and vulnerable populations in this community with no oversight. We want transparency and accountability, and we would like for you to put it on your agenda so that we can address it in more detail. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Sonia. Well, thanks to all of you for being here today, and again, for speaking your piece, and we so noted, and again, we appreciate the requests. Thank you very much. Okay. Okay. I had one other off-agenda. Is it Nico Stalmore, or Nico's? Talmore? All right. If not, then that looks like concludes our morning session, and it's now 3:15, so we will return at 1:00, 4 o'clock, or 3:00, you want a half hour or 45 minutes?
I could just keep going now, but I'm not going to.
No, okay, so we're going to, we're going to come back in at 4 o'clock. Good late afternoon. Called board back into session. We apologize for a little bit of a late start for the afternoon session, but we didn't get done with the morning session until 3:15. So, with that, we'll go back in order and ask the clerk to call a roll, please.
Supervisors Frost.
Here.
Kennedy.
Here.
Peters.
Here.
Serna.
Here.
Natoli.
Here.
And you have a quorum.
Okay, very good. We didn't have any items held over from the morning, so we'll go, I guess, first to our 2 o'clock item.
Okay. We, item 24, set salaries for the elected department heads, the assessor, district attorney, and sheriff for the 2019 through 2023 term of office.
Okay, Mr. Devine, I see Mr. Nap, Mr. Gill, do you make any comments, or?
I was going to have to do it. Okay.
Good afternoon, David Devine.
On the fly, very good.
With Personnel Services. Before you is a resolution that establishes a salary for the district, the assessor, the district attorney, and the sheriff for the term beginning in 2019 and ending in 2023. We do this every four years, and the charter requires that we do this six months before the election, which takes place in June, so we have to have this action taken before December 31st. Like I said, it meets the charter requirements. State law also requires that this item is done in a public session, an untimed item, and the effective date of the adjustments won't take place until January 1 of 2019. That's my presentation. If you have any questions, please let me know.
David, just real quickly, so, we, it talks about the monthly amounts. Why doesn't it give the annual salary? Why isn't that mentioned in the report?
I think historically, we have done it monthly, and we could.
That's okay, but it just, but there's no way.
We could change it to annual.
Somebody said, what's the annual salary? It doesn't say.
It never says annual.
It never does. I mean, that.
They always do everything by the month. It's the weirdest thing.
Okay.
I will.
Maybe we can change the weirdest thing.
Four years out, we will absolutely change that.
I figured it out. You multiply it times 12.
Times 12, right, yeah.
Right.
Okay.
At least we don't do it by pay period.
Okay, all right.
Got him.
All right, it's been moved. Have a second. Chair, a second. I have no one signed up. Anybody on item 24? All right, seeing none, please vote.
Unanimous vote.
Thank you.
Thanks, thank you. Okay, next item.
Item 25 is the Natomas North Precinct Specific Plan Status Update Workshop.
Okay, Mr. Smith. You can raise that podium if you want, Todd.
I do. Good afternoon, Chair, Board of Supervisors. I am not LeAnn Moffett. I am Todd Smith, Office of Planning and Environmental Review. Today's item is just a brief workshop, a status report essentially, on the Natomas North Precinct specific plan. Can we get the PowerPoint up? Sorry. Thank you. You probably already know all of this, but for those paying attention at home or in the room, a little bit of regional context here. Starting in the south of this project area, we have the adjacent city of Sacramento and its ongoing development in the north Natomas Community Plan area, as well as the Greenbrier Project that's been fully entitled, that's to the southwest of the Natomas North Precinct, and the Panhandle, which is undergoing annexation by the city of Sacramento. Further to the west, we have Metro Air Park, which is a long-entitled project adjacent to, obviously, the Sacramento International Airport. Moving to the north in Sutter County, we've got the Sutter Point Specific Plan area, and in Placer County, a large master plan area known as Placer Vineyards, and then back into Sacramento County, the Alberta Specific Plan area. So, you can see the regional context here. The Natomas North Precinct is centrally located within both existing development and long-term planning development in other jurisdictions adjacent.
Todd, can I interrupt real quick?
Sure.
You mentioned what's west of the, the plan area, the north precinct plan area.
Yes.
As, including Greenbrier, Metro Air Park, but there's also some other coloration on the map, which indicates the Secog blueprint designation that I think it's important to identify between Metro Air Park and the westerly edge of the north precinct boundary.
That is correct. So, for background, this plan was initiated by the board in February 2012. We did environmental review initiation in March of 2016, and during that initiation in 2016, the board requested periodic status updates, and that's what today's exercise is about. Following that initiation, we did publish a notice of preparation for the EIR in April of last year. We held a couple of scoping meetings for that EIR with public agencies and private interests. We received a pretty substantial number of NOP comment letters, 28, and we have been engaged in ongoing outreach and technical discussions with a few of the technical service providers, including water resources, county's water resources, RD 1000, for example. And just to set the context again, this is the original land use plan that was initiated in April of 2016. You see here, I want to make note of the third bullet here, 700 acres of regional and neighborhood retail and entertainment uses. The next slide is the revised land use plan, and I'm pointing that out because of the reasons for this revision to the land use plan. One of the reasons is a market analysis that was done by the applicant to determine the real need for that large-scale regional retail and commercial. That, overall, that acreage has shrunk substantially, and the applicant has done kind of a refocusing effort on the urban design and circulation elements of this project, really intending to shift from a car-centric land use plan and circulation network to emphasize alternative modes such as bicycling and transit. I'll show you a later slide that deals with trails. The other thing here I want to emphasize is the increased number of acres of open space. It's increased by about 200 acres from the original plan. That has to do with some additional more detailed modeling that the applicant's done on hydrology and determining a 200-year floodplain elevation. And some of the redesign of the plan here is really turning that, that stormwater conveyance facility into an asset of the plan, so it's creating recreational armatures east and west within the plan, three distinct lines, if you will, that are shown in that light green color. The applicant has also heard from a number of constituents or interested parties regarding more active transportation, and so they've increased the numbers, the number of miles of trails and passeos within the plan, and. The next two slides are just simply comparisons of the old plan and the new plan, acreages and units. I'll pause here for a minute. So this slide denotes the regional commercial. You'll see a subtraction, 257 acres and change. That's what I mentioned earlier by that market analysis and that reduction of those land uses, and the increase in the floodplain up by 200 acres and change. One thing to note here on the roads acreage, you'll see that reduction of 115 acres. That has to do with what I mentioned about the rethinking the circulation pattern, where the applicant is focusing on a circulation network internal to the project that is two-lane roadways, whether they're parkways or other collectors, rather than the traditional two-to-four-to-six-lane roadways. They're trying to emphasize a smaller roadway width to emphasize how people can get out of their cars, can walk, can bike, be more connected with the community. The only larger roads within the project are the east-west roadways, Alberta and El Corom Boulevard. This slide is the residential land use unit changes. So the big change here is the addition of an active adult component. This was not a component in the previous plan. This shows an increase of roughly 1,900 units. The other increases are primarily the high density and mixed use. Both of those are, of course, high density, and that total is about 1,000 units and change. Overall, the increase is just over 3,000 units. So this is the planned bike pad network. Like I mentioned earlier, the focus is on alternative modes. What you see here is the first draft of the plan, 50 miles of Class 1, that's off-street, bike trails, pedestrian trails, 40 miles of Class 2, 15 miles of Class 4, that's also known as cycle track, where you have a lane, bicycle lane that's separated by some vertical component of infrastructure, provide a safe route for bicyclists. And really, this network is designed to be a connection method for commuters, whether internal to the plan, going to a job destination within the plan, people who cycle for recreation, as well as safe routes to schools. So this also includes grade separations in potentially high conflict points with automobiles. For example, there's one that's planned down along El Corom Boulevard where it interfaces with the existing development in the city of Sacramento. There will be some ongoing evolution of this network as the plan evolves and as additional technical studies are completed. Transit, this slide represents the coverage area for the planned transit network that is ultimately planned for 15-minute headways during peak hours at full build-out. I'd like to point out the stat here, over 99% of the residential units are within a half-mile of the planned transit service. We have had some preliminary conversations with the applicant about the future of transit, and I'm not going to get into all that now, but as that, as technology is changing, transit service providers have to be adaptive to the future of transit. We're not sure exactly what that looks like yet, but we're hoping to have an adaptable transit service in this plan. So the health and hospitality mixed-use area, that was one of the key features of this plan when we came before you in 2016. The applicant has done some additional homework, and they have a representative here to speak on it, should you so desire. I want to point out one mistake on this slide, that acreage is actually 127 acres, not 150. That's my error. But the site has increased from what the original acreage was due to the physical plant needs associated with that facility. And I will defer to the applicant's representative on the further details of that. So today, really, it's just an opportunity for Board members and any interested parties of the public to comment on this. As we're moving forward, we are going to proceed with issuance of a revised notice of preparation to make sure that all interested parties are aware of the changes to the project, and they can be engaged throughout the process, the rest of the process, that is. I also want to mention that we will be with the applicant, continuing a pretty extensive outreach effort on the project. So far, we've got about a 10-page list of interested parties, whether they're federal, state, local agencies, other stakeholders like Block Sacramento, Sacramento Area Bicycle Advocates. I know we have meetings set up with the school districts, for example, Alberta Joint Elementary School District and Twin Rivers Unified School District. We hope to have a productive conversation with those service providers as well. We are targeting a mid-process workshop summer of next year, when we have more progress on various technical studies, then we can keep you informed. If there's any questions of me, I'd be happy to answer them, but I also want to mention or remind you that the applicant's representative on the hospital medical campus is here as well.
Okay, thanks Todd.
Sure.
Questions by Board members, Mr. Smith? You're gonna get a pretty easy this afternoon, I think, so. Did you indicate, though, that the applicant wanted to have their hospital representative speak? Is that what you said?
I did say that, yes.
Okay, all right, well then, if there's no questions of Todd, I'll invite the, oh, Susan.
Yeah, thank you. Minor question, you were talking about the bicycle plan earlier. Between, I'm not sure who's in charge of whether it's planning or transportation, but when we plan bicycle lanes in the future, are we putting in the requirement to put the green marker lanes for bikes?
That's a good question. We haven't fully developed all that yet, but I think that it's important to make sure that whatever planned bicycle facilities are safe for those bicyclists, and if that's the green markings or the Class 4 type of facility with the vertical separation infrastructure, whatever's gonna work to make sure the bicyclists are safe, that's what we want to do.
Okay, so we don't know what that's gonna be on this project at this point in time?
Right.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, all right. All right, nothing else, then, call forward the applicants. I don't know who's gonna be here to make comments. Christine?
Yes.
Okay, Christine. Good afternoon.
Good afternoon.
All the way from Texas?
Yes.
Oh my gosh.
Where is Allen, Texas?
Just north of Dallas.
Okay, very good. Well, welcome.
Thank you. I'm Christine Hammond, I am with CBRE Healthcare. We are a dedicated healthcare division of CBRE. I know everyone's probably familiar with the big green signs, and particularly focused on hospital planning. So I've been a hospital planner for 18 years, and worked on multiple projects such as this, developing a greenfield site. I'm here today to talk about four basic things. One, why does this development include the health and hospitality mixed-use district? How this development will be phased over time? How each of the components that you see on the plan work with each other? And then how this is also a national trend in planned communities. In the spring of 2016, SG2 Consulting was engaged by OC Properties to do a market analysis of the area. For reference, SG2 is the healthcare industry's premier provider of market analysis. They have very detailed methodologies of looking at population, use rates, and multiple factors and disease trends in order to project the need for healthcare facilities in various markets. They defined a service area of multiple ZIP codes around the Natomas North Precinct area, and looked at the demographics all the way out to 2050 to determine the need for additional healthcare within the market. By the year 2025, they have identified a need of an additional 150 hospital inpatient beds to support those ZIP codes. In addition, they're also projecting by 2025 that there will be a need for additional emergency room capacity to serve those various ZIP codes. And just for reference, to develop in the state of California a new hospital, it typically takes five to seven years from the time that you start planning it until that is opened. So 2025, it sounds far away, but it really isn't. So then, as we looked at this area and we started to plan, what does a hospital need to be on that site? Throughout the industry, if you're gonna start a new hospital on a greenfield, they typically begin at about 60 beds for inpatient care. They're always phased, and in a new, growing market, oftentimes, they will start even smaller with a physician practice, an urgent care center, starting to get your physicians in place to support the community. Again, as you need the inpatient beds, the things such as emergency services, surgical services, and all of those come along with it. So as you build a hospital, you're obviously gonna have medical office buildings to go along with it. So by the year 2025, you'd be starting the first phase of medical office and hospital care. We've planned this site for far greater than that. This is planned for up to 450 hospital beds, 250,000 square feet of medical office buildings. And again, this is a long-term phase organically as the population and the physicians come to this market. They are building block approaches, so as you add beds, you can add an additional medical office building. We've also planned smaller buildings for subacute facilities. So those would be things like a rehab hospital, a skilled nursing facility. So we're covering the continuum of care for the community. So whether it's having babies in the hospital to rehabilitation, all the way through the various levels of care for the community. Additionally, we have planned for specialty centers. So you may have a heart hospital, you may have a cancer center. So we've incorporated all of the things that go particularly within a hospital campus. Those are represented by the purple and the pink buildings on the plan that you see attached. Additionally, as a hospital grows and has more specialty services, you will see there is a hospitality center at the north part of the site. Those are for the hotels, for the families that are coming in to stay while their families are getting care. One thing I want to mention, the key component these days for a hospital is emergency room access. The emergency room is the front entry to a hospital. So having the access directly off of Alberta Road and off of Highway 99 would allow for visibility both to the hospital, but also increase visibility to the emergency room. That entrance off of Alberta has direct access, so that traffic is not mixing with the hotel or not mixing with the Lifestyle Center or the Residential. As you're coming to a hospital and you're coming to the emergency room, you want to see exactly where you're going, and you want to get there quickly. So this plan has allowed for that. Within the Lifestyle Center, this is healthy lifestyle, healthy restaurants, gym components, things that will support the community, but will also support the healthcare entity on campus. Hospitals are often some of the largest employers around, so this would allow staff, patients, visitors to go eat, get off of the, get out of the hospital, and to go use all of those other amenities. The blue is potentially a residential, well, sorry, that's a potential civic village, it could be a library, it could be another amenity for the community. And lastly, at the southern part, you'll see the residential, the high-density residential area as well.
As long as you pause.
Yes ma'am.
Can I ask you, on the, I guess, the north side there, all the pink that is called Lifestyle Center, how many square feet is that?
280,000 square feet.
Seems like a lot.
That, I assume it'd be similar, George, I see you coming to the podium, but I assume it'd be similar to what we see maybe up in Eldorado Hills?
Eldorado Hills Town Center, correct. So there could be, we expect the hotel uses with the retail to interact with one another.
Okay, so it's meant for the residential area that's to the south, not just hospital-related uses?
Correct. Because one of the things that Todd mentioned in the reductions of commercial space, significant reduction in the overall acreage, so this is, this retail is serving a dual purpose, to be an activity center both for the community and also for the
Okay.
The hospital.
Thank you.
Okay, and then, the other important thing is developing communities in this manner focused on healthcare is becoming a national trend. Just two weeks ago, in Health Facilities Management, the University of Florida just announced a partnership with a developer just outside of Jacksonville, and it's known as Wildlight. And so the University of Florida and its academic arm has partnered with the developer, so they're gonna also do a phased multi-year plan, and again, they're gonna start with Urgent Care Ambulatory Surgery Center and Physician Clinics in that location. So as the community grows, the healthcare partner will be in place. And then additionally, outside of Houston, CHI St. Luke's, which is one of the larger healthcare providers in the Houston market, has partnered, their development is called Vivacity, and the bigger development is called Valley Ranch. It's in northeast Houston. And so as this development's getting underway, CHI, and it's also an academic institution, they are beginning to plan their healthcare communities as part of the much larger plan.
Are there any west coast examples? You've come from the east coast to middle part of the United States, but how about out this way?
I have not found any. This will be, you know, the first one.
Oh, this is the one you're gonna be siding when you go do something next.
Yes, we'll do coast to coast. Okay.
Any other questions, Christine?
Thank you. I just wanted to thank the entire team, certainly our visitor from Texas today, too, who have heard my interest and concerns loud and clear over now a few years about the importance of this particular component part of the plan area. And I say that as not just the supervisor that represents the area, but as a resident of Natomas, where unfortunately, we don't have a hospital system, we don't have access to a hospital north of the river. And it's not just Natomas, it's other communities, Alberta, and even points north of Sacramento County that just don't have that ease of access, don't have a choice. And God forbid we ever have any kind of emergency that affects the bridge access over the American River. It's fairly distressing to think that we have tens of thousands of people that would have a very, very difficult time accessing hospital care and emergency care. So I've asked this team at the onset of this application to really seriously consider showcasing a medical campus or hospital use for this entire plan area, which, you know, is in the thousands of acres. So this is very encouraging to see the level of seriousness that has been given to this and the resources that the property owners and the project team have applied to make sure that this is being thoughtfully planned and that this Board is receiving the kind of information we are today about the intent to hopefully make this a reality at some point in the not-too-distant future.
Very good. Okay, thanks Christine. I did have, unless there's any other presentations on behalf of the applicants. One speaker, another speaker is Pat Cavill? 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 I apologize if I mispronounced that, I was trying to, it was written very quickly, though, I can see.
Good afternoon, Honorable Supervisors, my name is Pat Kernan.
Oh Kernan.
And I'm an attorney with Kingsley Bogart out of Folsom, and we represent both the Alberta School District as well as the Rio Linda Park District. I came here not intending to speak today, but unfortunately, Dr. Bogart, the superintendent from Alberta, and Mike Heller, who is now the new district administrator for the Park District, were here to speak but had to leave.
Okay.
And I think it's much more powerful from district people than from a stupid attorney, so. We're here, very quickly, I know you've had a long day. Both districts wholeheartedly support the project as amended, with the amended plan. And I just want to compliment the ownership team. I've done a lot of real estate projects in my life. With that projection to 2050, I'll only be 100 years old, but I've never been more impressed with a group of consultants and owners. They've been great, they've reached out all the time continuously. We look forward to working with them. They've involved us early in the process, which was what Dr. Bogart had asked a year and a half ago. They've been great. I cannot say enough good things. And also, I know the pocket parts are a critical component of the land use plan, and the Park District is supportive of that concept. Thank you very much.
That's great, Pat. Well, hopefully, you're here at 100 years of age to see that. I'll be 96, so we'll see how that goes, so. All righty. I didn't have anybody else to speak. Anybody else wish to address the Board? Anybody else from the team? Nope, they're all, okay. Todd, thanks so much. Any other closing comments for staff?
Just thank, thanks to you Todd, and Leanne, and abstention for all the, all the effort you put into this. I get very frequent updates on the, on the progress of the plan, and made it clear, not just as it relates to the medical campus, but, you know, whatever plan endeavor that we're gonna pursue that involves this amount of acreage. that we're going to pursue that involves this amount of acreage, certainly, we all want to do carefully and look back at some point and be very proud of. So, so far, I really like what I see.
Very good. So let's be back to us. This was just a workshop today. Be back to us mid-summer 2018, next installment. All right, very good. Okay. That was just a receiving file, yes, review and comment. We did that. So that concludes the agenda. If we have any appointments?
Yeah, we do have
Okay, very good.
So that would be item number 26. You are continuing to December 5th, the Assessment Appeals Board, Delta Citizens Municipal Advisory Council, Developmental Disabilities Planning and Advisory Council, In-Home Supportive Services Advisory Committee, North Highlands-Foot Hill Farms Community Planning Advisory Council, Sacramento County Treasury Oversight Committee, South Sacramento Area Community Planning Advisory Council, and the Southeast Area Community Planning Advisory Council. For your matters today, we have the Carmichael Recreation and Park District, Supervisor Peters.
Continue to December 12th.
Equal Employment Opportunity Advisory Committee, Mr. Natoli.
I don't have those nominations down here. I don't have.
If you're okay with it, I have some notes.
Go ahead, read them into the record.
Okay. The notes I have are the chiefs are recommending to continue to December 5th.
Okay, that's easy enough.
Sacramento County Youth Commission, Supervisor Serna.
Yeah, I'd like to nominate Lauren Kim, and we have the process, and then please continue the remainder to December 12th.
Okay, move to second. Please vote.
Unanimous vote. And then we have the Sheriff's Outreach Community Advisory Board. This would be Supervisor Peters.
Please continue to December 5th.
Okay, and then Supervisor Natoli.
Nominate Bill Cardoza.
Okay.
Did have that.
And that concludes your nominations.
Okay, that's kind of the nominations. County Executive, any comments or announcements?
Nope, not today.
Okay. You'll be back on the 14th, will you?
I think so.
Okay, members of the board. Anybody on the right? Announcements? Comments? To the left? Okay. And I would just, I don't know that we needed to adjourn necessarily, just note, though, that certainly our thoughts and prayers are with the families in the community of Southland Springs in Texas after tragic series of events there. So, and with that, then, thanks, everybody, for their endurance today, and we'll be back in session, same place, different time, or same time, next Tuesday. With that, we'll be adjourned.